Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The March 5th, 2008 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. Each council meeting, I make this precautionary statement concerning our state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system which is in this room. So if alarms should sound while we're having the meeting, please exit. You'll be greeted by city staff and the marshals out there. They'll tell you when it's safe to re-enter the building. We have no reason to believe that this will ever take place, but it's a cautionary statement. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Ed Lovelady, Rector, All Saints Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Almighty God, we know you to be a God of grace and mercy. Bestow on the members of this council the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may do the work of this council, seeking to make our city a place of justice and peace. Bless all those who come before this council today with your grace of patience and truth. All this we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Olivia. That's a nice name. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and it looks like I'm making an announcement every time we have a city council meeting of another grandbaby this morning. My sixth grandchild was born, a healthy petite little girl, six pounds, four ounces, seventeen and a half inches long. Her name is Olivia Prata Goodman, and she's beautiful. So just want to let everyone know. Okay. For our first item, Councilman Ross will honor the April Citizens of the Month. Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor, and congratulations, of course. And that plays right into what I'm going to talk about this morning. A few weeks ago, I happened to walk through the living room of my home, and my grandmother had Channel 8 on, and I am a solid KCLV Channel 2 watcher, for reasons we all probably know. And I happened to hear some familiar names on Channel 8. And there's a big reason why these folks are here today, but before I present them, I'd like to bring up Dave Cervasi with Channel 8 and Wednesday's Child, and let him talk a little bit about Wednesday's Child, because this is how important this is.
Congratulations. It's great that we're here on a Wednesday. It's fitting, because Wednesday's Child, of course, will air tonight. It's a program that profiles children waiting for adoption. We feature them every week. We ask that the viewer dig into their heart and perhaps seek an answer as to whether they might be a family for a child that's needing a home. And we featured this young lady here in the front row twice on Wednesday's Child in recent years. And the Stutzes here noticed that, saw it on TV, and couldn't get her out of their hearts. Followed through, did all the classes, went and finally adopted Noel, and that's after raising five natural children of their own. So it's fitting that they should be here today to be honored. I'm just gratified that they were watching that night. Thank you so much.
Stay right here, Dave. Don't go away. I want you to be here as we present them. DJ Stutz has been here before, and DJ serves Ward 6 on our Community Development Recommending Board, and she does a wonderful job, but that's not why she's here today. I've also invited her husband with her, Russell. Russell and I have served many years ago on the scouting program, and I've known this family for many, many years, and their children, as their children are friends of my children. Right now, I'd like to invite them up. Russell, DJ, would you come up here and bring your beautiful daughter Noel with you? This is Noel Stutz. And Grandi, we're going to have you come up here. This is DJ's mother, Grandi. Grandi, come on up here. We'll get somebody to take pictures for you. And Mayor, I wanted to point out that Grandi is now on her fortieth grandchild.
Fortieth.
Fortieth. That's it, forty. Give them a big round of applause.
Grandi, I'm having a hard time with six.
And you look great.
I had to show you.
These people have a unique bond. Russell and DJ have four other children, and 2006, their youngest was twenty and was on a mission for the LDS Church. All of their children were pretty much grown and on their own, and I know what that feels like, because mine are as well. In August of 2006, DJ was getting ready for work, and she had the TV on, as many of us do in the morning, and it happened that Dave Cervasi was doing a Wednesday's Child segment, where children waiting and wishing to be adopted are highlighted. As a young girl's face came on the screen, and Dave provided some information about her. There was something about that child that touched DJ's heart, and she told her husband about her. To her surprise, Russell suggested they contact Mr. Cervasi and find out more about this young lady. They found out that Marissa was eleven years old and had been in the system for eight years. She'd endured three stints at Child Haven, the first time when her mother dropped her off. Marissa was in ten different foster homes and endured two failed adoptions, and this little girl just wanted to be adopted by an LDS family. From that moment on, DJ knew, as well as Russell, that this little girl was destined to be part of their family. Russell signed them up for all the classes and the workshops they needed to attend in order to be adoptive parents. Russell and DJ kept trying to meet Marissa, but it was never arranged. It didn't matter. They knew she was theirs. They sent her Christmas and birthday presents and had to do so anonymously, because Marissa didn't know they were trying desperately to get her into their home and their family. In January of 2007, the Heart Committee, which matches adopting parents with children, awarded Marissa to the Stutzes. But it still wasn't over. Several concerns of those responsible for Marissa needed to be addressed. Finally, the Stutz family was given Marissa, and on March 29, 2007, they met for the first time. What a special moment that must have been. A transition period was required as they got to know each other, and after several visits and outings, on June 8, 2007, Marissa came home to live with the Stutzes. This is going to bring tears to my eyes. There is a requirement that six months have to elapse before adoption can be made final. December 8, 2007 marked that six months, and on December 13, the adoption was made final. Marissa wanted to commemorate this special occasion, so she changed her name to Noel, Noel Stutz. She did not know that on DJ's side of the family, Noel, the masculine version, was a family name. How unique. I understand it's not always been easy, and Noel has had to make some adjustments as a DJ and Russell, but I believe a greater force has been working behind the scenes to bring this family together, and with love on all sides, you are now a family. Russell, DJ, because of the example that you've set for the citizens of this valley and the city of Las Vegas, for your abundance of love, and for the help of Channel 8, Dave Cervasi, and Wednesday's Child, on behalf of the mayor and the city council, I'm naming you Ward 6 Citizens of the Month. Thank you very much.
Okay, I wasn't planning on saying anything. I would just really, really like to thank Channel 8 and Dave Cervasi and the work that he does, because without him, my family would not be complete. It was through him that we found our daughter. I just would like to ask everybody out there who has any heart and any chance to adopt a child out of the foster system to do so. That's not a good place for our kids. They suffer there horribly. And it breaks my heart to hear what Noel went through, but I love her so much. I'm so glad she's part of ours, and I guess without that, we would never have found her. But please, if you have a heart at all, reach out to these kids. They need rescuing, and they're so worth it. They are fabulous, and we're so glad that she's part of our family and that our family's complete.
Can we just clone this family? We just need to clone them, you know? Noel, did you want to say something? Can you share? This is an exciting time in your life, and we're grateful to share this with you. Again, everybody give them a great big round of applause.
For our next item, I'd like to ask the Executive Director of the Las Vegas Clark County Library District, Dan Walters, to join us at the podium. The library district is celebrating Reading Las Vegas, its seventh annual program that brings out adults together to celebrate the power and passion of reading. An important part of Reading Las Vegas is the Big Read, a national initiative designed to bring reading to the center of American public culture and create a community-wide book club. On behalf of the entire city council, I'd like to proclaim April as the Big Read Month in Las Vegas, and we encourage everyone to read for pleasure and education. Dan, could you tell us more about the program? I'll tell you this, I know the book that's going to be the subject of the Big Read Month. It's a great book. It was a defining book as far as my education was concerned, because I always wanted to grow up to be the Great Gatsby. That was a joke, folks.
Be careful what you wish for. And congratulations to our Citizens of the Month and to new grandpapa. And the Reading Las Vegas, we have a book bag for you that contains the novel for each of you, and we have the novel available for everybody who's at council today. We are celebrating this book, and you're right, as an English major in college, I can tell you, this book, you have to read it in about five different courses, and the closing paragraphs about the American experience are among the most often quoted in American letters, so I'm delighted this is our Book of the Month. We also have, I just want you to know, we have a reading guide and a CD on the book available at the libraries. We have book clubs in every single branch. These handsome book bags are available for the first hundred or so people that show up at their branch to sign up and participate. We have prizes. Southwest has donated a round-trip ticket. We have author visits, not only a New York Times bestselling author coming to talk about Fitzgerald, but we have Alexander McCall Smith, the ladies detective agency bestseller author, coming as well. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the new library we are building in your city is pretty much on schedule, and for opening in January. So it's, thank you very much for making this Reading the Las Vegas Month, and as I say, we have the novel, and it's one I can guarantee you, you can read more than once, so.
Thank you very much. No, it's terrific. That's great. Now, where can the folks pick up The Great Gatsby?
We've got some right here.
Oh, everybody has them. Terrific. Okay.
And at the branch.
All right, well, that's terrific. Thank you so very, very much. We appreciate it, really do. It's a great book. Great book. How are you? Good seeing you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thanks. That's great. For our next item, I'd like to ask two representatives from the Greater Las Vegas Association of Realtors, President Patty Gugler and Fair Housing Month Committee Member Kevin Chaud to join us at the podium. To begin with, we're happy to proclaim April as Fair Housing Month in the city of Las Vegas. April 2008 marks the fortieth anniversary of the National Fair Housing Law, Title 8 of the Civil Rights Act of 1968. The Fair Housing Act declares that it is a national policy to provide fair housing throughout the United States, and the law prohibits discrimination in housing because of race or color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or handicap. The principle of fair housing is not only federal law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. We have some other individuals that are here with us that we'd like to recognize in conjunction with Fair Housing Month, and each year, the Realtors Association hosts a poster contest for Fair Housing Month, and this year, the theme was "Fair Housing: A Place I Call Home." We're delighted to have the winners of this contest here, or at least some of them, so when I call your name, if you're here, please come up and join us. For the kindergarten to second grade category, and I know she's here, second grade student Sarah Almanza from Carey Elementary School. Carey Elementary School, thank you. Wait a second. You're in second grade? Did you read The Great Gatsby yet? That's okay. Don't be scared. Oh, am I going to be a bad grandfather? Oh, my God. For the third to fifth grade category, third grade student Daria Icomez, is she here? Also from Carey Elementary School. And you have your artwork with you, right? You want to show it to everybody? Boy, look at that. That's pretty good. Can everyone see it? Isn't that great? Oh, wow. We got both pieces of art here. That's wonderful. Good. And for the sixth to eighth grade category, eighth grade student Brandon Ugali of Malaski Middle School, not with us today, but we recognize him. And finally, for the ninth to twelfth grade category, 10th grade student Keesley Bishaw from Coronado High School, not here either, but certainly, we will make sure that they get the proclamations. We would like to congratulate you all for a job well done. You're doing a great job. Would you like to say something?
Thank you for this opportunity.
That's good.
That's it.
That's good. That's good. Would you like to say something?
Thank you for giving me this award, and I really appreciate it.
Very good. Okay, and I understand that the principals and teachers of these two lovely ladies are here. Please come up, and we'd like to shake your hands, too, for doing a very good job. Hi, how are you? Good seeing you. Nice seeing you. Hi, how are you? Good seeing you. Good seeing you. That's wonderful. Okay, let's see. Who would like to speak for the Realtors? Okay, Irene, my friend.
Irene is our VP for Great Las Vegas.
Yeah, he knows. I want to thank the city councilmen for taking time out of their busy schedule to honor these students, and the teacher that takes time in her class to tell them what fair housing means, and to do some artwork that will depict it. We're awfully sorry that the other two winners can't be here. It's nothing that we can do. This has to be arranged through the school district for liability purposes, and they probably have too much classwork when they get older. But thank you all again.
Thank you so much for being the sponsor of this. That's beautiful. Patty, would you like to say a few words?
Patty is the chairman of our...
Sure. Here we go.
Yes, I am the chairman of the Equal Housing Opportunity Committee, and we'd like, thank you again for this opportunity to be here and to state how these children understand equal housing so naturally through all their pictures. We had 487 entries into this little contest that we had, so these little, these kids here have done a remarkable job to come out in first place, and we thank them for it.
And they're from the same school.
And they're from the same school, too, with the same teacher, Sherry.
They're no longer in this elementary school, but in Malaski School. She was their teacher. So they're all winners, too, so we have quite a great art teacher.
Ladies, would you identify yourselves, please?
Yes, I'm Sherry Tuss, and I am the art teacher at Mark Carey Elementary, and I'm truly honored to develop the creativity of my children in my art classes. We have wonderful, wonderful response from several contests, and it just thrills me to be able to be their teacher.
Mr. Mayor, I'm the proud principal of Mark Carey, and these wonderful children, my wonderful parents, and my lovely teacher. If there's a spark of talent, she finds it and brings it out, so we're very happy.
Well, they not only do a good job as far as the artwork is concerned, but I'm privileged every year to go out to Mark Carey and read to the students out there, and yeah, they're all bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, smart, inquisitive, really do a terrific job. And now they can read The Great Gatsby, too. Thank you very much. Okay, and Councilwoman Tarkanian advises me, the reason that the two other youngsters were not here today is they're having their proficiency exams. That's the reason they're not here, because they wouldn't want to miss this privilege. Thank you very much. For our next item, Councilman Brown will recognize April as Stormwater Quality Awareness Month. Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor. And often when we talk about the water situation in Las Vegas, we hear about supply and demand and wastewater treatment, but this is also a critical component, because this program is in place to protect the water as it gets to Lake Mead, especially our storm drains and our channels and urban runoff, and it's very, very important to the overall mission of the city and the water district to keep our supplies safe. But I'd ask first Jennifer Schwepka to join me up here. Jennifer is the district coordinator of the Conservation District of Southern Nevada, and she has had the very difficult task of coordinating with just about every agency, directly or indirectly involved with the water resource picture in Southern Nevada. And the biggest thing is the hazardous chemicals, yard, pet waste, things that often we take for granted, that during a storm event or illegal dumping into the storm drains ultimately can endanger the water supply and the water quality in Lake Mead. So we are dedicating April for an education awareness program outreach, try to raise the overall community awareness, the importance of this storm water protection program. And we have an event on Friday, a kickoff, and Jennifer, if you would just give a little more detail, I know we're going to do some plaques in and around the storm drains, so thank you so much for joining us, and if you'd like to say a few words, please.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Yes, we're, this Friday is our kickoff, and we're going to be putting down these plaques above the storm drains all across the valley, and they're to remind residents that not to pollute, because the water that flows down those drains and everything along with it drains directly to Lake Mead untreated. And I'd like to thank the city of Las Vegas for proclaiming April as Stormwater Quality Awareness Month, so thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Now, for our final item, the mayor, Perton, will recognize April as Graffiti Awareness Month. Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Your Honor. This graffiti awareness is something to me that is very important, not only, it used to be just in Ward 1, 3, and 5, but now it's all over town. It's really grown. It's all over the county. I'd like to invite Deputy Director Steve Harson, Neighborhood Services Department, to join us. I'd also like to ask two representatives from the Southern Nevada Graffiti Coalition, Chair Scott Backos, a detective with Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, and Vice Chair Kevin Chaud to join us up here today. To me, graffiti is not just the tagging that you see, it's the posters on our telephone poles and our power poles and these used cars for sale. It's all a blight in our downtown and our areas of Las Vegas that are important to us. Graffiti vandalism is the most costly property crime in the city of Las Vegas and Southern Nevada. Approximately $30 million in public and private funds are expended annually to address graffiti vandalism in the greater Las Vegas area. The fight against graffiti is something that we cannot be done alone. The city has partnered with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department and the Southern Nevada Graffiti Coalition in this fight. New initiatives have been implemented to fight graffiti vandalism in Las Vegas, along with effective enforcement tactics and strategies to identify and hold graffiti vandals accountable. For example, in 2007, the successful Turn in a Target program received over 500 tips, leading to more than 200 arrests, and I want to make sure that Mr. Jurvik, our city attorney, hears this. I want to make sure that these people are taken to court and given the most severe sentence we could possibly give them in our court system. I'd like to thank our city staff, the graffiti coalition, and the members of our community in their efforts against this graffiti vandalism. With that, I'd like to present this proclamation to the coalition in recognizing April as Graffiti Awareness Month, and ask everyone to get involved in the crusade against graffiti.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the mayor and council for all the support that they have given on this effort. Last year alone, the city has spent itself over $400,000, just in the city, to abate 52,000 incidences of graffiti. We work very closely with Metro. We work very closely with the Southern Nevada Graffiti Coalition. We also encourage the community, citizens, and neighborhood associations to get involved. We have programs such as Adopt a Block. We work very closely with Neighborhood Watch, and if you do find incidences of graffiti, call our hotline at 229-6615. I'd also like to recognize our team, the Rapid Response Team, if they'd stand. These are the men and women who work very hard. Their supervisor, David Schisler, and the division manager, Devin Smith, they worked very hard and countless hours to keep the city clean from graffiti. So for that, I would thank you all, and I'll give it...
Thanks, Stephen. On behalf of the Southern Nevada Graffiti Coalition, also Metro, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the entire city council for the support that you've given us. I'd like to recognize Devin Smith and all you great painters up there for doing all the great work. Real quick story, just had a call two days ago from one of our DAs, said they needed information to prosecute one of the guys we had arrested. I got ahold of Devin, got ahold of Dave Schisler. I had that information in about 20 minutes. DA was very happy. Prosecutions are up, arrests are up. We're on pace this year to once again make over 500 graffiti arrests department-wide, and I think it's, it shows how much progress we are making. I'd also like to recognize Ben Little, City Attorney's Office, for all the great work they're doing, particularly Neighborhood Services Department. And I'd like to recognize Lisa Campbell. We've worked together for about a year now on this graffiti issue, and we're making a lot of progress. One other thing I'd like to say, the DARE program, we've decided education is a very important aspect of this fight, so now Las Vegas is the first city in the nation, and Metro is the first department to implement anti-graffiti training as part of DARE. At least 25,000 kids per semester are going to be exposed to this. So I'd like to thank everybody. Thank you.
Kevin, can you say one?
First of all, I want to thank the city of Las Vegas, wonderful, great crew up here. Devin, Smith over there, and his crew, again, Lisa Campbell, kudos to her, she's an awesome. I work with her on the coalition. I represent the Greater Las Vegas Association on that, on the committee, and I'm pleased too, because Realtors really care about your property values, and when graffiti has that problem, it's a crime and it hurts property values. So again, thank you, everyone, and please, make sure you call in these hotlines. Let's get graffiti straightened out. Thank you so much.
And again, I would ask our City Attorney's Office to please make sure that these criminals, as far as I'm concerned, are sentenced, and they do serve their time. It seems like, I've had reports where they do two or three days, maybe 50 hours of community service, they go home, they brag about it to their family, and they just go out and do it again, but I think if they serve up 179 days in jail, they'll be thinking about it a little bit more seriously. So I want to thank you and your group, especially Rapid Response Team, for making this an issue in the city of Las Vegas.
Mayor? Thank you very much, Mayor Perton. Why only 179 days? Why not 180?
Because that's a felony, then.
Well, I don't think so. No, we could give them six months, 180 days, and I think we should give them six months, and something that I've asked the district attorney's office... And something that I've asked the District Attorney's Office to do when they're being prosecuted over in the county court system is to contact the city, myself or one of the council people would be more than happy to act as victim advocates at the time of their sentencing, because that's $400,000 that it costs you folks, the people who behave in our community as taxpayers, $400,000. We had our budget hearing about two days ago, and we're scraping in order to save every cent that we can as a city. That would give us $400,000 that we wouldn't have to spend, that we could put towards programs and towards making the city a better place rather than trying to keep it from becoming a dump because of these punks. Thank you very much, sir. All right, good morning once again, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call item number 10. Any items from the morning session that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 50, which is a temporary change of location for a tavern license. Dominic L. Lano, from 2025 East Charleston to 2100 Fremont Street. The applicant's asset has to be held in abeyance until our April 16, 2008 meeting. And item 52 is a ward of contract, City Hall Civic Plaza. Staffs have to have that one stricken. Are there any other items needing to be brought forward at this time, council members? Seeing none, Your Honor, make a motion to bring these two items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Before we take the vote, would you repeat the...
Items 15 and 52.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 11 is approval of the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meetings of February 20, 2008, and March 5, 2008. There's a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, Your Honor, no additions or deletions. Make a motion to bring these items forward and take the appropriate action with all conditions.
Please vote. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Items 12 through 37 are on our consent agenda. They're considered to be routine, they're recommended for approval by the departments, and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time? Seeing none, Mayor Proton?
Yes, I move to approve the consent calendar items 12 through 37 with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Please vote on that. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 38, this will be a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of vacant or abandoned building and assess civil penalties located at 236 North Bruce Street, Unit D. The property owner is Aline S. Bolden, and this is in Ward 3. Mr. Smith?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Devon Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the condition of the property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired Disaster Cleanup of Nevada to board and secure all openings to the city of Las Vegas specifications. Screens over boards, replace security bars installed where none existed, remove refuse waste, trash debris, litter from the rear patio, to include items used for illegal patio cover and items on roof. To date, there have been six inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of December 2003 was $50,000. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses and the amount of $3,620.27 for the work completed by Disaster Cleanup of Nevada.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, folks. I now declare it open. Yes, ma'am?
Sir, the processing fee...
Excuse me, are you Ms. Bolden?
Yes, I am.
All right, fine. May the record reflect that the property owner, Aline S. Bolden, is present? Yes, ma'am?
The reinspection fee for 528 was not required. I checked with the city personally, I checked with the city, I checked with the city three times last month. The Development Services Center and so forth said that that was not necessary for a reinspection of the house. It's since been fixed up to its standards and everything.
All right, so that's the area that you're taking issue with, is that correct?
That's one of the areas I'm taking issue with. The other area is when they boarded up, I have pictures of how they boarded up the house, it broke out all the windows, and I had to replace all the windows. And also the material that they used, I took, I got a professional printout of all the materials used, didn't even come to $300, so I think that the price that they're charging me is quite a markup.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're here to address these issues. I'd like to ask you the question.
Yes, sir.
How does a house get that rundown?
Sir, I had some tenants in there, nobody notified me that they must have gotten arrested or whatever. I do not live at that address, I live in California.
You see, that's a big problem that we have here, because we have many people who don't live in our community who ran out these homes, and the homes become trashed for all intents and purposes, and then neighbors have to live next to these trashed homes until we do something about it, and it's very difficult.
Well, sir, it's a condo, and the association that I pay a fee to every month, that was a problem. They should have taken care of it.
They probably called our Neighborhood Services Office to do this.
I'll be dealing with it.
All right, Mr. Smith, could you respond to the issues that Ms. Bolden has expressed?
Absolutely. I just want to give you a quick breakdown. The work, the actual cleanup of the property came to a cost of $2,297.63, $480 in reinspection fees, $48 in late fees, and $450 in civil penalties plus a 15% administrative fee. So there were some fees that were taken back. The total of the civil penalties was $450. When we go out and we do these abatements, we put them out to bid, and we always take the low bid. So we don't tell the contractors what they need to charge, we just try to get the most bang for our buck, and we go with whoever the lowest bid happened to be on it, and unfortunately, that's what it came to.
All right. Would anybody else like to be heard on this? It's a public hearing. Here we go.
My name's Anthony Hodges, 123 Sir David. We got the bad hit just hit it on the head. We got a lot of absentee landlords and whatever. That's not always the point. Some of the landlords live right here in the city. Anytime you allow a piece of property to be run down, that's an endangerment to all of us. So it doesn't matter where the owner lives. The main thing is there's a personal obligation for them to keep an eye on their personal property. And so whatever you're charging for what has been done, that's only fair. And sometimes I generally take issue to help the people sometimes, but this one right here sounds pretty bad, having an absentee owner lives out of state. Sorry about that.
All right. Anybody else like to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mayor Proton?
Yes, Mr. Smith or Devon. Ms. Bolden said that we went out there, or the people went out there, put the plywood on the windows, broke the windows out that she hadn't replaced?
Yes, I have pictures of it. They throw the spikes through all the windows. This is approved boarding up.
When we board the buildings, the windows that are intact, we just nail the boards or screw the boards over the windows. The windows that are broken out, city of Las Vegas specifications say that there'll be a piece of wood placed inside with the plywood outside, we through bolt it. We don't break the windows out, the windows that are broke out, we do through bolt. The rest of them, we just put the screws into the fascia of the outside of the window and then put the bars over that.
Sir, you can't get these spikes through here unless you break the window out and it goes through and put the boards on the inside. I'm from Florida, I boarded up a lot of places for hurricanes. We have never broken our windows and boarded up like this.
Well, here's the, I think I don't know much. I got some pictures also up here, Ms. Bolden, that to me are terrible. I appreciate you coming up and being here today, but I really feel like that this should have been addressed the first time you got your notification.
I didn't get notification. You mailed it to 236 North Bruce Street. That is not my address, I have never received mail there.
What we do is when we send out these notices, we post it on the building, and we go to the assessor's office, and we see what the last known mailing address was. We check the sewer bills, any way possible that we could locate the person or the last known mailing address. And unfortunately, if she had moved out of state or somewhere else and didn't let the assessor's office know what her mailing address was, that is the last known mailing address. And I'd just like, if I could, please, Mayor Proton? If you look at the pre-abatement pictures, that's before the contractor went out on site, you can see that the windows were broken out prior to the contractor going out on site. We take those pictures ourselves prior to them starting the abatement, just so when these things arise, we have documentation that the windows were in fact broke out prior to them starting their abatement.
Mayor Proton, if you don't mind?
Yes.
Plus, there's entries, isn't that right, Mr. Harson, by your inspectors, that when they went out, they noticed that the windows had previously been inspected, right? I mean, that's documented.
Correct. And that's why we require the building to be boarded, is to stop the further of them windows being broke out and people getting into the structure.
And I guess, Ms. Bolden, all I can say is I'm sorry that we couldn't notify you because we didn't have your address, but that's not our responsibility either. Our responsibility is to our neighbors, and I feel very strongly that we have to support those recommendations that our staff makes, and that's going to be my finding today, Your Honor, is to uphold our staff's recommendations, and I move for approval at this time.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Just for the record, Mayor and Council, there are nine attempts here that we sent out to try to locate her and notify her of this action.
Well, I think what the young lady should do is she should go to her homeowners' association that's out there and tell them that the next time she has a tenant in there that trashes a place, that they better give her a call first, or else she's going to hold them responsible. Item 39 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of vacant or abandoned building, partial board and secure, located at 513 Harrison Avenue. The property owners are the Williams 1996 Trust, the Woods Delores TRS et al. This is in Ward 5. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open.
Again, Mayor and Council, Devon Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. The purpose and background is that the condition of this property was a public hazard and an attractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared the property in violation and started legal notification. When no corrective action was taken nor an appeal filed, the Department of Neighborhood Services hired CH Construction LLC to board and secure that did not require demolition. To date, there have been 10 inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property is unknown for this location. Original construction year was 1950. The recommendation is that the city council approve the report of expenses and the amount of $3,299.35 for work completed by CH Construction, and that the above charges be filed and recorded against the property, constituting a special assessment and lien, and authorized that the notice and lien of assessment be duly recorded with county treasurer.
Okay, any questions to Mr. Smith? Folks, anybody like to be heard at the public hearing?
The name's Anthony Hodges. This is, these kind of things get to be very ugly on all of us. When a house become abandoned, it puts a soul on the neighborhood, then you have this domino effect, before you know it, the whole neighborhood's gone down. Because people have to look out for that abandoned house, you know what I'm saying? And if it's not, the parents of it hasn't kept up. And then you got the people out there that watch that kind of stuff, and that, this is just an entry point to further attack the neighborhood. So anytime you got abandoned property and the original owners don't want to step up to the plate, rent it out, do something with it, but to keep it occupied in some form, then that's hard on all of us, and that's what I got to say.
Anybody else like to be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilor Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And I must agree with Mr. Hodges that far too often, specifically in the core of the city, we have a lot of abandoned structures. And in order to revitalize the community, in order to beautify the community, we must address the issue of these blighted nuisances on our neighborhood streets and in our commercial corridors. And I'm looking forward to continue my efforts to clean up these specific structures throughout my ward. And in doing so, I want to thank Neighborhood Services, Rapid Response, for making sure that you all stay on top of these structures so that we can beautify the area and bring it back up to make it a more livable and palatable community for us all to enjoy. And so with that, I look forward to moving forward to follow staff's recommendation to acquire the fees for the abatement. Thank you.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you very much. Item 40 is a public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district number 1485, Alta Drive, Rancho Drive, to approximately 275 feet west of Lacy Lane. Landscape maintenance, fiscal year 2009, Ward 1. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open. Mr. Kikowski?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is a landscape maintenance SID. It has been in place for about five years, and as required by law, each year we need to come forward and present this to council and have a public hearing on the renewal of the SID. This SID, we're expecting to have some increases due to the nature of the economy, and so we have made allowance for a 10% increase for a total of $65,340.
All right, thank you very much. It's a public hearing, folks. Would anyone like to be heard on this?
I just want to add, it's not fair. It said landscape. Okay, now, is the city responsible for this particular piece of property?
This is city right of way, and the landscaping is, for this improvement district, would be paid for by the property owners.
By the property owners?
Correct.
Okay, is this something like a lawn?
We don't go this way.
Okay, is this a lawn? Or something?
It's a public road where there was a landscaping done, and the property owners have been assessed to keep up the landscaping. That was the agreement when they changed the road. It's a winding road, something unique in the city of Las Vegas.
No problem, actually. Thank you.
I will advise you, Mr. Kikowski, that I got a phone call from, I guess, a property owner who was complaining bitterly yesterday, indicating that the... owner who was complaining bitterly yesterday, indicating that the contribution is being based on the square footage of the lot that the property owner owns rather than on the frontage of the, of Alta. And I was advised that his attorney will be sending me a letter, and I think, once I get the letter, I'll turn it over to you, and we'll figure out whether we've been doing it right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to state, of course, that the property, the amount of land you own is what it's always been from the beginning, and that was, and this was before I was on the council, and this was something done, and all the others have paid that according to the amount of land they own. The thing I wanted to bring out, which I've brought out before, Charlie, and I just want us to work out some way, somehow, a fair way to deal with the fact that this SID was really not a true SID for at least half of the year last year, because of the amount of plants that died, at no fault to the people who are paying it. And this was before the individual moved in that the mayor is talking about. So I'm not even talking about that aspect of it. I'm talking about for those others. And, you know, we've talked about possible ways to work it out. I know we have to do it legally. I feel that the amount is going to go down because the new Water Smart Way is going to do it there. But in any case, I just wanna go on record as saying, so those people with the SID understand, and I'm talking, not talking about the one the mayor is talking about, but all the others who were there before, that they understand that we are trying to make something that will fairly account for the problems they went through. And we have to do some things legally, and I know you've looked at it, we've all been looking at it, but, and I know that the SID legal language holds us to a certain parameter in which we can go, but I do want everybody to know, if you haven't quit looking, and there might be a very significant savings for next year as we get our Water Smart program going.
For the record, we have a new contractor starting this month, and we expect to have better results. And as you know, we have a state-of-the-art irrigation monitoring system, which hopefully will lower the water bills. And we also have a meeting being set up with the Southern Nevada Water Authority to get some credit or rebates because of the efficiency of this new system.
And there might be, I hope, some way that that credit or rebate will help those people that had some very bad-looking landscaping for several months.
Any monies that are received will be used to offset the operating costs.
I know you're trying hard. It's just something that we have to be fair. People forget, there are many individuals who live on that strip of, that land area that are not overly rich. They were there for a long time. They bought their homes at very inexpensive prices, and we have to watch out for their benefit also. Thank you.
All right, does anybody else like to be heard? Fine, that was an informational item, so we'll move on to item number 41. 41 is going to be a public hearing on local improvement district for improvement district number 1516, which is Fremont Street Maintenance District from Las Vegas Boulevard to 8th Street. And this is in Ward 5. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open. Kikowski.
This, good morning, Mayor and Council. This project is on Fremont Street between Las Vegas Boulevard and 8th, and the purpose of it is to provide security and overall maintenance of the facilities. This is the second time before this council for renewing this special improvement district. We've had a presentation to the entertainment district body, and they have acknowledged and approved this proposal. As of this day, we have received no protest.
Okay, any questions to Mr. Kikowski? Public hearing.
Well, 40 and 41, they're kinda in the same boat. It's the wording, I always ask questions about, is that capital projects fund, I mean, special assessments. It mean that you're spending a lot of money, maybe, I know we're hurting for money, sometimes some of these projects could be, if there's any kind of way that you can reduce the cost, you know, every dollar counts wherever nowadays, and that's all I'm saying. On 40, which y'all, you ran me by, Mr. Mayor, it comes back to that fact. You admit that there's a lot of money being spent for the maintenance of these areas. So whatever you can do landscape-wise and otherwise, especially with waters being involved, let's do something to tighten the belt on it.
Well, the city, the city doesn't spend the money. The money is spent by the abutting property owners, so that's what a special group of districts do.
And the council lady made one very important statement. I used to live in California, had a Prop 13, and that used to protect the homeowners that we bought our property way back when. And as California kept increasing taxes on people, it protected us unless we sold it, you know what I'm saying? And so that Prop 13 was a masterpiece, and a lot of older seniors still living in California, you know, getting up in age, and they're gonna die in their homes and whatever, and they are very well protected by a Prop 13. So we don't have nothing like that here. But Ms. Potemme made a very good point. Some of these older seniors, she's been there for a long time, and taxes keep going up, gonna show them to death. I'm sorry about that.
Anybody else wanna be heard, folks? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Kikowski.
Thank you.
Item 42 is discussion and possible action regarding an exclusive negotiation agreement between City Parkway 5, Inc. and the Board of Regents of Nevada System of Higher Education to undertake due diligence for the feasibility of developing a University of Nevada Health Science Center on parcel A2 in Union Park, located at 100 South Grand Central Parkway in Ward 5. Adams?
Good morning. Scott Adams, Director of the Austin Business Development. I need to, at the outset, read into the record a minor change to the header on this item. This indicates, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong agenda. Let me go into this. This is an E&amp;A, I was referring to the next item. This is an E&amp;A between City Parkway 5 and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education. This, and I've got on the overhead, respects development of what we generally refer to as parcel A2 on Union Park, which is the parcel that's indicated in green directly north of where the current Ruvo Brain Institute is under construction. That parcel is just, just under 100,000 square feet. This E&amp;A is for a term through December 17th of this year. There is a very detailed schedule of performance in the E&amp;A that outlines the steps that the system has to go through to meet the terms of this agreement. Just highlight some of those. There's, they have to identify a developer. In fact, the intent here is to use a private developer to build a building that the system can create a new academic medical center under at least space from. The building and the reason why it's located right next to the Ruvo Brain Institute would work symbiotically with the Brain Institute by having, you know, a research center at the Brain Institute and an academic health function immediately next door. They have a due diligence period of six months through October to really do all the underlying work that would be required under an E&amp;A to determine whether they wanna move forward. It would be our hope they select a developer, and the developer would be doing a lot of that due diligence in the same way we've seen that done on other sites in Union Park and in the redevelopment area. The E&amp;A sets forth a minimum building size of 150,000 square feet. It's the intent for the school to occupy at least 40,000 square feet of that space. And this site would also provide the parking needs, a commitment of parking to the parking needs of the Ruvo Brain Institute. So that's one of the reasons why we're only getting 150,000 square feet on that site. By the time you put the building, the parking for the building, and then parking needs for the Brain Institute, it pretty much maxes out the site. This is a land donation to the Academic Medical Center. I would point that out. We have always intended that there would be a commitment at no cost of land to the medical school to get an academic medical center on this site. It really represents, as we've characterized, one of three loss leaders we've committed to on, on Union Park, to really get some critical mass on Union Park, the Brain Institute, the Performing Arts Center, and the Academic Medical Center. And we are making, under this agreement, a remediation commitment for environmental remediation, in the same way we have the other two nonprofits of $12 per square foot. This is a fairly clean site, so we don't believe we're gonna really be dipping too far into this. We've had a very good experience in our remediation costs on the Ruvo Brain Institute site, so we don't expect to be too much different on this one either. With all those considerations, staff recommends approval. There are representatives here representing the System of Higher Education. Should you have any questions, and we recommend you move forward.
Thank you. What is a fish or cut bait date?
Well, they, it really is the term of the agreement. The, you know, I think the other thing, and I'm glad you brought that up, we're acknowledging in this agreement, this is sort of our last hurrah with the, the System of Higher Education, that we have made many attempts to, to bring them on to Union Park, and this really represents the last good faith effort to develop a facility on Union Park for them. So at the end of the term of this agreement, should they not be able to move forward, we would not be moving forward with them on Union Park, and we could move on to another developer on this site.
At the end of the term of the agreement?
And that, that's December of this year, December 17th.
Okay, Ms. Turner, why don't you step up here and please identify yourself?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, I'm Marsha Turner, Vice Chancellor for Health Sciences System Operations at the Nevada System of Higher Education.
Before you start.
Yes.
Ms. Turner came on board basically at the behest of Chancellor Jim Rogers, and is his point person as far as the Academic Medical Center, or as it's referred to here, the Nevada Health Science Center. I know that she has been trying diligently to put this deal together. So the comments that we made about this is the last hurrah and the fish and cut bait date have to be taken very seriously because of your predecessors, not because of the chancellor nor yourself, but your predecessors have engaged in dragging their feet type transactions with the City of Las Vegas, starting initially up at the Technology Park around West Lake Mead and Tenea, and basically put the city on hold for about 10 years there, finally released that piece so that the city would be able to realize the gain in the real property. Same situation here before you became on board, discussions going back and forth with the medical school, where they said they're gonna do this, they're gonna do that, and nothing took place. The fact of the matter is, and I'm a betting man, as you know, and I'll bet my bottom dollar on this, that when the Ruvo Brain Institute opens up with that Frank Gehry-designed facility there, the piece of property that the city is offering to you will go up substantially in value. There's no doubt in my mind. So the reason I'm saying this is we will hold firm on that December 2008 date, because I really believe that unless we know that the Health Science Center, which is so sorely needed in our community, particularly in view of the endoscopy situations that we have here, with the nurse shortage that we have here, with all of the medical problems that we have here, with our inability to attract great medicine into our community, we really need it. But this is a real date. So as the messenger, what do you have to say?
Well, thank you, Mayor. We do understand that, and we do appreciate your patience. And in my experience, I've had a great working relationship with, with Betsy Fretwell and Scott Adams and Scott Carter and your whole team and the folks at Newland. We do appreciate the fact that you are offering to allow us to build on this land. We do understand that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and we will be rolling up our sleeves and trying to bring this to fruition. It's a complicated project, but it's a really neat opportunity, and we do thank you for your, your offer and your general support of higher education. You all have been very supportive, and we really do appreciate that.
Well, it's critical if we're gonna become a great city.
It is.
If we're gonna become a world-class city, we have to have world-class entities. We're gonna have a world-class performing arts center. We're gonna have a world-class Brain Institute. We have a world-class Cancer Institute. We, we're heading in that direction. And I was down at UCLA, speaking to the folks once again. They're very anxious to come up here and to be your partner. And those discussions, I think, should really go into a high level at this point, because nobody in this community could object to getting fine doctors from elsewhere coming in here and helping our constituents get the best of medical treatment. That was the argument that I heard in the past. We don't want outside docs. There's no standing anymore, as far as I'm concerned, and I hope the doctors hear it from me. There's no standing to stop good doctors from coming into this community anymore. We've learned our lesson. So please work very, very diligently with them, and try to get them to be your partner, because they could help you defray some of the costs. I really believe that, bringing in more and more good physicians, good programs into Las Vegas in association with the Health Science Center.
Thank you.
All right. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, thank you very much. Have a motion, please. Councilor Barlow.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I wanna thank Marsha for being here today, and the mayor's correct. We have a, an opportunity to, to do some great things in Union Park, and I believe that having a medical facility be a part of that will be a great addition to what we're doing and for the great job that you all are doing and rolling up your sleeves and getting it done. I believe that you'd be able to do just that, and with that, I wanna support you and your efforts, but at the same time, agree with the mayor and this council as far as holding your feet to the fire and reholding and sticking to the date of the December, so that we're not held or restrained from moving forward to continue to develop this beautiful jewel in the middle of downtown. So with that, I want to, my motion would be to follow staff's recommendation, and that would be my motion, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. And how is the chancellor? Is he doing well?
He's doing very well. Thank you. I'll let him know you asked. He sends his best, too.
Well, the whole council. We, he was in our prayers, and we all sent him our very best.
Thank you, and he sends his best.
And I hope he's watching.
He might be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Item 43 is discussion and possible action regarding a memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Las Vegas and City Parkway 5, Inc., the city parties, and Livework LLC to specify contemplated transactions involving real property known as Union Park Parcels P and Q, the Queen of Hearts Block, and real property owned by Livework LLC respectively, located near the Ogden Avenue Underpass and City Parkway, near the intersection of Main and Bonneville. This is in wards 3 and 5. I'll also read 43 into the record. Well, let's see. What is the difference?
44.
44?
I just read 43.
Excuse me? Oh, I just read.
I read 43.
I read 43, and the next one is 44? Let me see, please. Okay, 44 would be report and possible action regarding future city hall construction, which pertains to all wards, and 52, which has been stricken. And those are the items that we'll be hearing at this time. We'll hear 43 and 44 is read into the record. Mr. Adams?
Scott Adams, again, Austin Business Development. This is a very complicated item. I think I had prefaced this when we had entered into the E&amp;A and we'd given you updates on this, that we're really negotiating three projects here simultaneously. We really have the development of the Livework Las Vegas project. That has its own set of issues. We included in that is the development of City Hall, and then companion to that is, because there's an exchange of sites, the development of parcel PQ and Union Park. So we're really gonna use a PowerPoint to walk you through this project to, to give you and the public the background on this project so you can better understand how the various pieces fit together. What we're gonna do very briefly is give you a quick overview of the developer's background. I think it's very important that you and the public understand the capabilities of the group that's involved in the development of this project. They're gonna walk you through their vision of the project, then they'll turn it back to me, where we'll walk you through the deal terms, how City Hall gets financed, and then we'll end with a great deal of information on the public purpose and the redevelopment impacts of this project. To start off, though, I'm gonna turn it over to Dimitri Vazalakis, who's the Senior Vice President of Forest City Enterprises LA Division, who will start off with his background and the vision of the project.
Thank you, Scott. Good morning, Mayor, council members. First off, before we start, I'd like First off, before we start, I'd like to thank you on behalf of Forest City, our partners, and David Mitchell, who's standing next to me, and unfortunately, Barnett Lieberman expresses his regrets that he's not here with us. In the next few minutes, what I'm going to try to do is to give you a brief description of Forest City, as well as our vision for both the Forest Street development, the First Street development, as well as the P&amp;Q sites in Union Park.
All right, take your time, because I want the public to fully understand what we're contemplating as a city, and what we'll be voting on as an elective body, so we're not in any hurry on this one.
Okay. And if by chance I am too quick for you, please ask me to slow down, I'd be happy to do that. Forest City was established about 85 years ago by a family by the name of Ratners, and even today, as we stand here, the same family, the Ratner family, is still involved in the day-to-day activities of the management activities of this entity. Forest City is also listed on the New York Stock Exchange and has assets valued in excess of $9.5 billion. We have a unique blend of both having a family-run organization, as well as the financial strength of a publicly listed entity. We are one of the few real estate development firms that has a vast array of expertise in-house that is able to develop complex developments throughout. We have our expertise runs from all phases of the development, from the planning, the design, finance, leasing, construction, and also the ultimate management of the operating property.
Sure did learn that.
Our businesses run in three separate business units, and I'm just giving you this by way of background, we have the land group, residential, as well as the commercial. The land is primarily focused on the acquisition and development of land, and they currently have 12,000 acres in their portfolio available for future developments. The residential group is primarily focused on multifamily rental apartments, and they have 36,000 apartments in their portfolio, and 7,300 military housing units that they manage. The commercial group focuses in commercial office space as well as retail. We currently own and manage 24 and a half million square feet of retail, and 11 and a half million square feet of commercial office space. We, Forest City has 10 offices across the US. Our corporate headquarters are in Cleveland, Ohio, and we work in 23 states, including Nevada. In the Las Vegas area, we've previously developed sites, to name a couple, we've developed the Galleria Sunset in the Valley, as well as the Showcase Mall. We currently own and operate and manage the Galleria today. In the next few slides, we've selected some of our projects, just to give you the breadth of our capabilities. The first one is the New York Times Building. It was a building designed by Renzo Piano. It consists of about 1,005 square feet of office, and 22,000 square feet of ground for retail. 60% of that building is owned and occupied as the New York Times new headquarters. The balance of that building is owned and managed by Forest City. It opened in 2007. The second development, which is the Beekman Towers, it's in Lower Manhattan at the foot of the Brooklyn Bridge. It is currently under development. It consists of 76 stories of approximately 1 million square feet, 100,000 square feet of public school, 200 parking spaces, and the value of that building is $845 million. The previous project is worth about $1 billion. Our next project, which is also in the development phase, it is approximately a mile from the Capitol Building. It consists of 42 acres, which used to be the former Washington Navy Yards. Ultimately, once completed, the development will have about 1,008 square feet of Class A offices, 2,800 residential units, 400,000 square feet of retail. The first phase, which is the first residential phase, is scheduled to be completed in late '09, and the value of that, once complete, and the whole development will take somewhere in the order of 10-plus years, the value of that will be approximately $2 billion. Our next development is a great example of downtown developments. This is located in San Francisco, on Market Street. This used to be the former Emporium Department Store, and we took that building and that site, and we converted it into a 1.2 million square feet of multi-level retail anchored by Bloomingdale's, Century Theaters, and 300,000 square feet of office space. That opened in September of '06, and the value of that is about $400 million, and this is a picture of the interior. This is the existing dome that we actually elevated, raised up, and reused. There's a different class and type of development that we get involved, is our retail development. This is our pride and joy, it's located in Rancho Cucamonga, California. It's a lifestyle center, and it's on a street grid design. It has about 1,002 square feet of retail, 850,000 square feet of public civic space, and that is actually a cultural center that is owned and operated by the City of Rancho Cucamonga. There's also 400 residential units that were part of this development. That is also in the range of $400 million. I'd like to pass the microphone over to David Mitchell.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. First, thank you for allowing us to present this morning. We have three examples of projects that we have been involved in in New York City and in Miami. All three of projects were very instrumental in transforming neighborhoods. The project in the immediate left was a hospital that we converted into a residential apartment building. It's on Second Avenue in New York City. The hospital was originally built by J.P. Morgan, and it's now converted into a beautiful apartment building. The building was built in 1899 and was bought from Beth Israel Hospital, and it has, it's fully occupied, its current value is in excess of $250 million. The building on the right was a printing building. It was really one of the spearheading developments in the development of the West Village in New York City, it's 421 Hudson. It comprises of over 300 apartments, it has a gym that has over 5,000 members, considered one of the best athletic facilities in New York City, and the largest private solar heating system in the Northeast. If you see on the top right, there are solar panels, and this building transformed the Lower Manhattan Village area into a residential area, converting an industrial use to a residential use. The next project--
Right, right.
--is a project that's in construction now in Miami Beach, an area called Mid Beach. Most people are familiar with Miami Beach as far as South Beach, this is the first project to really break ground in Mid Beach, and as a result, has attracted three or four other projects in this immediate area. This is a hotel, a private club, and a 15-story residential tower that will be delivered in the beginning of '09, and those are the three examples of transformative projects that we've been involved in.
Thank you, David. What we'd like to talk to--
Before you go there, could you tell us a little bit about what Forest City and the Ratners are doing in Brooklyn? I read an awful lot about it, it seems to me like you're redoing the whole borough of Brooklyn, and a part of that project will have the Frank Gehry-designed arena, because the Ratners have purchased, I believe, the New Jersey Nets, and will be moving them over to Brooklyn, is that correct?
That is correct. We're very, very involved in that project, that project's a very complicated project, and the New York office is actually handling that, but ultimately, you know, with the Nets relocating, that will re-transform that whole area, that whole neighborhood. The next area, what we'd like to do is to share with you what our vision's going to be, both with the First Street redevelopment, as well as the site in Union Park, which is P&amp;Q. Key items for us is that we believe ultimately, we have the ability to transform the existing area, which is bounded by our five blocks that we own. Collectively, between Livework and Forest City, we own five city blocks, and we have, you know, a vision there that, in combination with the city, we think we can execute a marvelous downtown core. I don't know if you can see that, but-- That's me, okay. There is some writing on that, but I certainly can't see it, and I'm not sure if you can see it. The image on the screen is intended to show our five blocks, which are supposed to be in green, and they're labeled A through to E. The area that we control and own is bounded by Main Street to the west, Gases to the south, Casino Center Drive to the east, and Lewis to the furthest north. This site is, you know, directly across from the Union Park, as well as, you know, it certainly has a unique access points, fairly close proximity to access points from the freeway, and in very close proximity to the existing downtown core district. We view this project as a continuation of First Street. The Golden Nugget has started the redevelopment of First Street, we want to see that as a continuation all the way through, from the Golden Nugget, through to Bonneville, and the continuation down to the Arts District. There are two critical components to our redevelopment, at least that's the way we see it. One is the addition of the ITC, the Regional Transportation Center, to the south, which is going to be in Block B, and the second one is City Hall to the north in Block E, or Queen of Hearts. This next series of slides will actually try to depict a time lapse photography as to how this project is currently envisaged to be phased. The first one, which is on Block B, reflects the ITC development, which will house the intermodal transportation hub, as well as 14,000 square feet of retail. We also envisage that the couplet between Bonneville and Clark will also be constructed in the same timeframe. Our second piece of this development is the construction and development of City Hall. This will be on the Queen of Hearts block, directly adjacent, will be, the City Hall ultimately will be located directly adjacent to the Regional Justice Center, directly across from the Union Park, and hopefully access into the Performing Arts Center, and as well as in close proximity, the Clark County Government Center. We plan to construct, finance City Hall, if you allow us to. The program as we know it today is of a City Hall of approximately 250,000 square feet and the associated parking needs for City Hall. The redesign of First Street, which will come with the redevelopment of this whole area, you know, we're envisaging an attractive landscape and amenities throughout First Street that will encourage pedestrian traffic all the way from City Hall to the ITC, as well from the Golden Nugget down through. Our first phase of the commercial development is planned to be in Block A, which is directly adjacent to the Regional Transportation Center, and it's intended to be an office building of approximately 250,000 square feet, 900 odd parking spaces, and approximately 30,000 square feet of retail. The next few slides will actually show you the subsequent four phases. Each of the phases is intended, has been planned today, as an office building, retail, and the necessary parking. So I think on the screen, I'm seeing Phase Two, Phase Two and Three, and then Phase Four and Five. Ultimately--
Okay.
Ultimately, the development, the full build-out of the development will have 1,000 square feet of office, 300,000 square feet of retail, and the necessary parking that goes with it. Our other piece of it, which is as part of the First Street, we plan to swap the Queen of Hearts site, which is the site that is, will house the City Hall, with Parcel's P&amp;Q in Union Park. In that area, we plan to build and develop a 1,000-room hotel casino with 63,000 square feet of casino floor, and about 250,000 square feet of retail offerings in that. And with that, that sort of concludes our presentation of our vision, and if you have any questions.
All right, thank you. Does the council have any questions at this time?
Yes.
All right, Mayor, put that.
Thank you, Your Honor. Question I have is, with the City Hall, are you going to do any commercial or retail with the new City Hall?
That is a discussion that Scott and his team are still discussing, we haven't really finalized the program of the City Hall block itself. Our retail will be in the ITC as the first initial piece. Very soon after the City Hall is built, we will be having retail commercial in Phase One, which will house the retail and the office, which will be--
Another question I have, Mayor, is Scott is presenting more to us--
Yes. Yeah, I'm going to continue.
All right, very good.
Okay, Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Going back to your Victoria Gardens development in Rancho Cucamonga, California, just to, it seems like just a short few, a few short years ago, this was in the middle of the desert, right outside of Rancho Cucamonga. What was it about this particular site that attracted you to come there and build the facility, the development, in the middle of what I consider the middle of the desert? And how in fact does that development connect to what it is that we're, that you're looking to do in our downtown area? Is there any connectivity related to the two, and if so, please elaborate on that?
I think those are great questions. A couple of things that attracted us to it, is one, a city, a city was looking for somebody to create a new development, but a place-making, and they allowed us to try to bring the best minds to the table that would create a set of criteria that will allow us to develop a transformation of the area. And you're correct, the area wasn't, you know, when we were first building it, we also, you know, had to believe in our own desires, that we could actually pull it off. The area had already a lot of retail, close proximity, and what we were trying to do is to create something different, something different for, not just for shopping, but for families to spend time and enjoy themselves, and that's what we're able to do. And the key thing with us, and I certainly neglected to bring it up, is that we're very familiar and very proud of our abilities to work with cities, we understand how the public-private partnership works, and this was a great example of exactly that, that the city allowed us in, we were able to share with them our vision, and they allowed us to execute our vision. And today, if you go out there, and I certainly encourage everybody to go out there, you'll notice it's not just a shopping environment, and there's families there, they enjoy the strolling of the streets, spending time at the restaurants, going to movies, so it's--
Right, and that's my reason for asking. Now, connect the concept of the Victoria with what you're planning to do in downtown Las Vegas, because I've had an opportunity to experience it, and it was fabulous, I couldn't believe that something of that magnitude could be built in the middle of what I consider the middle of the desert in California. But connecting now what you're looking to do in Las Vegas, and what similar features, if you will, will you tie into the development that you're proposing here?
Okay. Couple of things. One is that for transforming any area, there needs to be a set amount of pre-sorted development in the sense of creating a reason for people to come to. Our belief, the reason to come to our site is City Hall and the Regional Transportation Center. Those are two elements that sort of will start to break-- Those are two elements that sort of will start to break down the barriers that currently exist, break down perceptions of the area. Second thing what we're doing is we're creating, we're intending to put, the 300,000 square feet of retail will be at the street level as well as at second level. So we're, if our vision is correct and we're able to execute it with your approval, we will be able to entice anchors, not of the same size as Bloomingdale's or as Macy's, but smaller anchors that people will want to come to be here. We ultimately want to create what, transform what is currently there into a community, a street that people feel comfortable walking in, and that is the key components. It's not just the buildings, but it's also what actually occurs at street level, at the pedestrian level, to allow the people to be able to actually navigate from street to street, to feel comfortable, to feel safe, to feel as if this is a nice place to be in.
So in other words, you're creating a multi-level destination point, City Hall, ITC, retail.
As well as the offices.
As well as the office.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Adams?
Okay. I had a question to ask you. My understanding is if you help us build the City Hall, and we've gone over this to some extent, that you're doing this on a nonprofit basis, that you're not making profit out of the lease coming back to us, but it's on a, just that we pay the cost of it and of course, any interest involved. I'm asking this question because we've had some other entities within the county and the city that have come up before and ended up large cost to the government entity because of the profit that was being made by the business.
All right, Mr. Adams, could you respond to that? Because I know that Mr. Adams was going to be talking about finance.
Well, if you want, I can wait on that.
Yeah, I think he's going to cover that in his presentation as far as the finances.
Yes.
Except I do want on the record that they're agreeing that this is so, that's all.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that, that's in the MOU is that City Hall's a must-do project for this whole project to work. That City Hall is a critical component of the project and were it not for City Hall, we would not get this project. And, and that's very important. I will get into a great deal of detail on the structure of the deal and how City Hall gets financed and how all that works, but clearly that's an important component.
It is, Mr. Adams, and I'm asking that because, as you know, as things I've stated in the past, I don't feel we need a City Hall right now, but I do know we need one eventually. And when I talk to constituents who are very concerned about what we might do here, I just want to be able to say that this is in the future and that we're not going to have a whole lot of extra costs because the whole business situation of getting it now and, you know, paying later on in the future when the economy gets better. But I just want to make sure that we're not getting stuck with a whole lot of extra that turns out to be profit for the business because my job is to look out for the citizens, that's all.
And in fact, one of the things that I'll comment on is that Forest City's willingness to build it at a very reasonable cost to us, they're really not loading into the cost of City Hall extraordinary profits or overrides on, on the project. They really see it as a catalyst, a very, very important infrastructure component to the overall five-block development. And for that reason, they're really willing to do this at essentially their cost plus a very reasonable profit just to get it in the project. And so I, that point needs to be made on the record. I apologize for these, I don't know if you saw the layering in of the master plan on the, on the monitors. Our monitors, we couldn't read it, they're too bright, so I hope you can, you could follow along with that as we went along. I think the next piece I wanted to go in through was the deal. And as I mentioned previously on previous occasions, we've really been negotiating three developments. What you're, what you have before you today is a memorandum of understanding, which is non-binding. It will be replaced in May by a binding master development agreement. At that point, we will have site control. At this point, what we're really presenting to you is a handshake agreement that really sets forth the general structure and terms and conditions of how we'd move forward. Under that master development agreement, there would be two sub-agreements. An exchange agreement that respects the exchange of the site for the City Hall, Queen of Hearts block, for parcel PQ. Under that agreement, we would have a City Hall lease and development agreement, which would detail out how City Hall gets built and the terms of a lease for City Hall, and then there would be a separate agreement for how they would build out parcel PQ for a casino hotel. Then there's another Live, Work, Las Vegas Block Project Development Agreement. Obviously, they're going to build out, as Dimitri pointed out, a five-block project. Under that would be an owner participation agreement, which you've seen before, which is a tax increment financing rebate agreement, and there may be one or more parking agreements. On a project this complicated, parking will be very critical, parking for retail visitors, parking for office users, parking for City Hall, and then how to manage that whole district as a parking district. Into the deal terms, I mentioned previously that the MOU is non-binding. It will be replaced by a binding development agreement on May 21st. Should you approve this today, we've been working diligently on these agreements, we will bring back to you a binding agreement. I think that we wanted a sense of the council's direction on this before we brought back to you a binding agreement. In the MOU, though, we set forth a great number of business terms and conditions that set the tone for that binding agreement. We've set land prices, just over $40 million for parcel PQ and just over $33 million for the Queen of Hearts block. These aren't exactly appraised value, but appraised value was the basis for determination of those values in our negotiations between the two parties. That land price structure has consideration in favor of the city. There is an additional $7 million that'll be due and available to the city. We agree to the exchange sometime between 2011 at the completion of City Hall and 2014, three years after the completion of City Hall. There's a reason for this, too, actually. For them to build City Hall under NRS, they, and do it under a structure where they can lease back to us, they need to own the site. Also, we wanted to hold out parcel PQ as essentially a piece of security until they performed on the development of City Hall. So our, our holding of PQ and the exchange is really a security interest on the part of the city and protecting our interest. That $7 million difference in price would be paid at the exchange either in cash or rent concession or the construction of a fire metro station or a combination thereof. If, obviously, if they're able to get the fire station and metro station built, less than there would be additional consideration, rent and cash. This is a very, another unique component of the deal. In that master plan on parcel P, there would be a parking garage. The intent is to build into that garage a small urban fire and metro station combined to serve not only the needs of parcel PQ, but a greater part of the, I guess, the west side of the railroad track portion of the redevelopment area in downtown. And so that's another component that gets added. We've long had in the Union Park master plan the need to include both a police and fire presence to support the development in the broader area around the development. Focusing in on City Hall, the MOU sets the City Hall size at 251,000 square feet and 831 parking spaces. We've simply taken the development program that the Pazuti Company has developed in a previous study done, that you, they presented to you at a previous council meeting and dropped those numbers into this agreement and set that as the development program for how we build City Hall. It would allow, though, for on that site, on the Queen of Hearts block, a phased-in development of our needs over time for, for City Hall. This is the first phase of the City Hall, there would be a parking garage next to it, but there's still room for a second phase in the future as our space needs would dictate. Forest City would build City Hall and finance it back to us through a lease. They would go out, borrow money and finance it back to us. They're willing to rent it to us at a low rent, at a rent that we can afford, and we've arbitrarily set that at $2 million, and that would be for a five-to-seven year period. The MOU sets a five-year deferral period and we would defer rent with interest to the earlier of the end of that deferral period or when PQ comes on the tax rolls. And the reason for that is we were working to really self-finance a portion of City Hall within the deal by using the tax increment dollars coming off the casino hotel on PQ to help pay for the lease payment, a full lease payment, when it comes due and payable at some point in the future. And so that's why we have that type of a deferral there. During, and I didn't cover this in briefing with you, but it's here, during that rent deferral period, there would be free ground rent on the Queen of Hearts land. That's an additional pressure on, we, throughout our MOU, we were building pressure points to really cause Forest City and Live, Work partnership to build out PQ, and this creates additional pressure for that. At the end of that rent deferral period, the city can purchase the land, it can exercise the swap, or it could enter into a long-term ground lease. We have several options available to us as to how we could negotiate and accommodate the land under the City Hall. And we also would have the option to buy City Hall at cost or continue renting via a long-term lease. Live, Work, on the Live, Work end of the deal and the PQ end, must start the hotel casino within two years after acquiring PQ, no later than the year 2016, subject to certain conditions. They obviously want to be sure they're, the Union Park infrastructure is there, they've got to have a road to come in on and utilities and those kinds of things, and they wanted certain development on Union Park to occur. They don't want to be all by themselves on Union Park, so they wanted to be sure that the Performing Arts Center was built and there would be that critical mass that we've been pointing out, developed on Union Park. Now, we believe those are very doable things. We've already issued a worded bid for Phase One of infrastructure, and we believe the Performing Arts Center will start under construction sometime later this year, so we believe these are conditions that will be easily met. The Live, Work Block Project, Blocks A, C, and D, as Dimitri had pointed out previously, will be built over multiple phases. I think they mentioned there would be a million square feet of office space built in increments, incremental phases, and then 300,000 square feet of retail built in incremental phases that each of those blocks gets developed. For the Block Project, the Redevelopment Agency would consider a full TIF pledge, an 82% TIF over a 20-year term or the earlier the sunset of the RDA. Now, this is a departure from standard policy on our TIF rebates. The reason for 82% is they will transform these five blocks. In lieu of the RDA going in and streetscaping and putting all the utilities and doing all the work in that area, it's being done in conjunction with the project. So when they complete it, we'll have all of that work done, work that we would normally have done under a RDA capital improvement program. Therefore, they're getting into our side of the TIF to make those public improvements that will make that district a transformed district. The developer agrees to build a minimum scope against a mutually agreeable schedule. We will set forth a schedule and a scope tied to that schedule that they would build out over a phased period of time. And then it also incorporates the ITC building, a new transit center on Block B. They have already executed a lease with the Regional Transportation Commission for the development of that terminal on Block B. Now, I want to very briefly go into an example of how that deferral works and how City Hall gets financed. This really sets forth that five-year period. It shows what a, an estimated payment could be, a market payment at their cost of financing. We've really roughly estimated that at $150 million cost for a City Hall, at their cost of funds, that would yield an annual lease payment of about $10 million a year. Using our affordability of $2 million a year in terms of a payment, we would be deferring $8 million a year for that five-year period. At the end of that five-year period, there would be $40 million of deferred payment due, plus their interest carry on the, on that portion of the payment. At the end of that deferral period, we have several options available to us on how to negotiate that deferral and the, and going forward with the total cost of City Hall. We could pay down the deferral with the proceeds from the existing City Hall. We'll have moved existing City Hall. The current City Hall site plus the site next door can be put in play for redevelopment. We estimate that value today at roughly $72 million, that could go against that deferral cost. The second option is we could refinance using certificates of participation or tax-exempt bonds. There will be pressure on us to do so. They will be financing at their cost of funds, which will be at least slightly higher, if not considerably higher, than what we can borrow at. And that gives us reason at that point in time to just refinance the deferral portion and the cost of City Hall into new tax-exempt funds. And then the other option available to us, if we had to, would be to refinance that balance into a new lease with them at their cost of funds. We just simply roll it into a new lease and continue to lease City Hall from them. Also, at that point, we believe the likelihood of a development on PQ is going to be very high because of all the pressures we build on them to perform on building a hotel casino on PQ, and the TIF from parcel PQ would be available to cover, we believe, approximately half of those lease costs. And I'll show you in a minute, as I get into the redevelopment impacts, what we estimate, some of the TIF being generated, not only from PQ, but from other developments will be downtown that we could use, could be used to help cover lease payment costs. So that what we've, what we've done is internally built in the ability, and within the transaction of both Live, Work and PQ, the ability to take development revenues generated by the developments to help finance, to build and finance City Hall. Let me get into the public purpose and redevelopment impacts. I think you've probably seen this map before. We show five sites downtown. The two sites directly affected by this deal are the light yellow at the bottom, the five blocks of the Live, Work project. The northernmost of those blocks is the Queen of Hearts block. That's the block that we would build City Hall on in exchange for these parcel PQ and Union Park. That's in yellow on your screen, and there's a dotted line drawn around the parcel PQ. So this project directly by moving City Hall catalyzes that five-block development that was previously described by Dimitri and directly gets the commitment to build a thousand-room casino hotel on PQ. But there are, there are other impacts that are linked, linked to the development of this project. In order for the CIM group to build out the land around the post office, if you look at the red site there, that's the land around the existing post office we're converting to a mob museum. That is where the existing bus terminal is located right now. The CIM group can't get into that site and start development of that property until that bus terminal is relocated into the Live, Work project. So there's another direct impact or indirect impact as a result of this project. The blue site is the existing City Hall site. City Hall moving into the Live, Work project leaves that site open now for redevelopment at that point. And if you notice in the green site, we've been assembling patiently that site. We started out assembling that site for expansion of City Hall. We continued the assembly of that site for the development of an arena. We now have 12 contiguous acres on that property. When you combine that with the six acres under City Hall, we have 18 acres on Las Vegas Boulevard on an interstate interchange. And as you know, in, in the city of Las Vegas, and Las Vegas Boulevard address is important and so are interstate interchanges. We have both of those on that site. We believe that will be a very valuable redevelopment site in the future, and, and as I mentioned, the proceeds of that site could go against covering some of the costs of City Hall.
Mr. Adams? Just a quick question, Scott, or comment. Have you had any interest in that 12 and...
Actually, we have. We've had some verbal interests expressed on a number of parties. I know we went, made a trip to New York this past November. At least one of the development groups that we've worked with on that New York trip has expressed interest in the site. We do have another development group that, that's expressed interest in the site. We've not even advertised it. I mean, we, quite frankly, we're really unable to... I mean, quite frankly, we're really unable to. Well, we are now, but for a while there we couldn't because of, if you remember, there was a tie under an MOU with the REI Arena Pulse Project to that site. We unhooked that on our last MOU extension. We're now able to freely discuss that site with developers. We've not issued an RFP, and to date, we have interest on the part of two national-scale developers in the development of the site, and that's without even issuing an RFP. So we believe the value in that site is there for future redevelopment.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a question also. Could you get back to the last viewpoint you had, the last site plan? You've got it. Oh, sorry. Okay.
Go back?
Yes, I just want to see again the different colored areas that you had of acreage near City Hall. The blue, the yellow.
Right there, right here.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Okay. Now, the blue City Hall, the green is the 12 acres we've accumulated, the red is our...
Right.
Tell me specifically what the red includes.
Well, the red site is the entire post office block. There's about five and a half acres on that block, including the post office and the land around it. Right now, it's, there are three things there. There's the post office.
I got you. I know. Okay, now, really basically, then, what's happening is we would have, because you're going to keep your post office, we would have maybe a couple of acres from there, plus the 12, plus the six, which would give us probably over 20 acres of contiguous land.
That's correct.
Which is worth quite a bit more.
That's correct.
I just wanted to point that out for the viewers. I think if you look at this, you can see clearly the City Hall is right in the middle of it, and as long as it's right in the middle of it, you don't have as large a partial of land that you can have if City Hall's not there, which I know you've pointed out to us and staff. I just thought this could clearly indicate it to our viewers, and that's what I wanted to point out, which is a valuable asset because getting that much land contiguous in that area, as you said, near the freeway, makes it worth a lot more.
That's correct.
Yes, but Councilwoman, keep in mind that the red area there is really part of our discussion with CIM and their development of Third Street and the Lady Luck in conjunction with the post office.
Right. And this is what the viewers might not realize, too. If we move that metro, where the bus station is, that frees up additional land to help the people you're talking about now. And again, I just wanted to make that point so people who are watching can get a better understanding.
Right. I should point out that the CIM group is also interested in this site. We've not included that in any of our negotiation. We'd like them to perform with the Lady Luck and the post office block first, but should this site continue to be available, CIM certainly would want to be in the running for consideration of that as well, to continue on their development of their whole program.
And what you're talking about here is you have a little over six acres of land on which the City Hall now stands, and if you move it, you're moving it to two acres, a little over two acres of land someplace else, which is giving us an additional amount of land to use for economics, development, and so forth.
That's correct.
Again, I wanted to point that out.
Yes. And I'm going to get to that again. I'll continue to reiterate that point as I go along. Let me just summarize what each of these sites does. On Union Park, parcel PQ, under the MOU, we have a development program established of a minimum 1,000-room hotel casino. On the Livework Las Vegas site, we have a multi-phase mixed-use development of office, retail, and parking. Dimitri carefully walked you through that. It's a 1.3 million square foot build-out of those five blocks. On the CIM Lady Luck site, the red site, you saw at a previous meeting, council meeting, Jeff Rosen standing here, walking you through their master plan for their build-out of their site. That included the rehab, the Lady Luck, the post office block redevelopment, which includes hotels, retail, parking, and the redevelopment of the Mob Museum. And then we've given a conservative estimated value of the former arena site at $72 million. Clearly, if somebody pays you at least $72 million for a piece of land, the rough rule of thumb in the development business is that land cost is usually about 10% of development cost. You're going to leverage a significant development to be able to absorb that level of land cost on that site. And let me just show what that means in real numbers. On parcel PQ, a 1,000-room hotel is a $1.2 billion project generating TIF of $5 to $6 million a year. That's the number that can go against the lease payments of City Hall within, inside the MOU transaction you're considering today. That development, though, would generate 1,000 jobs. The rough rule of thumb there is a one job per hotel room on a project like that. The Livework Las Vegas project...
Excuse me, that's direct jobs.
That's direct employment, and these are direct jobs here.
And depending on who you listen to, for every direct job, you need about three to five people to service that direct job.
Depending on the industry and in the multiplier effect. That's correct. On the Livework Las Vegas project, we're looking at about a $1.9 billion investment, annual TIF of $3 to $4 million, and over 5,000 jobs in those five blocks, when it's fully built out and all those buildings are occupied. In the CIM Lady Luck project, another $1.2 billion, $5 to $6 million in annual tax increment financing, and over 4,000 jobs. In the City Hall Arena Site, I've been very conservative here and said that if you have 700 or $72 million site, it should yield an $800 million investment, another $3 to $4 million in TIF, and simply averaged out the job creation on the other three to estimate what I believe the job creation would be on that site. So at the end of the day, this one project with the relocation catalyzes four deals totaling $4.1 billion, $16 to $20 million in TIF, and 13,000 jobs. Let me mention on TIF, at the end of this year, we will end up in the Redevelopment Agency Trust Fund with about $19 million. These four projects will virtually double the amount of tax dollars we're receiving as a redevelopment agency when they're built out.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Adams, if you will, please go back one slide. I just want to point something out. We're talking billions of dollars impacted right here in the city of Las Vegas and in the downtown area. And looking at the number of jobs that each one of these developments are bringing forward speaks volumes up against the mortgage crisis that we face today with the available houses in the inventory of the city. And this goes to show you that in just a small amount of time, which seems like an eternity for those who lack adequate housing, this absorption of 13,000 jobs, we're talking about individuals that will need places to live in order to work. And so I just wanted to make a comparison and basically bring that to everyone's attention as far as 13,000 jobs and the absorption of the available houses on the market will be filled in just, you know, a matter of 18 to 24 months.
And as a side note, we have roughly 35,000 employees who work in the greater downtown area right now. This would increase employment downtown by about a third. Why now? I think, you know, that one of the big questions has been why, and particularly relative to the development relocation of a City Hall, why should we be doing this now? We have a unique moment in time to take advantage of a number of conditions and situations that may not ever occur again in the city's history. We have the opportunity to capitalize on the private development of 45 acres as a way to help financing City Hall. I think you heard Mr. Restrepo appear before you previously and talk about the maximization of the city's real estate assets as a tool for economic redevelopment, and this clearly is the kind of project that does that. With a projected City Hall opening in 2011 and a full rent payment deferred until 2016, it puts it well beyond any most pessimistic timeframe one could ever consider that we would ever stay in any downturn in our economy. The expected economic recovery should be within the next three to five years under a pessimistic scenario. Actually, before I came here this morning, I looked up the duration of the Great Depression. It was eight years. The Great Depression lasted eight years. 2016 puts us eight years down the road before we have to start making a full payment on our lease on City Hall. And we avoid increases in future construction costs. We exist in a very unique construction environment in Las Vegas. We are in competition anywhere you exist here with the Strip for scarce labor. And our construction costs, if there's one thing that's sure here, construction costs continue to rise, and this is a way, if we build it now, we will save the cost of construction in the future. In summary, Livework, this project transforms a 12-acre site and creates a new civic center commons. It puts a new City Hall, a new intermodal terminal within close proximity of Union Park, the county complex, and the existing criminal justice center complex. PQ Development brings an iconic hotel casino to Union Park and hopefully a major gaming entity into downtown to really give downtown another big boost in the arm in terms of gaming enterprise. It leverages four large-scale developments comprising 45 acres, generating $4 billion in private investment, $16 to $20 million in new taxes, and 13,000 new jobs. And we use Forest City's expertise to develop City Hall under favorable terms. Cities aren't in the real estate development business, they're in the governmental services business. As you've seen from their track record, Forest City is clearly in the urban redevelopment and real estate business. They are experienced at building large buildings, bringing them under budget and on time. And with those summaries, you have before you a memorandum of understanding, it's non-binding, and staff does recommend approval. Be glad to answer any additional questions.
All right, thank you. Before I hear from my colleagues, I'd like to make a couple of remarks. Not all of us were here when the city council, in the year of 2000, some eight long years ago, or eight short years ago, depending on how you're looking at it, made a decision which subjected us to derision and scorn and obliquy by our critics, when we decided to acquire 60 acres on a brownfield site, which was in large part unremediated, which had sat fallow and had no use whatsoever in our downtown Las Vegas on the west side of the railroad track. Before that acquisition was made, and let us not forget, that the value of that acquisition was some $33 million, which the city did not have, but because of some smart people on our staff, they figured out a way to arrange a trade for land that we had in our more affluent part of the community, in the Technology Park up on West Lake Mead and Tenaya, to allow the city to acquire this piece of land for $33 million. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Adams, you said that PQ, what is that, about four acres?
A little more than that, almost six total.
Six acres. PQ has a value wanted in this deal of $40,250,747, some six-plus million dollars more than what the city acquired the entire 61 acres for. So let's not forget that when we're talking about what this council is about to decide. Let's not forget that there was nothing happening in the downtown, particularly on the west side of the railroad tracks, for years and within, I'm sure, Councilwoman Tarkanian's memory, and I know my memory, there was no activity there. As a result of the city acquiring this land, and as a result of smart people in the city working out public-private partnerships on TIF financing, the premium discount mall settled in the downtown, and people laughed at the city. What is a discount mall doing in an urban core? They're supposed to be out in the suburbs. But if you ask Chelsea Properties, that discount mall is amongst the highest-paying per-square-foot discount malls in their portfolio and in the United States. And then when we talked about diversity, diversifying our economy, we created a new business virtually overnight as a result of smart people in the city working out tax increment financing on the World Market Center, with the first building going up of 1,300,000 square feet. We haven't seen a building like that in this community, 1,800,000 square feet. The next one, 2 million square feet for the third one, virtually finished and topped off today, with an ultimate build-out of 12 millions square feet, creating a whole new industry in downtown Las Vegas. Where did we have a new office building, built a Class A office building like the Malaskey Water Authority Building, which is LEED certified, looked at by the green buildings agencies when they come into our community? The Urban Land Institute looks at Las Vegas and says, "Look, they're at the leading edge. They're at the cutting edge of sustainability" as a result of that building. Where else did we have the IRS building in the downtown, which paid us last year $141,000 in taxes? That's pretty good for a city to collect money from the IRS. And then what do we have? We have a structure that is past its mason's state, being constructed right in front of our eyes, a building designed by the world-class architect Frank Gehry, where people from all over are going to come to downtown Las Vegas to where the old brownfield used to be, and they're going to say, "Look at this. This is phenomenal." And as I said earlier today, the value of the land around there is going to escalate overnight when the roof is placed on that structure. We're the largest city in North America that does not have a performing arts center. We're going to have one. We're going to have a world-class performing arts center right next door because the city took a chance and acquired 61 acres of an old railroad site that nothing was taking place on it. And we're going to have the World Jewelry Mart. Robert Zarnigan is so far into this, he can't even back out. He recognizes that he has to build this 60-story, beautiful Dubai-esque-looking building with jewelry manufacturers and designers and artists coming from all over the world into downtown Las Vegas with 210,000 square feet of retail, which will be bringing people into our downtown to a fallow brownfield some eight years ago. And what has this done to the other side of the tracks? For the first time in my memory, the hotels began to put money into their properties. People forget. It's amazing how our critics forget. The Golden Nugget has $200 million into their property with a new tower, just completely redoing their property. The Four Queens, every single room has been redone. The El Cortez, which I joke about saying that I wouldn't have gone in there two years ago for fear of getting secondary lung disease, it's a beautiful boutique hotel in downtown Las Vegas. A whole new area from Las Vegas Boulevard to Eighth on both sides of Fremont Street have been created, bringing back the neon in downtown Las Vegas. None of this would have happened but for the vision of the city council and the guts to be able to go forward. Now, I don't know how anybody in their right mind with that kind of track record wants to criticize us, but I guess the watchdogs are out there, and they want to make sure that we're spending taxpayer money properly. It couldn't be spent better. We're going to have the City Hall, which we will virtually be occupying, and I'm not sure whether it's until 2012, which is a lifetime, or 2016, without paying full rent. In bad economic times, and when the times are going to be good, and we're going to be able to have the ability to take this building, and this is an old building, it's a beautiful building. I love this City Hall, but it's an old building. Just walk in through the basement like all the employees, and you want to choke with the odor that's down there and the drips that are taking place, and the lights going off, and all of the crap that takes place in the building. But we don't complain about it, we come to work every day. But when you have a chance to have a new, beautiful civic center, this isn't going to be an ordinary City Hall. This isn't going to be one of those old buildings where I used to clerk as a lawyer back in Philadelphia, where the wind would blow through the stone while you're freezing in February and March. This is going to be a civic center. This is going to be a building that Dr. Selby contemplates and envisions of having the City Hall chambers, which are used now just for council meetings and planning commission meetings, and just an occasional meeting for the public. meetings, and just an occasional meeting for the public, utilized all the time for community events. This is going to be truly a civic complex. This could be something different than any other city has because we're Las Vegas and because people in Las Vegas have vision and people in Las Vegas take a chance. They don't just sit back in their offices and take potshots and criticize because it's the popular thing to do. So I can't see any reason that we shouldn't go forward with this. I really, as Councilman Barlow pointed out, a whole new group of folks are going to be coming into our downtown here, they're going to be working here, they're going to be living here, they're going to be making money here. We're not putting anything up front. It'd be different if we have to reach into our pocket here and pay like any other city would to have a city hall built. Somebody's going to build it for us. It's remarkable. It's not something that should be criticized. A building that we can be proud of. See, that's something else that people fail to realize. You want to be proud of what you are. You want to be proud of being a world-class city. And you just don't say, "We're not going to do this, we're not going to do that." In tough times, you get tough. Don't worry about the budget, we're taking care of the budget. We had a nice budget meeting, and we're tightening our belts, and we're making up for a $20 million deficit, and we're doing it a smart way, people will have to work a little bit harder, but we're going to get through that. But what are you supposed to do? Stop? You're supposed to stop being leaders and visionaries and creators when you have a blip, and that's what this is, a blip in our financial well-being. We've had eight great years, had plenty of money. I think we spent it wisely. That's why we have all these things that we're able to point to at this point in time. So in my opinion, if we're making this site available for a group like CIM to come in and expand what they're already planning, and there are people who haven't visited the Third Street promenade and haven't gone down to Hollywood and looked at the Academy Award building that CIM purchased there and is making it into a wonderful place where Cirque du Soleil is going to perform, if you haven't been there, I don't know whether you really should criticize us. But when you go down there and you see the energy, the vitality, and you see all of the wonderful things that the cities are providing to their constituents and their visitors, then you have a different attitude, you have a different feeling towards it. And when you see the tremendous projects, I think we're, I really think that we're lucky to have Forest City come in with what they've done, with their track record, to be our partner. I think we're lucky to have Barnett Lieberman and David Mitchell with Live Work to come in into our community and to try to bring business into our community and try to bring new industry into our community and have their dream in Las Vegas. I think we're privileged. So I'm looking forward to hearing what my colleagues have to say, but this is a no-brainer. It really is a no-brainer. As I say, I don't believe anybody's at risk on this one. This is a win-win-win-win to take us to the next level of being a great city. And to those who don't want to be a great city, I don't want them to live here. How do you like that? How do you like that? For those who don't want to have great schools and pay for the schools, I don't think they should live here. If they don't want to have great medicine, have great doctors and academic medical centers, they shouldn't want to live here. Let them go someplace else. I don't want people who live in Las Vegas to want to be in the world-class city. I want to be the mayor of the world-class city. I want this to be the council of the world-class city. And any of our critics who don't like it, I don't want them here. I don't want to listen to them. I'll use the paper so my dogs can poop on it. Next, please.
Mayor, I want to thank the Forest City Group for stepping forward on these projects. Just for a little bit of information, I know Councilman Barlow, who is very active in his ward, just for those people out there that don't understand, the five blocks on Main Street are in Ward Three, and PQ property is in Ward Five, as well as the CIM and the current city hall is in Ward Five. I've had a good relationship working with Ward Five council people, as well as liaisons for the last seven, eight years. Mr. Lieberman couldn't be here today. I've certainly enjoyed meeting with him and Dave Mitchell over the years. This is not something that we just dreamed up overnight. As the mayor referenced, all of the development on the west side of the railroad tracks, we have had some extraordinary-type developments on the east side of town. Because of our redevelopment efforts, and Scott Adams and those before him need to be commended, I think that in the future, the city of Las Vegas is going to depend upon, or is going to survive because of, those efforts in the future. You looked at some of those figures that the redevelopment agency has on hand today. The mayor asked me how much money we had the first year or so when the RDA was established. I don't remember, but I can tell you that I am certain that it was a lot more than the $19 million we have today. And you see, you've seen those charts showing how much this is estimated into, this development is going to bring into that fund. This money is not only going to be for those that build new, to me it's going to be a true characterization of redevelopment. We're going to be able to help some of the smaller businesses, we're going to be able to see some of these smaller projects, office complexes, live-work facilities get built. The mayor and I, we have two projects that kind of started us years ago. Can Page Place, which their critic says, "Don't build it, it'll never work." It's a huge success. La Actin over on Las Vegas Boulevard, a huge success. The mayor and I still have $100 a piece coming from one of our persons that thought it was going to go astray, but it didn't, and he still hasn't paid us the monies.
May the record reflect Councilman McDonald.
We have many briefings. I want to thank the Forest City Group for briefing not only those persons that these projects wards are in, but the other council members. I appreciate the other council members having the opportunity to make comments, to ask questions, to make sure that we all are doing what we're supposed to, and that's being responsible to those that elected us. And sometimes we have to do those things that people may not, or they've been told. But one thing I want to bring out is, when we move into the new city hall, we have not spent one penny of taxpayer's money if it passes. To me, that's quite extraordinary. It don't happen every day. But you look at some of those projects that have been built throughout, not only the United States, but in other countries too, with some of these groups. Mr. Lieberman has another project over on Charleston and Third Street. He's going to have some affordable apartments. It's going to be started by the Arch District in the next year or so. Comparable rent. We're going to be, we're going to be creating jobs downtown. But how about those jobs that are being created out on the strip as we speak right now? We are in a financial slump. But I know that because of the type of industry we have here in the city of Las Vegas, in Clark County, we are going to rebound. I don't think it's going to be eight years, Scott, I really don't, I hope not. But again, though, you look at eight years, we're not going to be here. I've tried to look at those applications, those projects, that I see every council meeting day, out in the northwest, and the Councilman Wilson's ward. People don't realize that 60 years from now, they're going to be going through the same thing that Wards One, Three, and Five are going through right now. They're going to be 60 years old. You're going to be looking at me doing shopping centers, you're going to be looking for people like we have before us today to help them do something with their properties that are going by the wayside. Have we been a success downtown? The mayor illustrated. And I'm not, I'm on the inside, so I guess I'm a little bit prejudiced, but I think we have been successful. And it's not only because of this council, because it's because of the people that stand before us today and their conscience and their records. They have a lot riding on these projects also. This is not just us, these people are involved more so than we are because it's their dollar that we're working on. The RTC model, part of the civic center, the civic plaza down on Main Street, huge. I would love to see these trams going down the middle with these fast cars going up and down, letting people on and off. We're not going to be able to have that for maybe years to come. But we have had staff, we have had meetings with the RTC to make sure that we have transportation in and out of our downtown locations. We're not trying to steal people from the strip. We want people to want to come here and stay here. I never thought I'd ever see an application for a 1,000-room hotel casino downtown. But we have one before us. Is it going to be another win hotel? To our downtown area, it will be. It'll be iconic. The mayor never talked about the arena. Are we going to get an arena? Absolutely. Is it going to be in the location that we had first picked? Probably not. But all this is happening, again, because of our redevelopment efforts, our OBD office, and this council thinking outside the box. I think we have to continue to think outside the box. There's been mention that, do we need a new city hall? I wished at the time when this question was first asked, that, to me, the proper answers could have been given. When is the right time for a new city hall? When is the right time to buy a new car, trade in your old car? Best decisions that parents make, grown-ups make? Is there a need? Yes. Can we put an influx of money into the city hall? Like the mayor said, I love it here too, I've been here going on 13 years. I've seen money spent on the existing city hall. Can we continue to spend the money? Yes. But where are we going to be? For those people that are here seven, eight years from now, they're going to be going over the same issues that we're going over today. Only to me, it's going to be 10 times worse. It's going to be 100 times harder to make that decision then than it is today. And as the mayor voiced, we do have critics out there. I applaud them, I appreciate them. But I have not had one hall in my office or where I work criticizing us for trying to build a new city hall. And I have contacted people all over the city of Las Vegas, all over Clark County. I feel quite confident, if somebody would have called me and complained about us putting in a new city hall, I would address those issues, I would explain to them the need that I feel and the financing method that we're trying to use here. And I know that we have had our briefings on what we have to do to survive this downfall or this downturn in our economy. And I want those city employees to know that they're going to work, they're working with us, they're going to work with us, and in the long run, they're going to have, hopefully, because I support it, a new place to work. They will be rewarded for their efforts. I think that city staff, they have worked for us, with us, to the side of us, and I want to applaud them. I think it's important that they know that we do, that we do understand where we're at today and what we're trying to do here. And I think it's important that people know that we're not spending any of our taxpayer dollars to get a new city hall. Mayor, I would like to maybe save a few minutes to rebuttal after some of the other council members have spoke.
Certainly.
I think it's important that we get all the questions answered. I want to hear all the comments that people do have, even those from the public who want to speak today. And I want to, again, thank Barnett, who's not here, for those meetings, that he's come to my city hall east and talked to me and briefed me. I think that they are the right developers. I know Forest City brings a lot to us, and I appreciate them, and I just look forward to working for them in the future.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else like to be heard? Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. Number one, Mayor, let me just applaud you for your fabulous words of setting the record of where the city has come. Because in my humble opinion, and I'm not saying this to gain any brownie points whatsoever, but I have never seen a mayor in any city as passionate as you are in regards to the development of this great city. And I've stated in public, and I have stated in private, that it was due to your bully pulpit that really got the attention of many people, not only locally but nationally. And so to your credit, Mayor, I must applaud you for that. For the last eight-plus years, this council has sat in numerous meetings, briefings, and have traveled around the country selling a Las Vegas vision, planting seeds of development in an area that some pundits have called dead, dreary, bleak, and dismal. Today, I smile. I smile and I respond to those same pundits by providing them with new word choices, such as visionaries, bright future, economically viable, revigorating, and there to steal your word, world-class. There are three types of people, in my opinion. Those that ask what happens, those that watch what happens, and then there are those, such as this council, that makes things happen. And you can't do that unless you have a council that is united, a united front, a united effort. When the times are good, we're smiling. And when the times are bad, we're still smiling because we understand that it takes an entire group to move an agenda. And that is what this council has done, and that is what this council will continue to do. Yes, we are in an economic crisis nationally and locally, but we must work through this economic downturn because we're in a position to place ourselves in a very beautiful spot, still in the downtown area, to be a part of what's yet to come. Yes, we are on the cutting edge, and I like the fact that we're on the cutting edge and to team up with such great partners, such as the development group that we have before us today. us today. Mayor, council, we're going to take our hits, and I'm willing to take those hits because we're placing our city above and beyond other cities, in my opinion, of bringing the variety of diversification into this community, which has long been needed for the entire community. And so, I say to those pundits, continue to do what you do, hey, because that's your job. And we're going to continue to do what we do, and that's be the true visionaries of this community. And I will say, any further comments, Mayor, after my colleagues have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wilson?
Good. Thank you. Scott, could I ask you to go back a couple of slides? It was towards the end where you listed the number of jobs that we're going to gain from these projects.
Sure.
It's going to be a couple of seconds. While we're bringing the slide up, Scott, my question is this, and I think the slide had, if you will, a bar that goes across for each of the four projects, I guess I can label them projects. There we go. Thank you. I call it four projects or four subject matters, and what you've listed there are permanent jobs that we're going to gain from each of these projects. If you were to give me your best guesstimate of the timeframe from today until the date we realize those 13,400 jobs, how many years out are we?
The interesting thing is, three of these four are going to happen simultaneously. Parcel PQ, Live Work, and the CM Lady Luck project, if, as we relocate the terminal in the city hall, then it pays a way for all three of these to happen basically simultaneously. So, I would say we'll see initial build-out within the next few years.
We're talking six, eight years.
Well, what I'm saying is, we'll see first phases of these within the next three to five, and we'll see the balance of it built out in five to seven year time periods.
Five to seven years.
That's being fairly conservative.
Five to seven years is a fair timeframe for when we realize these things that you've noted in this graph. Secondly, Chris and gentlemen, have you been, I know you have, Chris, but have you been over to our Regional Justice Center here in our downtown area?
Yes.
And I think that's one of the last government buildings that's built, and I just want to make sure you go in there a couple of times, and I don't want to have another Regional Justice Center.
No, I've waited on the first floor like everybody else has for 20 minutes for an elevator.
Okay, okay. And you know what I'm talking about. It's a beautiful building, but it's not what I consider to be a practical, user-friendly building. And if this council votes today and in the future to go forward with this city hall project, I want it to be something that is just that, practical and user-friendly, and of course, everything else we talked about, something we can be proud of. There are some out-of-pocket monies that the city is going to be required to spend. Are there not, Scott? If we approve, not today, but in the near future, some architectural and design stages...
My appreciation, and maybe Orlando might want to address this, as project manager on the city hall project.
Yes, Mayor. Yes, we will have a firm cost. We had on the agenda, item 52 for JMA, that will be brought before you on the next council meeting in May, your first meeting. That will be approximately 2.7 million. In addition, we will also have, we have the privilege and honor to have Mr. Howard Alkus from Alkus Mufati to join their team, and that will be a little additional cost to their current contract so we can get an iconic city hall that we all want. In addition, we will be looking at retaining the services of an owner's rep to make sure that we do get the quality building that we want, so we will not have a repeat of the RJC. And those would be the additional costs that will be before you in the next few months.
I heard your figure of about 2.7 and then something additional on top of that. What's the additional on top of that, if you can come to an estimated figure?
I think right now that Mr. Schuman and Mr. Alkus are negotiating that cost right now, so I do not have a number.
I mean, is it half a million dollars? Is it a million dollars?
When we estimated it, when we estimated, just through Pizzuti, I believe we're looking at around 700,000 additional or 800,000.
Okay, so we're about 2.7 plus seven or eight, so we're about three and a half million dollars. Is that right?
Correct. And then we also have the owner's rep that we're negotiating right now as well.
And how much is that going to cost?
Originally, I believe, if I recall, they're asking approximately 5 million, but we're negotiating it to what we actually need. So, we have a $5 million threshold that we're aware of that we have in our capital fund. So, we can extrapolate from that. It'd be about 1.3, 1.4 that we can work with them.
Okay. The reason I make mention of that is I just think it would be fair to say that there are some out-of-pocket expenses, and these are monies that we are going to have to vote in the future, taxpayers' monies that we will spend, assuming this council approves these projects. And we don't recoup these monies, Scott. If something goes south, these are monies that we spend in the next year or two. Is that the timeframe we're talking about?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the JMA contract, if you recall from the Pizzuti report, part of our issue is every time we delay this a month, it's costing us money. The Pizzuti report said an average of around 700,000 a month, every month we delay. So, that's why we have such an aggressive schedule. The 2011 is our target date, and I'll give you an example. When we built, when Clark County Government Center was constructed, it's 385,000 square feet. They built it at a cost of 68 million dollars. If they were going to reconstruct that building, same building today, they're looking in excess of over 200 million. So, just the cost of construction is just the escalation of the dollar.
Orlando, I understand the reasoning why we're doing it. I guess my question is this. We're talking about three or four, five million dollars. Over what timeframe are we going to be spending that money? In the next two to three years?
JMA would be the seven-month, once that approved, it'd be completed with seven months. When we do, and that would be in addition to Howard Alkus, whatever that's going to be, so that'd be like 3.7 million. And then the owner's rep would be over the duration of the construction, or whatever you can negotiate.
And then, Scott, I think it's a fair question, and this is for you, Scott, or perhaps Dr. Selby. You know, I've been trained to look at pros and cons of things, and you know, what are the upsides and what are the downsides? I'd like you to be as objective as you can, and I know you will be, and Dr. Selby, I invite you into this discussion. What are the potential risks? What are the potential downsides? Gentlemen, you know, I've read your materials. I'd like these to be made part of the record. If we could provide these to whomever wants to see them, because they're very impressive. But, anything can happen. So, what are the potential risks or downsides? What should we be thinking of as those kinds of things?
And I think, you know, as I mentioned in briefing, the only, you know, this is a transaction where we've really looked at securing the city's position on it. Clearly, one of the things we've done is held back Parcel PQ as a security interest on the part of the city. Flip side of that, though, is I think if there's any risk in the transaction, it would be Forest City, Live Work's inability to build out the Casino Hotel on PQ. We have built into our negotiations a number of things that would pressure on them to do that. If you look at the high level of this project, they're really not, and I'm going to somewhat speak for them a little bit, because this is something that was a subject of our negotiations and fairly serious, they're really not making the kind of money on the five-block Live Work development that you would expect as a preferred return unless you get Parcel PQ. PQ is sort of the profit, so to speak, in the deal. And we think they're going to do everything they can to build a Casino Hotel on PQ, because that's, at the end of the day, if they did just Live Work, they're not going to get the kind of preferred return that they expect as a developer without PQ. But to be fair, the risk would be they are unable to get financed in a major commitment to a gaming operator for Parcel PQ. Looking at it at a high level, and you look at the momentum that we've built up downtown, the kinds of development commitments we're getting downtown, I think that is an extremely remote commit, you know, risk, but that is probably the risk in the transaction. Now, from the city's viewpoint, if PQ didn't get built out, we're going to continue to see, based on our projections of all the development that's happening downtown, our redevelopment tax increment trust funds continuing to grow. So, the opportunity to do a city hall project in the manner that we're doing will still be there, it just wouldn't be internal to the transaction. But within the deal, if there's risk, it's on PQ. But I think that's minimal because that's where their profit is. At the end of the day, that's what they've got to do to make money on this whole project. We've got some things built in, we've held it back, we've got some rent consideration on the Queen of Hearts block as pressure, that means that they're having to incur the carry on PQ as interest pressure to get it built, to stop the meter on that. There's a whole bunch of things we've built into the transaction to mitigate that risk.
And councilmen, I would just suggest that if there is a risk, and I think the deal is structured such that most of the risk is placed on the development team, it might be in 2016 when we have to pay up the deferred interest. If we're not financially in good shape at that point, our options may be limited, less than those that we think are available today.
And I think as part of what Scott told us earlier, we have options in 2016. We built into this agreement, we have various options should we not be financially able to do what is perhaps the best option.
We have options on the land on the Queen of Hearts site, and we have options on how to handle the continuation of the lease or the buyout of the project, on the city hall project itself. So, there is a lot of flexibility within the transaction, and we did that deliberately because we are dealing with something five years down the road.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Senator Ross, if you... No, thank you, sir. Councilwoman?
I'm on the record from previously as voting against bringing forward the discussion of a new city hall, and I took that position because of the economic downturn our city has, as well as the rest of the country, which we're now experiencing where many can't fill a gas tank, buy enough milk, or hold on to their homes. Many are losing their jobs. Personally, I couldn't care less if I'm working in a new city hall or now, or not. It doesn't matter. And I think probably for the other councilmen up here, it doesn't matter if they're working in a new city hall or not. I think there's no self-serving feeling within the council as to, oh, it would be wonderful to work in a big, new fancy building or something like that, which sometimes people have criticized. I feel that's not true whatsoever. I have conveyed this feeling about not wanting this new city hall, a feeling about it many times in staff briefings. However, today we again have an item relating to a new city hall, and although initially, when it came up, I felt similar to my first vote, I know that as a matter of what we need to do as council members for due diligence, we needed to, and to maintain objectivity, myself and my entire staff undertook during these past two weeks, an extensive in-depth study of the item. And from the knowledge we have gained, I am now viewing this issue somewhat differently. In particular, I took note of the comments made in staff briefings and before the city council at our last budget workshop. John Restrepo, an economist, discussed how we can best meet these needs that we have, these economic problems that we have. He told us then that the city has few liquid assets and that we must utilize the land the city owns as an asset. It is the only viable asset the city has. This respected economist has no connection whatsoever with the item we are considering today, so I considered his statements as unbiased. We must use our land values to make money, creating new development and job opportunities. Because of all of the information obtained, I view this item today not about a new city hall. That, to me, anyway, is not the linchpin. The core of this is about four sites of city land which can provide almost 14,000 new jobs, a lasting economic benefit for our city. We need to use the TIF factor while we have it, while we can, and we need the tax monies a casino in the PQ area of Union Park can bring. And as we stated before, it'll be the first totally new downtown casino in 25 years. So, taking what Restrepo said, and also the information which the applicants and staffs were so kind to provide to us, and so patient in answering all the questions I and my staff had, and using all of that to address what we now have on the agenda, I feel this item is not about a new city hall, but more about putting together parcels of land that can be sold at significant profit to the city and can provide a stimulus to provide approximately those 14,000 jobs I mentioned. Right now, our city hall rests on six acres of land. We can move it to 2.75 acres with appropriate architectural design, with no cost to the city until about 2014, at which time the economic recession is expected to have come to an end. The acres on which our current city hall now sits lie between other acreage, which can be added to provide 20 acres of contiguous land, which makes each of these smaller parcels more valuable. We have highly experienced developers here with sterling experience, sterling recommendations, wanting to work with us on developing a future city hall and making a small profit on that. So, I hope, a small profit. So, this is where we are, with a memorandum of understanding providing a framework for possibly following through on this, but which also is non-binding on us. We can ask additional questions before a final vote. For all of that is at stake, it seems appropriate to vote yes on this item and carefully scrutinize all additional steps to follow. And that's how I'm feeling today in support of the item. I went at length to explain it because I know there are many questions out there in the community. And I asked the staff, before the item comes up again, for a more permanent binding vote, please provide for us the figures on the estimated cost and profit that would occur with the city hall situation and the leasing to the developer, and possibility of the developers building on their monies, the new fire metro building in the PQ area, as we have sometimes asked other developers to do in their area, and as that is the extremely valuable piece of land, and it will be part of what they're doing that will add the increase to the need for that police metro place. And also to look at the parking situation, some of the information we provided wasn't quite clear on exactly how much we would have. I mean, you gave us an exact figure, but then you also said if they needed some of it, they could use it, and you know the big problem with parking downtown, and I just asked that more specific information be obtained. I appreciate what has been given to us, and I appreciate and I trust in your feelings about us. I know you're businessmen. I know businessmen have to make a profit, but I just want to be sure on the next information given, exactly what that is related to city hall. And to me, I would be voting approval on this for the information I just stated.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Honored. First off, I appreciate your comments. I think they speak to what's before us today as far as the long-term vision, but downtown's a special place, and you listen to some of the old timers, some of the original Las Vagans. They talk about Fremont Street and driving down Fremont Street and doing grocery shopping and retail shopping, and people live just a few minutes away. It certainly is a special place, a unique place, and cannot be replicated, not only here in Southern Nevada, but anywhere. Fremont Street in itself is a landmark and a name that's recognized worldwide, and it hit hard times. When we look at the downtown area, I think some of my colleagues have mentioned it, and Mr. Restrepo certainly emphasized it, this down... Mr. Restrepo certainly emphasized it, this downtown area, and certainly the area just outside the redevelopment agency boundaries, holds the key to ensuring the economic vitality and long-term budget demands on the city. It really has become focused that, over the next 10, 20 years, what happens in this downtown area will mean the success or failure of the city overall. As much as we love the master planned communities on the perimeter of our city, and the wonderful retail that's been developed out there, downtown is the key. And I don't think we, as a city, have the luxury that some of the other parts of the valley enjoy. I don't think we have the luxury to wait for a city center, $9 billion project to be announced downtown and built in three years. We don't have that, because we are different. Our job is continually to evaluate these type of opportunities, and they are. They are opportunities that come before us, and if we look over the last eight years, as the mayor mentioned, we've had some great opportunities, we've taken advantage of many, and we've said no to others. Some opportunities have failed over the months or years that have been engaged with the city, but that's part of the whole process. And we look, the mayor said it best, we look over the past eight years, and all of a sudden, you go through the litany of projects that are now up and operational. This incremental success that we've talked about before, we now have a real foundation for downtown redevelopment, downtown renaissance, and that's eight years. We're looking at the next eight years with just one project before us today, and certainly we have to look beyond the next eight, 16, 24 years. That's what's before us today. It's an opportunity, but an opportunity on a magnitude that we have not seen before. We certainly have four cities, as far as their track record, their proven track record of downtown development, redevelopment, renaissance projects, projects that impact not only the core area, but absolutely the cities and the counties that they're involved with. And one of the things that we are often criticized for is making some of these decisions that we won't see the effect tomorrow. It may be five years, 15 years, 20 years. But opposed to that is the safe way, and I think this is some of the problems that we, as electeds, run into. The safe way often is, let's defer this difficult decision. Let's defer looking at what's going to happen from an impact standpoint 20 years down the road. Let's just address what is going to happen today. And unfortunately, especially in our market, in our growth market, the more we defer decisions, not only redevelopment, but transportation, and housing, and infrastructure, the more we defer it and play it safe, all we're doing is passing on that burden to the next group of officials that sit on this council, or anywhere at the local level, at the state level. That's the safe way. This council has not taken the safe way. We've taken some risk over the past eight years, and that risk has turned into some phenomenal projects. And I say this council, but Dr. Selby, Mr. Adams, I certainly put a lot of that responsibility on you, and the great job that you've done in creating the downtown, and the opportunities that exist downtown now. But it's a major puzzle. Again, we don't have the luxury that we can hope for that one mega project to come in and save the day. Scott, you said it best, I think some of my colleagues have indicated, that this is just another piece of that puzzle, albeit a large piece, but how this moves forward, and what we do as far as the disposition of the existing city hall, and other real estate assets we have downtown, and how this will impact additional development. That's not an easy decision, and it's certainly not an easy picture to paint for our citizens. The key question that I've been asked regarding this specific project at this specific time is how is it going to impact me, that one citizen? What does this project mean to that one citizen? And it comes down to pretty much the budget, what's it going to mean to the taxpayers? And that in itself, our budget process is comprehensive, it's very complex, it doesn't fit into a five-second soundbite or a catchy phrase in the newspaper. But I've said it before, I would encourage any citizen to approach any member of council or our staff, and if they really want to learn what we've done from a budget standpoint, I think it's a great story to tell. As long as we have Mark Vincent beside us with all the details, it's a great story to tell. We've done some things over the last eight years, just from a city financing standpoint, that have put ourselves in a very strong fiscal position, and enabled ourselves to get through this little blip in the radar screen, and we will get through it, there's no question about it. Vegas is renowned for the first one to come out of these type downturns. So I would say to that citizen that we, and without saying we're mixing apples and oranges, this project before us deals with the future, and how we can handle the future and continue this momentum that the mayor so eloquently spoke of, and it's not going to harm them and their day-to-day impact as far as what we do with our budget. It will not. This council will not put that risk on the table. And I don't even consider this a risk today. I think this is analyzing another opportunity, buying into a great partner, and moving forward as a city to become, as the mayor indicated, the great city that we all wish. So I am certainly supportive of it. I think it's another opportunity that I don't want to turn into a lost opportunity, I want to take advantage of it. The implication and the impacts of this alone, directly and indirectly, are just phenomenal. And I certainly applaud staff and the applicant before us, because it's great that we can, in 2008, talk about a proposed project downtown Las Vegas of this caliber, of quality, of magnitude, and I'll certainly be supportive.
All right, thank you very much, everybody. Could I have a motion, please?
Your Honor, yes.
Not on this, this is not a public hearing.
That's what Councilman Marie said.
All right, fine. If Councilman Marie said it, I'll keep his word. Go ahead.
You said that you involve the public. The truth is, I love this city, I love this country, I love the state of Nevada. Me and my wife came out west 46 years ago in an old one-turn truck, and two babies from Cleveland, Ohio, and the people say, "You're a fool, young man, leaving here." If you don't gamble, you don't go no place. I don't mean gambling gambling, but life is full of chances. I mean, all the inventions in this great nation and the world over the last 150 years, the airplane, everything, don't you understand sometimes you get knocked down, but get it, those that don't do nothing don't have nothing, but those that take chances, move on. So the wall gets ahead on chance. Well, none of us can be here tomorrow, but always look forward. And that man right there, Oscar's a forward-looking fellow. Thank you, buddy. We fight a lot, but how much is it all? Listen, tell me, please, you take chances, because that's a part, and the citizens don't mind y'all spending a few bucks every now and then, let's take a little look, hey, that's a part of the game. Chances are named a game. Now, we got things in there that, things in this world that happen nowadays, like that little, this thing you hold in your hand, got all that information that, I don't believe that, when I used to look at Dick Tracy, them had that little two-way whatever, and Budweiser plain with that little spray, we have accomplished all of that, even from the funny papers, you listening? You got to dream. Keep on dreaming, and make it come true. I love you.
Sorry about that. No, that was great. I appreciate that.
Your Honor, I do want to make one comment before I make my motion. I made a comment that the new city hall itself would not cost us a penny, the taxpayers a penny. Because of some of the comments Councilman Brown made, and our, Mr. Vincent, we did set aside $5 million, I think it was five years ago or six years ago, for this study of the new city hall.
That's correct, Councilman.
How much did we set aside at that time?
It's $5 million that we have in the CIP for this project.
That money was set aside long before this downturn, but the new city hall itself won't cost us a penny. And with that, Your Honor, I certainly appreciate the opportunity, like I mentioned, of working with these developers. I really appreciate all those comments that was made by the council members, and especially by the mayor, for his leadership. I want all those incorporated into my motion, and it's very simple, Your Honor, I make a motion on item 43, that we follow staff recommendation for approval of this item.
Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries.
And on item 44, I also make a motion for, follow staff recommendation for approval.
All right, vote. Does he want to be heard, Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, on behalf of Forest City and of Work, we wish to thank the mayor and the council, but we also wish to thank the staff of the Office of Business Development, led by Scott Adams, who has been our teacher, and has really helped us through this process, and also wish to thank Dr. Selby and Ollie Sanchez. It's been a very complex, but it's been a very positive and meaningful experience. And of all the cities that we collectively deal in, and I got to tell you, this is the most forward-thinking, the most pragmatic and linear administration that we've ever dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it should be noted that, as far as this project is concerned, this is the first day of the rest of our life. Okay?
We understand, and congratulations on your granddaughter.
Thank you. All right, let's vote on that motion, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Do we go to 52?
45.
Oh, right, right. 45, discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new burglar alarm service license, 360 Locksmith LLC, doing business as 360 Lock &amp; Key at 9557 Given Avenue. This is in Ward 6. Ms. Meyer?
Mayor, members of council, the applicant that we have before you today has met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval of this license, and that would be my recommendation, subject to all conditions.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions to Ms. Meyer? All right, Counselor Ross, please.
Your Honor, follow staff recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 46 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license for Roger M. Penna at 2670 Crimson Canyon Drive, Suite 150. This is in Ward 4. This is an ancillary license to an existing business. Meyer?
Yes, Mayor, and council members, the applicant that we have today has met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval of this license. This is just one massage room inside his chiropractic office, and my recommendation would be approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Mr. Penna?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I own a chiropractic...
Please identify yourself.
My name's Roger Penna. I own a chiropractic establishment, and I wanted to bring in massage for ancillary reasons to help with the patients.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Meyer, Dr. Penna? All right, this is in Ward 4.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Item 47 is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license for Sensations Skin and Day Spa at 3155 North Rainbow Boulevard in Ward 5. Ms. Meyer?
The applicant that we have today has met our criteria for consideration of temporary approval of this license, and my recommendation would be approval, subject to all conditions.
Thank you. Would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Patricia Gray, and I'm purchasing an established day spa, and we're just looking to continue on the good service to the northwest area.
Thank you. Any questions for the ladies? All right, saying none. Counselor Barlow?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 48 is discussion and possible action regarding a review of a beer wine cooler off-sale license for Sabah Shoshani, doing business at Bell's Market at 720 West Owens Avenue in Ward 5. Didi Fiore?
Mayor, members of the council, this is a six-month review of a permanent license for the Bell's Market, and over the last six months, they have been operating under certain conditions. I'm going to read those conditions into the record. The first condition is, the applicant may hire independent security personnel with the requirement that they obtain a valid work card, be unarmed, and wear visible uniforms. Condition two is, security personnel must address parking lot issues during the hours of 2:00 p.m. to closing daily. Condition three is, install a video surveillance system to aid in monitoring activity inside and outside the store. Condition four is, post signs inside and outside the store that notify patrons of the video surveillance system. Condition five is, work with Metro and security to enforce trespassing of undesirables. And condition six is, enforce the no loitering and no alcohol consumption laws within 1,000 feet of the establishment. Calls for service for this location over the last six months that were generated outside of Metro's self-generation of calls for service were 11, and that is a pretty insignificant number when it comes to calls for service for a convenience store of this nature. One of the conditions that we did find they were in violation of about two weeks ago was the condition that the security personnel was not on the premises at 2:00 p.m., an inspection was conducted, and security personnel had not arrived at the premises at that time. Other than that, we do not have any additional concerns of the business and the operation presently. We would like to see the security personnel working closer with Bolden Area Command if they have problems that arise, but as you can see, the 11 calls for service, again, do not present a significant number that we would be concerned with. Today's review is just that, it's a review of the activity occurring over the last six months, and any conditions or any further reviews would have to be at the approval of the city council, and that's my report for today.
All right, very good. Would you identify yourself, please?
My name is James Shoshani, I'm here representing for my father, Sabah Shoshani, and something we have done to take care of the problem with the security is that we have hired another security guard now, so we have backup for it. The situation the day we had the inspection, our guard was late, a few hours, but we hired another guard for that situation.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Shoshani or Mr. Didi Fiore? All right, hearing none. Counselor Barlow?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Shoshani, thank you for coming in and meeting with me on yesterday. As I explained to you on yesterday that I'm aggressively working to clean up this corridor in which your store is located, I'm looking forward to continue our working relationship as a business owner in Ward 5. There are a high level of expectation I've set for all business owners doing business in Ward 5, because the day of coming into this district and running roughshod over the community is gone, I'm not going to stand for it under my watch. And so for that, the conversation that I had with you on yesterday as it relates to the loitering in your parking lot, I'm not going to stand for it, and you assured me that you're going to step up your enforcement and make sure that the loitering, as well as the vehicles that are parked there just idling and chit-chatting and doing what they do, will no longer exist. I'm happy to hear that you, in fact, have hired an additional security guard onsite, and that makes a total of two, is that correct?
Correct.
And your hours of operations are?
Business hours are from 7:00 to 10:00, Sunday through Thursday, and 7:00 to 11:00, Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Just shy of replacing the condition of a security agency with the fact that you've brought in an additional person, I will move to an additional six-month review of this application, and I look forward to you continuing to work with my office, as well as work with the Bolden Area Command, to assist in the process of being a community partner, and helping me clean up this corridor in which your store sits. It can only benefit you as a business owner, and we want to make sure that we work with you as a business owner, making sure that the customers that come into your store come into a clean store, being able to purchase items, but at the same time be able to transition off of your property and not sit and be a nuisance in the neighborhood. So you've committed to that, I'm going to hold you to that, and for that, my condition today will be a six-month review of this application, and that will be my motion.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask for clarification? The conditions that I read into the record, do they stay intact?
Counselor Barlow?
The, yes, they do.
All right, let's vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 49 is discussion, I think this is yours as well.
It's a different, it's a different licensee.
Oh, okay, item 49, discussion and possible action regarding a review of a package license and... and restricted gaming license for seven slots, Shoshani and Jargies, doing business as Family Food, Roman numeral two, at 1602 H Street in Ward Five. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, to say sometimes the conditions on the license before you are the same exact conditions on the previous license. And just a brief summary of what has occurred over the last six months, there were twenty calls for service that were generated outside of Metro. And Mr. Jargies, who's before me today, or before the council today, also had an incident, which is in your backup here, related to a battery charge going back to October of 2007. That has been disposed of in court. Mr. Jargies is on a term of staying out of trouble for nine months and has, or is supposed to attend counseling, and there will be a review of his status in December of this year. The other item that I'll bring to the council's attention is that we did conduct an inspection on the premises about two, two and a half weeks ago, and likewise, there was a warning notice issued to Mr. Jargies for violation of one of the conditions, and that was not having security on the premises after 2:00 p.m. Other than that, it's a review of a permanent license, and any conditions or any further reviews would have to be made forward by the council, similar to what we just did on Bell's Market. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
Famous Jargies from Family Food, number two, 1602 H Street.
Be happy to hear from you, sir.
Oh, regarding the issues for the battery-
Anything you want to tell us?
It was dismissed by the court with the six-month to be reviewed again in December. And for the security, it was only one day. We never, does the day, they never show up on the premises. That was the only issue we had.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. DiFiore or Mr. Jargies? All right, Councilman Barlow?
Thank you. And once again, Mrs. Jargies, I want to thank you for meeting with me on yesterday as well.
Thank you again.
And just as I shared with Mr. Shoshani, the activity that's taking place in this quarter is something that I'm not going to tolerate. I have a no-nonsense policy specifically for those business owners who are running shops in this district that are not the standard process of running business. And so I'm saying to you, from a representative of the area to a business owner in the area, that you have to step your game up as far as how, in fact, you're going to run shop in this neighborhood. I'm not going to allow any business owners to run over this community. This community is on the cutting edge of turning the corner and really, really becoming the revitalized community in which I'm pushing for. And so I'm going to need your assistance. I'm going to need your staff's assistance. I'm going to need you to upgrade your security as well. What is the status of your security as it states today?
It's from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m.
I'm sorry?
From 2:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Not your hours of operation. What is the, what level of security do you have patrolling or protecting your-
We have a lot of security, sir.
How many?
Just one.
Just one. I'm going to request that you, may I make a request for him to upgrade it to two because he's actually had a more calls for service than your adjacent neighbor. So is that something that I can put as a condition, Mr. DiFiore?
I'm going to defer to-
Because if not, I'm going to request that he hires a full onsite security staff to manage this facility. So I'm going to need to get clarification.
This would be an amendment to the current condition. Their only condition to have security, one security, from 2:00 p.m. until closing. And I believe, Councilman Barlow's question is, can they, can the council approve an amendment to that condition to have two security rather than the one that they currently have as a condition?
Yes.
Okay, then I would like to add to the conditions that you hire immediately two security personnel to overs, or to be onsite at your location with a six-month review of condition, Mr. DiFiore. And as I stated before, I'm looking forward to working with you to make sure that we have a great working relationship so that we collectively, as a community partner, can assist one another in regards to really pushing the blight out and increasing the level of responsibility as well as the level of integrity in this, in this community. And so with that, I ask that you also continue to work with the Bolden Area Command. If you haven't already, please start doing so. Last night, I attended the First Tuesday, which was a packed house, and I would highly recommend that you and your neighbor as well, Mr. Shoshani, start to participate in the First Tuesday program over at Bolden Area Command. You will learn a great deal of information from it, and also it'll give you an opportunity to find out who are the local community policing officers in the area so that you can place a name with a face and you can become more familiar with how, in fact, Metro does its business in the community and how you will be able to benefit from the services in which our law enforcement officers provide to the community. So with that, I would like the additional security officer upgraded from one to two onsite, as well as a six-month review of condition of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
All right, that's the motion, please.
I want to ask, Mr. Barlow, may I have this one statement?
Please, Councilman Barlow.
He's in the entrance of all.
Go ahead.
Excuse me, sir.
You have to identify yourself for the-
My name is Anthony Ollie, one, two, three, Sir Davis. Excuse me, sir. Mr. Barlow, you're doing a wonderful job, but, and I like you, you're very persistent with it. And when you had the VFW in here a few months back, that's one, you know, you got on them and told them, you know, get it cleaned up, get whatever, security need, whatever, and you're telling these people the same thing. You clean up the area and do the right thing. You're right. You've got to clean it up, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sages.
All right, there's a motion. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck to you, sir. Item fifty-one is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of a pawnbroker license for Candice Limone, doing business as M&M Pawn at 3227 Mead Avenue, Suite 3B in Ward One. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, this is the nearing of the expiration of the second temporary license for M&M Pawn at 3227 Mead Avenue. I've had discussions with the applicant, and their intent and desire is to seek council's approval for a permanent license, put it on non-operational status, and I believe they have an application pending in Ward Two for a new location that they would like to, if they do get approval for that location, would like to move this license to. That is going to take some time. And in the meantime, the idea here is to approve it as a permanent license with the condition that it be non-operational until they do get approval at a later date at a new location.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon. Dave Plafsettle with G.C. Garcia, 1711 Whitney Mesa Drive in Henderson, here with Mr. Limone. We have been in discussion with staff and with the councilwoman's office. We agree with that condition and ask that you allow us to move forward.
All right, thank you. Would you like to be heard, sir?
I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
All right, please identify yourself.
My name is Martin Limone.
All right, thank you very much. All right, are there any questions of any of the gentlemen?
Your honor, I, we want to make it perfectly clear that nothing we're doing today necessarily guarantees you anything for your future application. It's a separate effort.
We understand that, and that application has been filed and is in the process.
Councilwoman?
Move to approve staff's recommendation with all conditions.
Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Have a good day.
Thank you. Item fifty-three is the Senior Citizen Law Project Advisory Board. The term of Jackie Syte expires April 18, 2008. She's basically term limited, and we're going to have to have a new appointment. But before we hear from Ms. Vogel, this, I think, is the appropriate time to express our condolences to the family of Mel Calagian. Mel was our man to go to. I don't know any other way to put it. The point guy when it came to servicing our senior citizens, and I didn't even know he was sick. I wish I had, because I would have liked to have said what I really think of him to his face, because I can't envision anybody who was better at his job and cared more about seniors than Mel did. So this council expresses our condolences to his family, and there will be a memorial service, I believe, this coming Saturday at 11 o'clock, and the city will certainly be represented there to express our sincere appreciation for the contribution that he made to the citizens of our community. So, Ms. Vogel, what do you have to say?
Thank you, mayor, for those kind words. Mel was a wonderful advocate for our seniors. Our recommendation today to fill the slot for Jackie Syte is Marguerite Mathis. Ms. Mathis is the publisher of Senior Guide, which is a very well-known publication in the senior community, and she has expressed an interest to serve on our advisory board.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions? If not, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, your honor, I move to follow, appreciate Ms. Vogel coming down, talking to us, giving us her recommendations. I'm going to follow her recommendation, please.
Very good.
Mathis?
Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, ninety-four is discussion and possible action on the appointment and reappointment of members to the Neighborhood Partners Fund Board for fiscal year 2009. The Neighborhood Partners Fund Board consists of thirteen members, who was created to review Neighborhood Partners Fund applications and recommend awards to the city council. It's designed to assist citizens in improving the quality of life for City of Las Vegas neighborhoods and directly responds to two of the city council's priorities: support and encourage affordability, livability, and pride in our neighborhoods, and provide an open government which allows access, participation, and respectful communication using traditional and technically advanced methods. The recommendations for reappointment are Mayor's Designee Lena Owens, Ward One Neighborhood Rep. Renee Rampton, Ward Two Neighborhood Rep. Charles Visaderio, Ward Three Staff Designee Loretta Harrington, Ward Four Staff Designee Darcy Hayes, Ward Five Neighborhood Rep. A.J. Powell, Ward Six Neighborhood Rep. Jerry Green. New appointments, Ward One Staff Designee Adriana Martinez, Ward Two Staff Designee Crystal Klinger, Ward Three Neighborhood Rep. Mike Brown Castero, Ward Four Neighborhood Rep. Brian Knudsen, Ward Five Staff Designee Stephen Brooks, Ward Six Staff Designee Michelle Thaxton. May I have a motion, please?
That'd be my motion, your honor.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-five is bill number 2008-3, adopts an updated Parks and Recreation Element of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan. Councilwoman, do you wish to have the bill read?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And councilwoman, thank you, your honor. Bill number 2008-3, First Amendment, in order to adopt the updated Parks and Recreation Element of the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan and provide for related matters.
Thank you. Councilwoman, do you have a motion, please?
Yes, we move to approve.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post. Thank you. Item fifty-six is bill number 2008-15, sets forth the authority and standards by which the city requires and processes certain fingerprint checks concerning prospective employees of the city and concerning applicants for work cards under certain business license categories. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes.
And councilwoman, bill number 2008-15, in order to set forth the authority and standards by which the city requires and processes certain fingerprint checks concerning prospective city employees and concerning applicants for work cards under certain, under certain business license categories and for related matters.
May I ask you this, Mr. Derby? This just applies to employees of childcare facilities, adult nightclub establishments, and erotic dance establishments?
It applies to those, but it also applies to city employees as well, your honor. There was a change to the Nevada revised statutes that came out of this last legislative session that required this legislation, and so we're now consistent with state law.
Does that mean that every person who works for the City of Las Vegas has to have a work card?
It's not a work card, it's just, it's-
Fingerprint.
Fingerprint check, right.
They do. I didn't realize. I believe so.
That's correct.
As part of the HR?
Yes, sir. It's been standard practice for the past year.
You learn something every day. All right, councilwoman, do you have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Let's vote, please. Post.
He needs to be fingerprinted.
Motion carries. A little bit of banner up here as to which one of us most appropriately should be fingerprinted.
Ross. And be sure I can ask him.
Fifty-seven, bill number 2008-16, adopts a latest revision to the uniform regulations for the control of drainage. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
And councilwoman, bill number 2008-16, in order to adopt the latest revision for the uniform regulation for the control of drainage and to provide for related matters.
And your motion, please.
Move to approve.
Let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item fifty-eight, bill number 2008-17, is eligible for adoption at a later meeting, so we're going to move on to the new bills now. Thank you. Thank you so much. New bills, items fifty-nine through sixty-two, bills 2008-18 through 2008-21, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, April 15, 2008. Mr. Derby, could you read those, please?
I'll be happy to, your honor. Bill number 2008-18, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, to protect and line B and X, to make us establish the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and provide related matters, bill number 2008-19, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, to protect and scrub line B and X, to make us establish the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and provide related matters, bill number 2008-20, in order to establish additional licensing requirements and regulations applicable to wedding chapels and provide related matters, and finally, bill number 2008-21, in order to create a city of Las Vegas, special improvement, District Number 1507, Jones Boulevard, El Con Road to Horse Drive, and Grand Teton Drive, Maverick Street to Decatur Boulevard, describing details of connection therewith, and other matters pertaining thereto.
You read the ball?
Yes.
Pretty remarkable, okay. All right, that's very good. Will, councilwoman, will you be available April the fifteenth?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Barlow, will you be available?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I'll sign the bills to you for review, and the meeting's in recess until, let's say, 1:20? 1:20. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Well, thank you for your patience with us. We went a little over this morning, and we have a good afternoon calendar. We'll move it along. Item sixty-three, any items from the afternoon session the council staff and or the applicant wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, your honor. We have item seventy-seven is a director's request, 253560 of Las Vegas, request to adopt the Las Vegas High School Neighborhood Historic District Recommended Design Guidelines. Councilperson asks that one to be stricken. Item number eighty is a special use permit, 25259 Fiesta Discount Market, Donald S. Gilde, Revocable Family Trust, at 70,000, or 7,010 West Charleston Boulevard. The applicant wants that held in abeyance until our May 7, 2008 meeting. Items ninety-five and ninety-six is a variance twenty-nine, or twenty-six, four forty-seven, and Site Development Review, 26639, DFA, comma, LLC, slash, at two six, 2.61 acres at the southwest corner of Bonanza Road and Martin Luther King Boulevard. Councilman Barlow wants that, would like that to be held in abeyance until our May 7, 2008 meeting. Item ninety-seven is special use permit, 23285, Metro PCS, Nevada LLC, slash, DNW Inc., 120, North Jones Boulevard. We have to go on that, request that to be held in abeyance until our April the 16, 2008 meeting. And item one hundred is RQR, 27258, David Maddox, 3320, North Rancho Drive. Councilman Ross would like that to be held in abeyance until our May 7, 2008 meeting. Councilmembers, are there any other items at this time we need to bring forward?
Councilwoman, I believe numbers seventy-eight and seventy-nine. Councilman Brown, would you like that abayed to May 7?
Yes, please.
Item seventy-eight and seventy-nine, eighty-seven is modification, 2594, it's an abeyance item. 87 is modification 2594, it's an abeyance item. The owner is, applicant owner is Northwest Estates LLC, et al. Request for a major modification to land to the Lone Mountain West Plan, to amend the land use designation from ML Medium Low to residential, MF Multi-Family Medium Residential. And Item 79 is a site development review for the same applicant. Councilman Brown would like that to be held in abeyance until our May 7, 2008 meeting. Are there any other items? Can we, none, Your Honor? Make a motion to bring these items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
All right, let's vote on that, please, with all conditions. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Items 64 through 72 are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development, and I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 64 through 72, please.
Yes, Your Honor. No questions or comments, and I make motion to follow the staff's recommendations for approval of these items with all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Items 73 through 76 may be considered in one motion, one vote. They're considered routine public hearing items with no condition changes. All public hearings will be opened at one time, and any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the council not in agreement with the conditions, and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff, should request to have that item removed from the portion of the agenda. Items 73 through 76 are public hearings, and I now declare them open. I'll read those items into the record. 73 is VAR 25459. The applicant owner is Vanny Grenados. Request for a variance to allow two 58.86-foot-wide lots where 65 feet is required on .71 acres at 170 Pecos Street. This is in Ward Three. 74 is VAR 26493. The applicant owner is 212 Las Vegas Boulevard LLC. Request for a variance to allow a two-sided protecting sign of 42 square feet where 32 square feet is permitted, and to allow a setback of zero feet from the curb where three feet is the minimum required on .28 acres at 212 Las Vegas Boulevard South in Ward Three. Planning Commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. 75 is RQR 26439. The applicant is Reagan National Advertising. The owner Miguel William P. Etal. Required two-year review of an approved special use permit which allowed a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 793 North Nellis Boulevard in Ward Three. The Planning Commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. And finally, 76, VAC 26442. The applicant is AMP Engineering. The owner is CS4015 LLC. Petition to vacate a 20-foot public drainage easement at 10591 Westlow Mountain Road in Ward Six. The Planning Commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. Is anyone wishing to be heard on these items? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearings. I have a motion, then, to approve items 73 through 76.
Yes, Your Honor. I move to approve Items 73, 74, 75, and 76 with all staff conditions, please.
Thank you.
Follow their recommendation.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. 77 is DIR 25356. Oh. You're right. Trust me, buddy. I do trust you. 80.
81.
81.
You got a date?
Okay, 81 is GPA 25892. The applicant owner is SF Investments LLC. Request to amend a portion of the Centennial Sector of the general plan from MLA Medium Low Attached Density Residential to M Medium Density Residential on 11.45 acres at the southeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and US 95 in Ward Four. The staff recommends denial. The Planning Commission recommends approval. 82 is ZON 25893. The applicant owner is SF Investments LLC. Request for rezoning from RE Residence Estates and U undeveloped MLA Medium Low Attached General Plan Designation to R3 Medium Density Residential on 11.45 acres at the southeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and US 95 in Ward Four. We should note that the RE Residence Estate portion of this application is under resolution of intent to RPD 10, Residential Plan Development, 10 units per acre. The staff recommends denial. The Planning Commission recommends approval. 83 is VAR 26228. Same applicant owner. Request for variance to allow a residential adjacency setback of 20 feet where 91 feet is required at the southeast property line for a 248-unit apartment complex on 11.45 acres at the southeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and US 95. The staff recommends denial. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. 84 is SDR 25894. The applicant owner is SF Investments LLC. Request for Site Development Plan Review for a 252-unit apartment complex on 11.45 acres at the southeast corner of Lone Mountain Road and US 95. The staff recommends denial. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. These are all public hearings, which I now declare open.
Your Honor, members of the council, good afternoon. I'm Bob Gronhour at 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here representing the applicant and property owner on these matters that are before you today. The first thing that I'd like to do is orient you to the location of our property. As you can see on the overhead, I have a little aerial here. Highlighted in green is approximately 11.45 acres of property, which is located out in the northwest. More specifically, you have Lone Mountain to the north of us, and just across the street from there is the location of the Santa Fe Hotel Casino. You have US 95, which is on our western border, and to the south and to the east of our property is located some county parcels that are planned and zoned for residential uses right now. Excuse me, they're actually planned for office uses and zoned for residential uses today. To give you some history with respect to the zonings in this area and the changes that have happened over the last several years, I think it's important to note pursuant to the interlocal agreement between the City of Las Vegas and Clark County, that this area here that you see on the map is master plan for office uses. Back in 2005, in March, a portion of this property that I'm representing today has been zoned for an RPD application for fourplexes. There was a density that was approved. These were going to be for sale, fourplexes here, for density up to approximately 10 dwelling units to the acre. It took it from an RE category to attached, single-family homes. As you can see here on the site plan itself, one of the things I want to point out here is with the approval, we had two-story buildings up to 35 feet in height that were right up adjacent to the property line in this area here, which would have had an impact to the property owners or single-family homes to the south and to the east of the project itself. However, subsequent to the approval in March of 2005, about May of 2005, the property owners here who had the approved zoning for the fourplexes was that they were able to purchase the parcels here in these two areas here that I have whited out, and they came in with an application to annex the applications from Clark County into the City of Las Vegas. Subsequently, later on during the year in 2005, approximately the property that I showed you, the 11.45 acres of property, was rezoned for single-family detached homes. Those were for small lots. The rear yards to those homes were approximately six feet. Side yards were approximately three to three-and-a-half feet separation. And again, although I don't have that site plan there, again, the homes itself were lined up against and adjacent to the east and southern property lines in this area. And the reason why I mention that is because the proposal that we have before you today, we feel that although it's a multi-family development that we're proposing, is a much better plan than the plan that I have here that was approved for fourplexes, and also the plan that was approved for the single-family detached homes. As you can see in your backup, the applications that we have before you is, the first one is for a general plan amendment to change it to medium density, which would allow for the multi-family use of what we're requesting today. If you're familiar with this area in the northwest here, this is an area that has changed significantly over the years. As a matter of fact, just to the south of Red Coach, you do have some commercial uses. This area, as I already told you, is master planned, not only in the City of Las Vegas, but also in Clark County for office uses and office development in the future. And across the street, you do have the Santa Fe Hotel Casino, and you have some higher densities, which is further to the east of this site itself. With respect to the zone change, we're asking for an R3 zone change, and again, we feel that it's compatible along with the general plan amendment. And then finally, is the site plan itself is some of the changes that I want to go through. What you see on the site plan here is the initial site plan that we submitted, and we went to the neighborhood meeting in our discussions on the site plan and the applications itself. Some of the things that we did with respect to the previous applications, this is Balsam located here. You're going to have some neighbors in opposition to our development with respect to what we're proposing today. However, they have been in opposition to the applications on the first zone change and the second zone change, or the second application coming in to change the housing developments. One of their main concerns that we're actually addressing, that has been a concern from the beginning, is if you travel today, you can go off of Lone Mountain, come south on Balsam, and drive into this neighborhood. As you can see by the plans itself, by purchasing the properties in this area, we are able to come in and vacate that portion of Balsam, and by coming in with the vacation of Balsam here, you or will not have traffic coming into some of the remaining single-family homes that are located here. So that's one of the things that we've addressed for the neighbors in this area, is to prevent the amount of traffic that is going to be coming into this neighborhood. Because the way we've designed the site plan is, is the only ingress and egress that you're going to see, if you take a look on the top of the site plan, which is northeast portion of our property, is the ingress and egress for the site. Obviously, for fire purposes, we're required to have emergency access, which is to the south down here on Red Coach. That will be gated at all times. We told the neighbors we'd accept that as a condition. They had a concern, because across the street, I believe Santa Fe had a condition on their emergency access gates. We're not supposed to have ingress and egress, and I guess they came back subsequently, and today there's ingress and egress coming out from that area. We've told them that we make a commitment on the record, and it's the developer's intention not to have ingress and egress to come down on the property down in Red Coach. And on the previous plans that were approved, we actually did have, the only access that came through was down on Red Coach, because the property owners at the time didn't have control of the properties, as I'm pointing out, down in this area, to come in and vacate Balsam. Some of the other changes are from the initial site plan here, that's some of the changes that we've made. As you can see, for the buildings that were located here in these areas, although this is a senior care recreational facility here, we moved this building, and we flip-flopped it with the pool and rec center to make this be in the location over here, and some of these buildings located here, we pushed them further away from the existing single-family home that is located here. And although we did make those changes, we do have some people that are in support of the application. More importantly, the person that would be most impacted is in support of the application of what we're proposing, which is located right here. And I can show you from the revised site plan here, as you can see, some of the changes that we did make from the initial site plan. By making these changes, we went from 256 units down to 248 units. And in addition to increasing the variance that we initially were requesting from five feet for residential adjacency standard, where 91 feet is required, today we're standing here to have the request from 70 feet where 91 feet is required. Initially, when we had the building located here, that's where the five-foot setback was located. As you can see, the change today is the rec center and the pool is located here. We moved that building further away. The closest setback that we have to any residential property line is located on the buildings, which are located further down in the south and west of the property, is about 70 feet. As you can see, though, if, as I reminded you when I first showed you the site plans that were approved, the setbacks to these buildings are actually further away than the setbacks to the fourplexes that were approved along the property line, and also for the single-family, small lots, that had six-foot rear yard setbacks and three-and-a-half-foot side yard setbacks. So as far as the building mass goes, this plan is much better in design than what was approved previously on two other single-family designs that was before you. That being said, again, we feel that we've addressed some of the issues. I know with the Planning Commission, there were some concerns about drainage, some concerns about some dust permits that are out here. We've worked with your Public Works Department to make sure that everything's in compliance with respect to some of the stockpiling that's already going on on the property that's located here. Developer, Mr. Mickey Stranton from Sterling S. Development, intends to develop this multi-family development. The game plan is, is to get permits as soon as possible. I do know there's some neighbors here who are in opposition, but for the last part, the last thing that I do want to mention here is that we do have some support from some neighbors in the area. As you can see from the location of our site, right here, we went out and talked to some of the neighbors who are actually in support of the application. Those are in your backup. And the last thing I do want to mention with respect to the variance is, if you zoom out again, one of the statutory requirements is to show that you do have a legal hardship with respect to the residential adjacency standards. And I think, as you can see by the picture itself, as a picture speaks a thousand words, this is an irregular-shaped lot. It's an odd-shaped lot. It's very hard to come in compliance with all the rules and regulations underneath your municipal code requirements. I think we did a very good job of putting the buildings out by the freeway here to act as a buffer, and with respect to the design itself, it flows well within the project. So with that being said, your Planning Commission did recommend approval. We ask you to follow the Planning Commission's recommendations, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, fine. Are there any questions to Mr. Gronhour this time? Folks, how many are here to speak on this? Could you raise your hand, please? All right, three? All right, that's fine. If there were a lot, I'd go back and forth, but be happy to hear from you. Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Eagle. I live at 4686 Balsam Street.
Bob, one of the, did you get a letter or not?
Bob does a very good presentation. I'll have to give him that. We are amateurs at best.
Don't worry about it. Could you show me where your home is? On that drawing there, please? Okay, thank you.
And we've had three years. We've come before this commission many, many times, and the Planning Commission, looking for some common sense to prevail. And I understand the process, and I understand where this is at. There's nothing that I can do probably to stop this. I think my biggest argument is with the City of Las Vegas at this point. Mr. Lesman purchased this property knowing full well the zoning, the master plan for the county, and our CCRs were not conducive to his intent. He did not buy these lands to become my neighbor. He bought them for profit. He has since manipulated this city hall to change the zoning and the master plan and ask for variances. He sued us, changed our CCRs to suit his needs. This is a great neighbor. I used to sleep pretty well at night, knowing that I'd be protected by these things I've talked about with zoning, master plan, CCRs, until common sense went out the window. What happened to right and wrong? Some of my neighbors have invested their lives in this neighborhood for 40-plus years. I'm a new guy. I've lived in Vegas 41 years. Half of my life I've spent in this neighborhood, Bridle Path Estates. We didn't choose to invest in this neighborhood for 40 years to see our home's valuation be diminished by a bad neighbor. Most of us plan to retire and probably die in this neighborhood. Bob, the hired gun lawyer here, which I think if I ever have to hire a lawyer, I'm going to hire him. He's pretty darn good. He tells you what a great project this is, and no doubt it probably is, but I don't think it's suited for neighborhoods. I really think that something's gone out the window here with common sense and right and wrong. When somebody comes into our neighborhood and does these things to us, and then we have to defend them, and then we end up losing in court, just because we happened to invest in this neighborhood for all this time. Bob will also tell you that he had some neighbors in support. Well, one of them, they bought a new house for him, put up a big barn for him. I don't know what they did for the other guy. I looked at campaign contributions, and I see where Mr. Lesman has invested in the city council. I don't know if that has any bearing on this, but it would worry me if the councilman that did take contributions from the Lesman family and his companies voted on this issue. This is very personal to me. For the past two years, I've had to sandbag my driveway shut because of the dirt that was hauled in, and I had to put a bridge so I can get my cars in and out of my driveway. I sent letters to the city regarding the flood study plan. They've never called me back. We've gone under four or five times. Mr. Brown, I talked to your staff. They were really eager to talk to me, and then two days later, they stonewalled me. We haven't gotten anywhere. And it just, the whole city has not stood up for us at all. It seems like they stand up for the developer, and here we are, the citizens. It just doesn't make sense at all. Bob, the lawyer, and I have talked, and he's assured me, and I'm not sure that he can fulfill this, but if this does go through as planned, he is going to see to it that, and I know this can't be a condition of approval, our main concern is this area here. and I know this can't be a condition of approval, our main concern is this area here. When the citizens of this complex come to you and say they can't get on Lone Mountain Road because of the traffic, what are you going to do? You going to open up Balsam Street to them? That's what you did with Santa Fe. Not you guys, it was another city council. So he's trying to help, and he understands my concerns. He's trying to help for where we can vacate this street and make it a private street so they can't do that. I don't know that those assurances are in place. But like I said when I started this, I don't think there's any way we can stop this at this point. This three-year-plus thing has been rolling along with one little variance change here and one little debt city change there and one little lawsuit here and there. So I don't think we stand a chance of a snowball, but it would certainly be nice if the city could do something for the existing citizens that are here, to assure us that what's left of our little community will stay a little community and not be I-95 north and south. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Ken Rogers. I live at 4668 Balsam Street.
Are you able to show us where that is?
Yes, sir. Mr. Eagle is there, and I am next door to Mr. Eagle.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes. I've been against this project since the beginning, but they have revised it, and like Mr. Eagle said, I don't think there's much we can do about it now. It looks much, much better than it did before. But my concern, the reason I'm here today, is because I'm looking at this revised print that I have here, and I don't see anything for the ADA to comply with. These are all two-story buildings. I would guess that the apartments are up and down and not, so I would like someone to explain, if they can, what they've done to comply with the ADA laws as to do with parking or compliance, no thresholds, no steps, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, in the garages or whatever.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Perhaps, are you able to do that, Mr. Gronauer? Please, why don't you respond to the gentleman now, if you would, concerning his request for ADA information?
Yes, council, to address this question quickly, the building code requires us to comply with ADA standards, so by the time we get our plans finalized and approved before we begin construction, those plans will be signed off to be in ADA compliance.
And that also includes, does it not, Ms. Willard, that whatever parking requirements are?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So he should not have to worry about the ADA being compliant with?
Parking is all required and is part of the plan check, and it is ensured that it is there prior to them occupying the buildings.
All right, thank you. I hope that gives you some solace.
We shall see.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Frank Coparoni, 4614 Balsam Street.
I assume you're in the same area?
Yes, I'm on the corner somewhere. I don't see well.
It's all right.
I've been there for about 35 years. I'm in support of this project, and I'll give you my reasons why, is I like the idea of Balsam being cul-de-sac. We have a lot of unnecessary traffic on that street. One reason is that they closed off Rainbow, and people learned they could shortcut and go through Balsam and miss the light at Rainbow. We have some other people doing business in the area who aren't licensed to do business in the area with big trucks and stuff. The other reason I'm in support of this, it looks like a fairly decent project from everything else that's been presented, and nothing stays the same forever, and our area is changing a lot, so I am in support of this issue.
Right now, as far as your comment about people doing business without license, we have a licensing department here. Okay, apparently Councilman Brown says it's being addressed, so that's fine with me. Thank you, sir.
Your honor.
Anybody else, please?
My name is Anthony Hart, and I just want to, remember, I say when you have your staff and your planning have some odds, and I know you all had the final decision, but remember now, even the commission wasn't unanimous. It had five, one, and one, on just about everything. So that mean, there must have been some discrepancies in there that even some, a couple of them wasn't so sure about. So what I'm trying to say now, staff and planning, so whatever this is, I mean, y'all just look it over carefully. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearings then. Gronauer, did you want to respond?
Yes, your honor, I have just two quick comments here. With respect to my conversations with Mr. Eagle, over the last day or two, we've had many conversations in trying to address some concerns. There's two things I forgot to put on the record, but if I can get your attention to the overhead. The first thing is, is what we can address as far as conditions go. His concern is, as he's mentioned in his presentation, is to make sure that there's no future access coming from our development onto Balsam. We're okay with a condition at State Stat, that our intent is not to have any access, ingress, and egress on Balsam. Now, the second thing that I do want to mention here, which is more into a private agreement, I have Mr. Mickey Stranton here, who's a developer of Sterling S. Development. He's sitting here, and he's told me I can make this representation. I've had verbal conversations with Mr. Eagle on this, is the neighbors in this area, in the county and in the city side, want to vacate Balsam in this area. If Mr. Eagle can go and get the neighbors on board, he has agreed that they would go and run the applications to vacate Balsam on the county side and on the city side and have this area privately for themselves. What Mr. Stranton would do, in his part of this and playing with this, is that we would pay for the legal descriptions, whatever needs to be done from the engineering side for the submittal of that vacation. That's more of a private agreement. I feel it's incumbent upon myself and with Mr. Stranton sitting here to mention that to you, is that that's something that we've discussed with the neighbors outside of the development itself, is if that's their desire to keep Balsam to their own private self, and so be it. And that's what will play as far as being a player involved in the vacation in the future, if that comes to fruition. Because the point that I want to make, and I told Mr. Eagle, it sounds like everybody will join in, but as you know, when you start dealing with six, 10, 12 different people out here, not everybody will sign an application to vacate their street and then take over the obligation to maintain them privately. So if he can do that, we'll pull our part to work with him on that, but there's no guarantee, and we don't want to tie it to our project of the development, because we plan on pulling our permits sooner than later. So that being said, I can answer any other questions that you may have.
Fine. Are there any questions at this time? All right, seeing none, Councilman Brown.
Thank you, your honor. I'd just like to go over a couple of the issues that were raised. At the north end of Balsam, the development proposes, is that a solid block wall, or is there a fire access envisioned there?
Yeah, solid block wall.
Okay, so once built, there'll be no access onto Balsam from there. I think one of the questions asked was on Red Coach at the southern tip of the development. That's envisioned for fire access?
Emergency access, correct.
So the concern as far as the neighborhood, that fire access someday being opened up, the traffic study has demonstrated that Lone Mountain and the access to Lone Mountain is sufficient to meet the densities here?
Through our engineers, yes.
Okay. And I think, as Mr. Eagle pointed out, we certainly can't control what decision was made as far as the Santa Fe access on Lone Mountain, but feel pretty comfortable in our recent decisions that a fire access gate is in fact controlled by the city, so I don't think the management company has any ability nor right to try to open that up for convenience sake. And that's part of the conditions. Margo?
Ms. Willard?
That's our understanding is, no, just the whole access.
Access onto Lone Mountain is considered adequate by our traffic engineering section.
And the flood issue, I guess, Mr. Anderson, this would be back to you. The flood study that was done in part of this application, just for the record, we would not allow any kind of adverse impact as far as this development channeling water or diverting water onto Balsam that is not currently handled on site.
That's correct. The goal of the drainage study and grading plan will be to not adversely impact the people who are already there to channel or route the water so that it doesn't additionally impact them.
There was another point. The decorative block wall that will, on the east side of the entire development, that's currently listed as a six-foot, and I would ask that that be raised to an eight-foot just to provide a little more sense of security. In some of these areas, we're tendency, especially pedestrian traffic, either kids or people taking the bus, if they find there's an easy access into the complex, they'll find it so. I'd like to amend that condition.
If I may ask, Baron Councilman, is that just south on the midsection of the plan or all the way along?
Let's keep it all the way. I know it's an additional cost to the development, but I think it adds a little more privacy to the Balsam residents.
Okay. And if I may, do you want that to be solid block, or do you want the six-foot block and maybe a two-foot wrought iron?
I'd leave that up to the discretion of the developer. Essentially, it's a security issue. Were there any other conditions that have changed from the planning commission?
No, sir.
I'll make this comment, and first and foremost, to Mr. Eagle, you indicated that it's very personal. You also made some very personal statements, so I would encourage you, I'll find out why that, if you've contacted our staff, why the contact ended after two days. I'd question that, but I would encourage you to call, and I will personally meet with you to address some of the concerns that you've put on to the record. The neighborhood is unique in a lot of ways, one that it's been out there for possibly one of the oldest neighborhoods in the northwest, especially the single-family homes on RE. But the proximity to Rancho, the proximity to the 95, the approval of the Santa Fe years ago certainly changed the character, and something's going to be built here, there's no question, be it master plan for offices, whether you feel the office complex would be a better neighbor, but something's going to be built there. We have some designs that I think, as Mr. Coparoni has indicated, is a little better than first envisioned. And as an aside, we are looking into the business that's operating out there without a license that's been brought to our attention last week. So I would, the best we can hope for is to protect what they have. Balsam, as far as the vacation, as indicated, that would be up to them. The city can certainly support the vacation, but if they become private streets, they have to understand that the bonus of maintaining those streets now falls back on the property owner. Smaller things that we can do, we could look to putting up some signage there as far as dead end, no access, things like that, but the assurance is by condition that Balsam remains a cul-de-sac with no ability for other than residential traffic to use it. I think that's set pretty well in stone. But, your honor, I'm going to-
Excuse me, Councilman, before you make the vote? I was just wondering, would that eight-foot wall require a, nope? Okay, never mind. I was going to ask if it required a variance, but I'm seeing the director say no.
I'll say.
All right. Is that your motion?
Yes. On item number 81, I would move for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries.
On item number 82, I would move for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Please vote. Motion carries.
On item number 83, I would move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Let's vote. Motion carries.
And on item number 84, I would move for approval, subject to staff conditions, with the one noted amendment, as far as the standard condition of six-foot be increased to eight feet, with the discretion of an eight-foot decorative block wall or the six-foot plus two feet of some kind of decorative wrought iron, that the purpose would be safety and/or security.
If I may, we would go with eastern perimeter shall have eight-foot wall, at least six-foot decorative block for security purposes.
All right. That's the motion. Let's vote. Motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Thank you. 85 through 88. 85 is GPA 25905. The applicant owner is KB Homes Nevada, Inc., at AL, request to amend a portion of the Centennial Hill Sector Plan from DR, Desert Rural Density Residential, to L, Low Density Residential, and 30.2 acres at the northeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Leon Avenue and Ward 6. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval. 86 is ZON 25906. The same applicant owner, request for rezoning from RE, Residence Estates, to RPD 4, Residential Plan Development, four units per acre, on 30.2 acres at the southeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Leon Avenue. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval. 87 is VAC 25907. The applicant owner is Faro Katalo Family Marital Trust, at AL. Petition to vacate a portion of Public Rights of Way, generally located at the northeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Leon Avenue and Ward 6. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. And the final item is 88, SDR 25908. Applicant owner KB Homes Nevada, Inc., at AL, request for a site development plan review for 126-unit residential plan development on 30.2 acres at the northeast corner of Iron Mountain Road and Leon Avenue and Ward 6. There's a note that 118 units are now proposed. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. These are all public hearings, which I now declare open.
Your honor, Council Bob Ginzer, Ginzer Consulting, Las Vegas, Nevada, along with Mr. Josh Johnson of GC Wallace Engineering, on behalf of the applicants. First of all, I'd like to say that we do accept the conditions that were recommended to you by the planning commission, and we hope that you would follow that recommendation. As you indicated, your honor, this project has been reduced from the original number of 126 lots down to 118. That was a request from the planning commission. The item was actually held in abeyance for a month to allow us to redesign the item. In addition to reducing the number of lots, we moved the open space area from what was the northeasterly corner of the site to be more centralized in the development. We also reduced the number of lots along Leon Avenue from 14 to 11, and increased the size of those lots to approximately 8,000 square feet each, which makes them actually slightly larger than the RPD 3 to the west of this project. That essentially were the three changes that were made, which the planning commission appreciated. I do want to make one note for the record, as I did at the planning commission meeting, three of the four items are listed under KB Homes Nevada, at AL. I want to make it perfectly clear that KB Homes was a minor property owner when this process started. The trust that is listed as the owner on the vacation item is now the owner of the entire site, and KB Homes is no longer part of the development. So just that for the record, and with that, I'm simply going to ask for your approval, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions to Mr. Ginzer? All right, folks, it's a public, would you like to be heard?
No, thank you.
Okay. It's a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard on this? If anyone would like to be heard on this?
Right, great. It's the same thing, well, you got your staff and your planning, and some of the commission has a, is not unanimous on some things, so whatever y'all do, y'all always do it best anyway, but I just wanted to let you know. Whenever you got, the planning is not unanimous on something, then that means staff may see something that maybe they all might see together. So whatever decision you make, you know, make the right one.
Anybody else like to be heard at this time? All right, so now I'm going to close the public hearings and turn to Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Ginzer, the family trust, are they going to build this? Is this something they're going to sell, or what are we doing here if KB Homes isn't involved anymore?
It is their intention to build this project. We indicated on the record at the Planning Commission meeting that, and this is still the case, that in all likelihood, we're probably looking at somewhere between a year to two years down the road before this project will actually be built. The intent here is to get the approvals in place and then to begin the next step in the process, which is the subdivision process itself, so that when the economy hopefully turns around, they're in a position to begin development immediately.
Uh-huh. Well, I am aware of KB Homes, but not of this family trust, and are they home builders?
I'll let Mr. Johnson answer that question.
No, this will be his first project as a home builder, but he does intend to build these homes.
Okay. Director Wheeler, and this is probably for legal as well, these homes are awful close to a regional facility, that there should be some disclosure required.
If I may, Mayor and Councilman, the proposed condition would be that prospective buyers shall be informed of the location of the Clark County shooting park, and then, as you know, all of the conditions of approval, we now at the city send to the county, and they are on file at the county, so that any subsequent buyer will have this condition required of them in the future also.
That's perfect, because in some of these developments out there, the notification circumference isn't, is such that they're not required to have that disclosure, but I think it prudent for any home builder, and I'm saying this for the benefit of the family trust, that they make sure as they develop these parcels or sell these parcels, that people who want to buy them are aware of that. We'd hate to see something, we'd hate to see it go in any different direction. You guys have been great in regards to moving the open space around. I knew that, something that was talked about by Commissioner Dunham and the Planning Commission members. You did have your neighborhood meeting, and there was no opposition. I find out in regards to the density, there were however nine protests mailed in. You did match the lots on Leon. That was quite significant, building a better neighborhood, and that's, we've done that a few times on some other projects. With that, Your Honor, I would move to approve agenda item eighty-five, follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries.
And same on agenda item eighty-six. Your Honor would move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval on eighty-six.
Please vote. Motion carries.
And the vacation, agenda item eighty-seven, would move to follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries.
And Director Wheeler, do you have a new date on that, do you have that new site plan?
Sir, all those corrected dates are in the conditions that are before you.
On the SDR, Your Honor, the agenda item eighty, would move, follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions.
All right, let's vote.
If I may, Mayor and Councilman, with the one addition that I read in.
With the additional amended condition, Your Honor.
All right.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Could you put up that first chart that you had there again, on the overhead? You see the lower sort of right-hand portion of it? What does that say?
Lame Duck LLC.
Do we know who the owner is?
I believe I do know who that owner is.
Is it Councilman Brown?
Not to my knowledge.
Just checking on lame ducks. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't mess with me, Councilman. All right, eighty-nine through ninety-two. Eighty-nine is ZON two-six-four-five-what? The applicant is Moulin Rouge Properties LLC. The owner is Moulin Rouge Properties LLC, et al. Request for a rezoning from R-three, Medium Density Residential, and CM, Commercial Industrial, to C-two, General Commercial, on sixteen-point-three-eight acres adjacent to the north side of Bonanza Road, approximately one-hundred feet west of H Street, aboard five. The Planning Commission staff recommend approval. Ninety is VAR two-six-four-five-three. Same applicant, same owner, request for variance to allow a lock coverage of a hundred percent, where fifty percent is the maximum allowed, and to allow a zero-foot setback to the side, corner side, and rear property lines for hotel and gaming establishment, non-restricted development on seventeen-point-four-four acres at the northwest corner of Bonanza Road and H Street. The Planning Commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. Ninety-one is SUP two-six-four-five-two. Same applicant owner, request for special use permit for proposed four-hundred-and-twenty-foot building in the AO, which is Airport Overlay District, where the height limitation is a hundred-and-seventy-five feet for proposed hotel and gaming establishment, non-restricted development at the northwest corner of Bonanza Road and H Street. Planning Commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. And ninety-two is SDR two-six-four-four-nine. Same applicant owner, request for a site development plan review for a proposed forty-one-story and thirty-story hotel and gaming establishment, non-restricted development, including a seventeen-hundred-and-twenty-seven-room hotel, a seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred-and-ninety-six-square-foot non-restricted gaming facility, and three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-four square feet of commercial uses, with a waiver to allow perimeter landscape buffer width of zero feet, where eight feet is required at the interior property lines, on seventeen-point-four-four acres at the northwest corner of Bonanza Road and H Street. Planning Commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. These are all public hearings, which I now declare open. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rod Bickerstaff, and I am the general counsel and one of the partners in the Moulin Rouge Development Corporation. This afternoon, I would like to briefly describe the project and also start by introducing the members of the Moulin Rouge Development Corporation. First, our CEO is Dale Scott. Dale is retired Air Force, retired Air Force Master Sergeant, and he is the former owner and co-founder of Mahogany USA LLC in Gardena, California. That enterprise was a marketing company, which was, excuse, it was a marketing company, and in addition, Mr. Scott also owned Amusement and Gaming Incorporated. That company exported and imported new and used amusement and gaming equipment for resale, for the resale market. He was also instrumental in establishing the Motown Cafe in Japan. Mr. Scott has served since the inception of this project as the CEO and President of the Moulin Rouge Development Corporation. Next, I'd like to introduce my partner, Chauncey Moore. Chauncey has some sixteen years' experience in the gaming industry, having served as the slots and bingo managers at Saquon Casino in San Diego, California. In that capacity, he was instrumental in establishing the growth of Saquon Casinos as one of California's largest casino operations. Since the inception of the Moulin Rouge Development Project, we have aligned ourselves with many strategic partners and strategic alliances. As such, we'd like to introduce Republic Urban Properties, which is a fully-integrated, full-service real estate and investment development company based in Fairfax, Virginia. Republic became Moulin Rouge Development Corporation's partner back in-
Would you like it up to speed?
Yes, sir. Back in November two thousand and seven, and brings significant development experience to the Moulin Rouge project. In addition, we have Ed Vance and Associates, which is a Las Vegas-based architectural firm, and its lead architect, Ed Vance. Ed Vance and Associates provides a wide range of architectural, planning, and interior design services for hospitality, commercial, and healthcare markets. We also have Madison Grace Construction, which is also a Nevada-based contractor, having forty years' history in the business. It specializes in pre-construction, general contracting, construction management, and construction management services. We are also pleased to announce that we have partnered ourselves with Epic Gaming, which has considerable experience in the gaming industry. It utilizes its professional, its professional expertise, as well as assistance in design, development, finance, and operations. Epic Gaming is known throughout the world, and we are excited that they are part of our team. We also are pleased to present EMI. EMI is the world's leading independent music publisher, and it operates in nearly fifty countries, employs approximately five-hundred, five-thousand-five-hundred employees, and is the owner, copyright holder, of some one-point-three-million songs. Epic's, I'm sorry, EMI will be the Moulin Rouge Development Corporation's exclusive music consultant, and will help to ensure that the Moulin Rouge Hotel Casino will be a preeminent musical destination. Now, as you know, the Moulin Rouge Hotel Casino was Las Vegas's first interracial hotel casino. It holds an important part in not only the country's cultural history and fabric, but it also holds an important part in the local fabric of Las Vegas. That is evidenced by the support that we have here today, and it is evidenced by the outreach that we have been able to extend to the community and the support that we have garnered in return. The Moulin Rouge Development Corporation and its entire team recognizes just how special a place the Moulin Rouge Hotel Casino is in Las Vegas, and how that endearment is held throughout the, throughout the country. Our vision is to rejuvenate the Moulin Rouge Development Corp, the Moulin Rouge Hotel Casino into a world-class casino destination. That objective is consistent with this city's migration toward becoming a world-class city. We are proud to be part of the rebirth of the West Side, or the Uptown, as we call it, portion of Las Vegas, and we will pay special attention to the property's cultural, as well as visual, history. Now, this development will create perhaps hundreds, if not at least a thousand-plus jobs. We are proud of that fact, and the community, we believe, recognizes just how important this project is to the job growth in the area. This will be a catalyst for the revitalization, as I've stated, for the West Side of Las Vegas, and it will also provide the opportunity for future growth. Not only will the present project, as it now stand, provide an infusion of jobs presently, but in future phases, it will provide additional job opportunities, again, adding to the growth potential in the job sector, in Ward Five in particular, and the greater Las Vegas community in general. We are committed to working with the surrounding community. We understand the importance of this project. We understand the cultural history and the integrity that must be maintained. In the African-American community, particularly in Las Vegas, but throughout the country, the Moulin Rouge holds a very special place. We intend to maintain the integrity of that endearment that is held by these African-Americans throughout the country and around the world, and pay special attention to what this project means in the West Side of Las Vegas. Now, I'd like to bring up Mr. Michael Van Avery of Republic Urban Properties to address some of our financial and other aspects of this project.
I just got a shock from this microphone, and it's kind of a shock to the system, what a wonderful project that we have in front of us today. Republic Urban Properties is proud to be the fifty-percent partner of one of the up-and-coming minority-owned businesses here in the United States of America, the Moulin Rouge Development Corporation. Their vision and their dream was instilled upon us immediately upon meeting them. Republic Urban specializes in urban areas in Washington, D.C., New York City, Florida, and my hometown of San Jose, California, where we have several projects revitalizing urban areas just like the West Side of the city of Las Vegas. And what we plan to do is, we plan to take the synergy of the downtown, the synergy of Union Park, and bring that into what is Uptown here, and a symbol of that here today are the supporters that are standing here, and I'd ask you all to stand, please, and show them your badge, and show them, these are, these are real residents from the West Side Mayor and Council. These are, these are folks who have much more in this game than Republic Urban will ever have. They're residents of your city. They're people who have endured this great dream, which is going to be brought before you today, and we appreciate you all here being today. Thank you very much. Mayor, Council, Republic Urban joined this partnership, and we see now an economic engine that will power what's considered Uptown Las Vegas. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank this wonderful business climate in this town, Mayor. This is one of the best places I've ever had the pleasure to do business in. I'd like to thank your planning director. I'd like to thank your business development office, Mr. Scott Adams, Mr. Steve Van Gorp. They've invited in, you know, people and investors to believe in this town, and we want to thank you for doing business. So with that, I want to, and we'll be happy to answer questions of you about Republic, about the partnership, but now we'd like to kind of unveil the vision to you today and ask for your support today in this approval of this zoning. Thank you. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Ed Vance, our architect and one of our partners.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Ed Vance, EVN Architects, nine-hundred South Pavilion Center Drive in Las Vegas, and not the county. We have before you the plans, I believe, for Phase One and Phase Two of this project, and I have an overall rendering of that before you now that I don't think you have on record. We've asked for a site development review. We've asked for a C-two overall zoning, and I believe we have a waiver of a hundred percent, where fifty percent's allowed. That's one of the reasons we went to the C-two zoning, and I think we have a setback variance. I think planning is approved with our, what we've asked for, and I'm here to answer any questions relative to that plan and site plan review.
Thank you. Does that conclude the presentation? All right. Councilor Barlow, I know this is very close to your heart, and your comments this morning, I'd like to reverse them, when you were saying how well we're doing, trying to make us into a world-class city with the Union Park and all the projects that we were talking about, and I commend you for being able to attract this potential into your ward. I love the expression, "from your lips to God's ears," okay? I started my law practice basically as a criminal defense lawyer here in town, and I was one of the few white lawyers in the sixties to go over to the historic West Side and represent young African-Americans, and I became enamored with the idea when I was running for office that probably the best thing that could ever happen to the city of Las Vegas would to make, would be to make this area as vibrant and as full of life as it was when I used to be awoken at two o'clock in the morning to bail somebody out and then would proceed over to the Cove or the, what was the town, what was it?
The Town Tavern.
Town Tavern, and get myself completely plastered before I had to go to court in about an hour or two from that time. So I was hoping that we'd be able to have this kind of wonderful project. I've been disappointed over the term of my mayoralty, in the sense that I think I joked with all of you gentlemen about it, that this will be my eleventh groundbreaking at the, at the site, but anything that the city can do to, to help you, from my perspective, God bless you, in making this into a reality, I feel that you'll have our complete support and backing. The question I always like to ask, and as I say, I don't want it to track from the good Councilman, because I'm sure he'll have plenty of wonderful input, but who's going to show me the money?
Exactly. Well, Mr. Mayor, let me address that. We are a four-billion-dollar company in assets-
B or M?
B with a B.
I love those Bs.
Yes. Bs are kind of what it takes now.
I love the Bs.
What it kind of takes now in this day and age, but in all seriousness, you know, it begins here today. This project has been self-financed by, you know, these three gentlemen that you sit here today, people who have made an investment in this, and then it really becomes the strategic partnership of Republic, and the strategic partnership with this particular jurisdiction that allows us to go to the financial community after this approval today. You know, we're speaking about this this morning. We saw this economic downturn coming about eight months ago. It started when folks all of a sudden said- It started when folks all of a sudden said, "Goodness gracious, I can't fund your condo project, I can't fund your retail project, and I'm a Baron Sterns-type of investor." We saw this coming, and, and where, where the investment in this project lies is within its land. This is valuable property, which many different institutions now are working with this on, to achieve our long-term goal of what will be about a half-billion-dollar investment in the west side of the city of Las Vegas. And with that half-billion-dollar investment will become the rebirth of this casino and the birth of Uptown Las Vegas.
Well, you're the logical extension to Union Park.
Yes, sir.
It's right, it just takes it over-
That's right.
-the, the street, basically, and, um-
Well, you've widened that city place drive.
I think it would be, not ironic, but I think it would be wonderful, Councilman, that if in fact, instead of the first new hotel being built in anybody's memory in our downtown, isn't the one that we were talking about this morning, but would be this one. And, uh, you would certainly have my blessings, so let me turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I most definitely want to thank this council for your continued support of my effort to really revitalize, uh, Ward Five. Ward Five is so deserving on many fronts, and my mind just goes back to earlier today, when we discussed the evolution of the downtown community and how far it has come in just eight-plus short years. Just as downtown has begun, has begun to turn the corner to become a thriving economic booster in our community, so has the surrounding neighborhoods, uh, such as the community in which the Moulin Rouge will be, uh, erected again. The developments coming into them, these neighborhoods, the Moulin Rouge, um, I must commend its owners and investors for believing in this council's vision and the direction we are moving this world-class city to. During my campaign, I, uh, promised only one thing to the constituents of Ward Five, and that was, "I'll do the very best job that I can do to bring economic development into the ward, employment opportunities into the ward, and create commercial and retail corridors in this ward." And I'm working very aggressively, as well as diligently, to do just that. And as your representative, uh, I thank all of you all for being here today, because it starts in the neighborhoods. It starts with each and every one of you who are here today to support this developer in the fabulous, fabulous, wonderful development that we have proposed here before us today. And it's going to take infusions such as this to come into our neighborhoods, to basically give us that lift that we are so deserving of. And the, uh, great cloud that once existed over Ward Five is no longer there. We are changing the image, we're changing the streetscapes, we're changing the mindset and the thought process and the image and the portrayal, taking that negative and creating a positive. My mother has always shared with me, "Ricky, you can take a positive from a negative, but you can never take a negative from a positive." Now, I'm gonna let you all think on that, 'cause someone's gonna catch that on their way home. So, I say to the owners and the investors, "Thank you. Thank you for believing in the charge of this council. Thank you for, uh, buying into our vision, because we're most definitely, uh, turning the corner. We're turning at an aggressive pace, and it's something that, uh, we're gonna continue to do regardless of what the pundits say, because that's their job, in my opinion. Their job is to be exactly what they are, and I call them haters. So, let the haters hate. But we must continue to be the visionaries to basically push through it, because at the end of the day, when the light bulb comes on, they're gonna be the ones left in the dark, wondering why, in fact, I became the stumbling block for a great development that not only benefit the investors and the, and, and the owners, but the community as a whole. And I say "community" because community is one cohesive unit. So, with that, Mayor and Council, I would like to move-
But before you do that, we have to have-
I'm sorry, we're gonna open it up, because Mr. Hyde, I'm pretty sure, has something special to say.
I really do. It's a landmark, like Oscar said. Moulin Rouge, and just the name Moulin Rouge in itself, just the name, okay? It's a very powerful statement. So, when, when I'm trying to say that guy like Frank Sinatra and the old rap band and all them gang bangers, a lot of people appeared there. What I'm trying to say is, and it's just across the railroad track, when the building go up tall, all the, the whole downtown, they, they all be looking at each other anyway. So, it's only one big neighborhood anyhow. The objective is, with the plans and pictures that they have, boy, if any part of this comes near true, it's just a sight. I'm gonna be gone next month out there, in fact, I won't be around anymore, but the objective is, and another good thing that I've received, is that Castro brothers who grew up in Cuba, and my, my children may be able to go to my ancestors down in, in good old Cuba, when I was little bit, boy, forget about that. But anyway, Moulin Rouge, Moulin Rouge is actually, uh, something that, please make it happen, because it's, it, it's not for black or white or green or blue, that ain't got nothing to do with it. It's for all of us. People gonna come from all over the world to see that thing, and it open back up, especially with that name Moulin Rouge. So, all I gotta say-
Views, councilmen, workers, and especially these good people that's coming in to, uh, bring this economic development to west Las Vegas. My name is Jerry O'Neill. I'm the President of the Marble Manor Resident Council. I represent two-hundred-and-thirty-five people in my development. My concern here today is definitely not against development. We are proud to see the developer come in. However, we are also concerned what is gonna happen to our people. Now, it seems that these developers has a lot of money. Well, the only thing I'm concerned with is, is that with the conjunction of Housing Authority, the city, and these developers, that the people living in Marble Manor will not find themselves misplaced, displaced, or false promises. So, on that note, I would like to also introduce my second Vice President, Mr. Owens, to see if there's anything that he has to say on this issue. Other than that, I hope the council will make the right move, do the right investigation, and make sure you leave no stone unturned, because it will come back and bite you in the butt. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, your honor, sir, my name's Edward Owens. I live at eight oh five Grant, Essendon, Marble Manor Complex, which is from Martin Luther King to Washington to H Street, attended to the Moulin Rouge. I don't have anything to say, 'cause we all for it, and we gonna let Coach Barlow handle this team of heavy hitters, but, but the position we hold, we need to be the designated hitters, because as they grow, we need to grow too.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
To the happiest mayor in the world, Mayor Oscar Goodman, and also the happiest Councilman, Mr. Ricky Barlow, along with several others that I've had the privilege to speak to before. Because as you know, I was the owner of the Moulin Rouge for thirteen years, and I tried very hard-
You have to tell us your name, though. You have to put your name on the record, please.
Thank you. But, uh, since I've met this company, I think they are well-prepared-
I don't know, my wife doesn't listen to me either, so, sorry.
Well, I really didn't hear what you said.
No, would you, uh, tell us who you are.
Oh, I'm Sarah Knight Pready.
We all know it, but-
Yeah, I'm Sarah Knight Pready, and I've been in Las Vegas sixty-five years, and I think it's well overdue that something should happen in west Las Vegas, and I think this would be a gateway to making other things happen in Las Vegas that's well overdue. I'm embarrassed when I come down to Bonanza and Main Street, to come on around the pass and see it looking just like it was looking when I came here many years ago. And I feel that now, since we have the happiest mayor in the world can make this happen, along with Ricky Barlow, and also Mr. Reese that I worked with several years ago that helped me when I was there, and I think you couldn't get a better, uh, group of people together than you have now. I've met with these people, and I think they're fantastic, and I think they've done all their work, and they got everything together, and I'm looking forward to this being the gateway of the west side. When this comes about, then I think a lot of other people will invest in Las Vegas also. And we have my whole heart's support in that this will happen.
And coming from you, that's the best recommendation these folks could get.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, may I jump in before the next speaker, if you don't mind? Ms. Sarah Ann, um, I just want you, you to just stand there just for a moment, just so that I may recognize, uh, to everyone assembled here in, in, uh, the council chambers, as well as viewing on television, that Ms. Sarah Knight Pready was the first African-American female, uh, casino owner in the state of Nevada, and I believe that that is a major accomplishment to actually see her still here in support of a development that she once owned. And so for that, I am blessed to be in your presence and honored for you to even be here in support of this development, because I would most definitely, uh, like to stand right next to you, as well as the owners, during the ribbon-cutting ceremony. I think that's, uh, something, Mayor, that I need to just stop and pause and, and recognize at this moment.
Thank you very much. And for the record, I was the first woman of color in the world to hold an unrestricted gaming license. And I think most of the people here that I do know, um, uh, that read about me, uh, come before them at some time. Like Ms. Tarkanian, I've known her for years, and several of the others. So, thank you for giving me that support.
Thank you, Ms. Prey.
Thank you.
Hello, Your Honor, and members of the council. My name is Sidney Sales. I am the Account Executive with the Urban Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to say that we are wholeheartedly excited about the Moulin Rouge project. I love the community participation that they're gonna be in. I too will be a part of their community board, and with the members of our chamber and the businesses that are in Ward Five, there are members of our chamber. We look forward to it. So, I just want to say thank you so much. The job opportunities will be there with Nevada Partners, with Madison Grace, with their companies right across the street, Distill, and with, um, just A-Horn, everyone who are members of our chamber, we just totally support this project. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Yes, sir.
Stan Washington, as you know, Your Honor, it's always a pleasure to come before this council, especially with my new city Councilman over there. He's, uh, you know, one of my favorites there, but, uh, as far as the, um, eleven groundbreakings, Your Honor, you know, there was a number of supposed groundbreakings on that Greg Union Pacific Park that didn't happen prior to your coming. Okay, so we know how that basically goes.
Nothing easy about it.
So, I basically want to go ahead and say, really, it, I, it started with you coming, because we know Mayor Jan Jones, she had ten thousand different concepts going down over there, and none of them happened until you basically came. So, I think that it was your vision and real luck, or whatever it is, that your enthusiasm that started the whole thing going on. I think even, uh, the city of Las Vegas had its difficulties in terms of developing Union Park, till it got down there and owned some land. And you know, that's what brought about the exchange with the sixty-one acres to go ahead and get there, 'cause I believe the city was told, and till it has a stake in there, it certainly wasn't a position to be telling people to do what, what their other land was. So, the whole idea of the coming of the Moulin Rouge and the coming of downtown, I think, Your Honor, certainly has to, uh, go to, uh, you with your steadfastness, because I believe the karma started going on, which allowed, uh, it to go ahead and carry over. And I believe you see that karma now coming on the other side of the freeway that's taking place, so certainly want to go ahead and give you your, your, your kudos, but then as well as the entire council, because you're only one vote, and you can only do it with the support of the entire council there. So, this is a great day for everyone, there's no question about it, and I just want you to know that I have been, you know, working, um, I, you know, don't live in that community, but I work in that community, and I think we all know that, uh, there, and I protect that community, 'cause I love that community. And I've walked the grounds of Marble Manor and worked with President Jerry O'Neill over there, and making sure that Marble Manor will be taken care of, uh, there, and I'm taking personal responsibility for that, as well as other, uh, items. I've been working with Dale and the group here, and their plan is definitely community-based first, make no mistake about it. So, this is something, as we move forward, still a lot of work to be done, of course, but certainly, they are cemented. They came to town with their last, threw it in there, rolled the dice, this is Las Vegas. As you know, you don't always win. I believe the people from Dallas came here with the Dome Stadium, threw their dice, went down there, six million, and lost. So, there's no guarantees about this stuff. However, I do believe that the timing is right, as we now basically have even a woman or a black man who may be the President of the United States. I believe the timing is right for things to go ahead and happen, and we look forward to working, uh, with this council and making it happen, and I want to thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. Uh, my name is Hassan Joshua Collins. Do activism here in Las Vegas and street preaching also, and defense of the homeless. Um, I just truly believe drunkenness, um, sexual sin and gambling is destroying lives every day. I see it all the time, and, and, um, I just encourage everyone to, to seek the, the counsel of God and the wisdom of God, the Lord Jesus Christ, and, uh, do the right thing and not support this kind of project. We don't need another casino in Las Vegas. If anything, we need more prayer and Bible in schools and, and, and try to, to do the right thing and bring this nation back to Christian values and, um, not seek the money. You know, you're gambling with your soul, and you just seek after the things of the world and the money and, and, uh, trying to get rich and all that, that's, it's, um, a highway to hell, you know? So, I just hope that people will do the right thing and, uh, and not support a project like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Goodman and members of the council. I myself personally, you know, I'm State Assemblyman Harvey Mumford. I myself personally support this project wholeheartedly, completely, and absolutely. I'm almost jumping up and down, but I can't jump anymore. In my day, I could, I think I was a pretty good jumper, wasn't I, Ms. Tarkanian? But anyway, I, I can't, uh, even find adequate words to express how I feel about this project. And I also want to commend the Councilman. He said it so well and made the, the point so, so strong and so relevant, and, uh, I almost echo everything he said. Maybe I wish I could've said it as well, but I really stand behind him one hundred percent and, uh, maybe a thousand percent. But I just, myself, I've seen so much transition or things happening in our community and some changes taking place. Many of you might not know, but I haven't been here as long as Ms. Pready, but, uh, I've been in Las Vegas, believe it or not, since nineteen sixty-eight, and, uh, I've driven up and down Bonanza Road many, many times, and as Ms. Pready even mentioned, it sort of is an insult, and it pains me sometimes when I drive by the condition of the Moulin Rouge right now. It is definitely a blight, no question about it, and these gentlemen here, they're gonna remove that, and I commend them so much and so strongly, and I'm just so grateful to them. And I don't want to get up here, you know, as they say, as politicians, we can go on and on. I thought, I thought Stan Washington was a politician, I mean, he'd ever sit down. But anyway, I'm not gonna say, you know, take up too much time, but you know, basically, I'm sure you all know how I feel about this. And that Bonanza thing is gonna, a lot of things are gonna happen on that corridor, and I think Cindy mentioned A-Horn is down the street, and many of you are aware of some of the things A-Horn will be doing, and that corridor will be a gateway into the community. And Martin Luther King is being widened, and it looks so good. The only thing is, you guys make too much noise. I always hear the clanging of the, of the machinery every morning when I get up in the morning, but I'm so grateful for that project happening and taking, taking legs. So, all I just want to say, I urge your support, and I thank you, and the mayor, and all the rest of you on the council. I'll remember you up in Carson City.
Assemblymen, we appreciate, we appreciate you. Thank you.
To the mayor, council, council persons, uh, staff, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Tarkanian for her red and black, that's, that's the Moulin Rouge color, and staff.
Tell, tell us who you are, please.
My name is Irma Walker. I worked at the Moulin Rouge, uh, during the second opening under Sarah Knight Pready. Uh, I was there thirteen years. Uh, I practically ran the place, and, uh, I, I'm just excited about this project, because about a couple weeks ago, I went to, uh, one of the meetings that they held, and I found out what they were doing, and I just got all excited and got involved. Uh, some of, uh, my friends say, "Well, why are you involved? You know, what are you doing this for?" And I tell them, "I'm not doing this, you know, for self, uh, purposes. I'm doing it because these gentlemen came to town and they thought enough to do something for us." And, you know, they, they're gonna have jobs, and that's gonna help the community, and we always talk about how bad our young people are, but we don't give them no tools to work with, you know? We don't give them, uh, help. Uh, we're gonna get some help, they, they're gonna put in the training center, and they're gonna train people to do the job and everything, and I run into people all the time wanting to know, "What are they gonna be doing with the Moulin Rouge?", you know? So, now I can tell them what, what's going on. And I went around to a lot of the, uh, senior places, and I spoke to, uh, people, and everybody's excited about it. Some of the people said that they, uh, couldn't make it because they didn't have transportation, but they do support, uh, the- but they do support the project, and a lot of them signed the support slips, and I have them for you. And I just want to thank these gentlemen for what they're doing for us, and I really appreciate it if you would give us the approval of this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, then, before we close the public hearing, I'd like to put a letter that we received into the record. It's from Lawrence Weekly, who is the county commissioner from District D. Basically, he's offering his support as well. It's a good thing, Councilman Barlow, that he's over the county commission, though, because he can't spell. I mean, I love Weekly, but I never saw anything like this in my life. I'm not even going to embarrass him. I'll just put this into the record. But before we accept your motion, Councilor Barlow, Ms. Preddy, you know the answer to this already, but gentlemen, did you hear these people? This is, this is something a little different than what we usually get. You represent a future, a legacy. You're in a, you're in a very unique position, and if you don't do what you're telling us you're going to do, you're going to disappoint an awful lot of good people who believe in you. Carry that with you, please, while you do this project. Please think about it every day that there are people out there who are really counting on you to make this the world-class city that we're all so yearning for because without this being part of it, we'll never be a world-class city. Councilman?
Yes, Mayor. Before I make my motion, I would like for Planning Director Margot to read some additional comments into the record.
If I may, Mayor and Councilman, thank you. This is a, a project where there has been unrestricted gaming, and with the expansion proposed here, we had to take a look at the number of lots. And I just can't let the opportunity go by that Brad Jurvik and Jim Lewis in the city attorney's office did a lot of work to make sure that, to make this happen. And in so doing, several of the variance and waiver issues have gone away, and that's what I wanted to read into the record. On item 90, we will be proposing to delete condition number two and also to add to the conditions that there is no setback variances required nor granted, and the variance allowed for lot coverage is only 57%. Also, with regard to item 92, there is no waiver of landscaping required nor granted by this action. And then there are some replacement conditions to be considered on item 92 with regard to the gaming issue, as I indicated. Conditions four and 15 will be replaced as follows. Condition number four would read that the location and operation of gambling areas, slot machines, a sports pool, or a race book is defined by Las Vegas Municipal Code 640 O2O or any other type or method of gambling or wagering allowed by the Nevada Gaming Commission, together known as gambling games, is permitted only on property within the shaded area bounded by the dashed line marked on the site plan as the grandfathered non-restricted gaming area. No gambling games shall be located on property outside of the grandfathered non-restricted gaming area. No gambling games shall occur or be operated on any property outside of the grandfathered non-restricted gaming area. Condition number 15 will be replaced in its entirety by language that indicates that all developments should be in conformance with the certificate of appropriateness dated February 27, 08, as issued by the Historic Preservation Commission pursuant to the Municipal Code Title 1906090. Specifically, the development shall retain the historical sign, remaining portion of the facade and tower located on this site, and the existing Pioneer Trail marker now located within the right-of-way of the adjacent pedestrian path along Bonanza Boulevard. New conditions would include three. The first is a revised site plan with a notation of the requirements limitations addressed in condition four shall be submitted to the Department of Planning and Development prior to the issuance of building permits, that a deed restriction prohibiting the operation of gambling games is defined in condition number four outside of the delineated grandfathered non-restricted gaming area shall be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits, and lastly, that this approval does not imply nor guarantee the subsequent approval of any related non-restricted gaming licenses by the City of Las Vegas or the state of Nevada. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, do you agree with that?
We do agree.
And Mr. Mayor, if we can, the general counsel, could we just have him accept the conditions advances there, there, on here?
Fine. Sure.
Yes, we wholeheartedly agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, guys, I think we're ready.
Well, good deal. And as we move forward, I just want to thank the entire staff, Mr. Chauncey Moore and Dale Scott, and the attorneys and the, everyone involved in this beautiful development. As I shared with you when we first started meeting and working out some of the roadblocks and bumps in the road, if you will, early on in the onset, that I'm a straight shooter. I don't like to play games, and I'm glad that you all recognize that because I understand and understood through the process of us meeting that you all don't like to play games either, which made for a great working relationship. And so, I look forward to continue to work with you all and to do what we can to push you. I have invested interest in this development in the sense of trying to get as many of those in the neighborhood who are unemployed employed in your facility. And so, anything that I can do to continue to push you forward, I'm going to do that. And that's just the person I am, and I'm saying that on the record. I say it publicly and privately, but I am very confident that you all are up for the bill and making sure that this development turns out to be a very beautiful development because you all too have a lot at stake and a lot invested. And so, we're going to work collectively as a council, as a development group, and as a community because, as you can see, you have a lot of great supporters there and not too many items that have come before this council where we received such great turnout in support. Traditionally, it's on the opposite side for those who are in opposition. So, it's something to be said to have so many people here in support of such a great development. So, with that being said, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval subject to all conditions for item number 89.
Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries.
And for item number 90, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation with all conditions.
Please vote.
As amended on 90.
As amended on 90.
Please vote.
Item number 91, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendations for approval.
Let's vote on that, please.
And for item-
Wait, wait, wait. We have to get the post?
I'm sorry.
No problem. Motion carries.
Okay, great. And for item number 92, I would like to follow staff's recommendations as amended for approval.
Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck, then.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
All right, 93 and 94. 93 is VAR 26127. The applicant owner is BBH LLC. Request for variance to allow 76 parking spaces where 106 parking spaces are required for a proposed light manufacturing facility on 2.02 acres at 1924, 1930, and 2,000 Western Avenue in Ward Three. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval. Folks, please. Haven't used it yet, Lois. I haven't used it yet. I'm waiting to produce something. That's the first I've ever used. 94 is SDR 25482. The applicant owner is BBH LLC. Request for site development plan review. Folks, please. We have to go on. Ladies and gentlemen, please. I'll start again. SDR 25482. The applicant owner is BBH LLC. Request for site development plan review for a proposed 49,494 square foot light manufacturing facility with a waiver to allow no landscape buffers along the north and south property lines where eight feet is required on 2.02 acres at 1924, 1930, and 2,000 Western Avenue in Ward Three. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you very much. Karen Richardson with the Richardson Partnership, Inc., 815 Pilot Road, Suite E, Las Vegas. We're the architects and land planners for Big Town Mechanical. And I'd like to direct your attention to an overhead site plan. Thank you very much. This is the site plan that was revised after we withdrew the side yard setback variance. We withdrew that variance as a result of conversations with the neighbor to the north, Fisher's Auto Body Shop. And we submitted that site plan to staff quite some time ago, so I would ask for any conditions under the, if approved, related to the application, the site development plan review application to reflect this new site plan. The other clarification I'd like to make is to the height of the building. We also submitted revised elevations to staff to show an increase from 50 feet to 53 feet, which is still within the height limitations within this district. I do want to point out also that the building is planned in your redevelopment district and will be, I think, the newest building on this side of Western and will keep intact a company that has been operating at 2,000 Western since 1962 or thereabouts. And Jim Barton, the owner of Big Town Mechanical, is in the audience if you have questions for him about either his operation or about the new development. And with that, I stand here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Folks, a public hearing, if anyone would like to be heard. Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. Councilor Lee.
Margot, do you have any additions?
If I may, we do have the new site plan. I'm going to check the file. I'm not showing a new elevation, so I'm going to check the file right now, sir.
Thank you.
Is this going to be a new building for the existing business? Is that it?
It is, a new building.
But the existing business will go into that new building?
That's correct. They operate right now out of 2,000 Western, and this new building will take place on 1924, 1930.
Very good.
When did you give them the new elevations?
We did that about three weeks ago. I submitted copies to Evan Duval, and he advised me that somebody else was going to be reviewing them, whose name escapes me at the moment.
I don't have the new elevations, sir. Do you have a copy of them today?
I don't, but I could certainly get you them before the end of today.
I'm sorry, I have nothing in the file on the elevations.
We're talking about three feet. All our staff.
The height is- I'm sorry.
If those are the elevations that she has shown on, on the screen right now, she can probably get the date from that if that's what you need, Margot. Does the applicant have, do you have the new elevations right there with you?
I don't. You mean, I'm-
Or at least the date that Margot could reference in the conditions?
I believe the date was about three weeks ago.
What kind of changes, what kind of changes do we have?
We increased the height.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to confuse the issue. The building has different heights in different parts of the building. So, the overall, where we initially had it at 50 feet, has gone up to 53 feet. Where it was 46, it's gone to 48 and a half, I believe. And that is all a result of the elevator and the mechanics involved with the elevator.
What do we have to approve this?
We just need, I think we just need the new date of the elevations.
The city clerk is showing them, and in my book, I'm showing the November. Is this what went to the council?
That's what your department sent us. That's why I'm seeing this.
Okay, because that's not what's in my book.
That was after those. Your department sent us those.
Okay, if these were, these were what's before the council, then we're fine to go with the date of March 25th on the elevations.
That sounds right from your representations.
Thank you.
So, if I may, all we would need to do, again, we have the correct site plan, and all we would need to do is correct the date on the elevations on item 94 to reference the March 25, 08 date.
Okay. Now, if that's said, Your Honor, I can motion to approve item number 93 following planning commission recommendation for approval of all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries.
And item 94, with those corrections made, I want to make a motion for approval following planning commission recommendation, and I want to have you relay to your applicant that we appreciate him staying in Las Vegas and rebuilding. We appreciate that.
I will. Thank you.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Karen.
98 is SUP 26427. The applicant is Clarence Long, the owner of Decatur Shopping Center Associates LP. Request for special use permit for an expansion of an existing facility to provide testing, treatment, or counseling for drug or alcohol abuse at 1401 North Decatur Boulevard in Suites 3 and 4. This is in Ward 5. The planning commission and staff recommend approval subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir.
I'm Cecil Garnett. Mr. Long will be here in about 10 minutes.
Well, hopefully, we'll be here in 10 minutes, but we'll hold this over. Does that-
Yes, Mayor. We'll, if you don't mind trailing it, and if he's not here, then we'll just-
I mean, I can answer any questions on this partner.
Are you a vested partner in it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Would you like to go forward at this time?
Yeah, let's move forward.
Fine. So, you're here to answer any questions, basically. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, folks, a public hearing. Anyone would like to be heard on this? Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, I would like for you to describe what type of business this is and what's taking place as to the request before us today.
Well, what it is, is like a meeting room where we have 12-step meetings, and there's no staff or anything. We just have, it was an existing facility there already, and we just changed ownership and looking to expand.
Now, when you say 12-step facility, give me more background as to what type of business this is.
For drug and alcohol abuse.
And so, the expansion, what's going to take place in the expansion of-
Oh, it's just a bigger room so we can have more, more people. We just expanded. It was in one room, I think it was 700 feet, so we rent the room next door, which is a total of 1,100 feet.
Okay. And how long have you been at this location?
Well, the previous owners were like 13 years, but we've been there, we just kind of took over. So, we're, we're in the process of getting a license and the plan and everything else.
So, is it as of recent, or have you been there for six months, 10 months, 12 months? How long have you been at this location?
Us, the new owners?
The new owners, yes.
About 10 months.
10 months? Being that this is an expansion of the current use and nothing has changed, and you're looking to just add additional space to conduct, is it classes that you all will be conducting?
Well, it's not classes. It was just a meeting facility where everyone comes voluntarily. We sit around and, you know, hold meetings, 12-step meetings, excuse me.
Is there anything outside of the 12-step meetings that you all do inside of this facility?
Uh, no.
So, you just meet at this location?
Correct.
Okay. With that being said, Mayor, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of the expansion of this location.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. 99 is SDR 26214. The applicant owner is Town Terrace Apartments LLC. Request for site development plan review for the conversion of a 50-unit apartment complex to a condominium development on 2.83 acres at 322 South 7th Street in Ward Three. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, ma'am?
Good afternoon. Liz Sorokak, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway here on behalf of the applicant. This property is located on the northwest corner of 7th and- Um, this property is located on the northwest corner of 7th and Chef Andre Roshi Place. Um, this is a conversion of an existing apartment complex with 50 units in it, and we'll be converting these to condos. Um, the current owner has already made some improvements to this property by adding additional landscaping, um, paint, stucco, um, increasing the accents to the building. As you've seen from the pictures, it's in your backup, uh, this is an attractive building that's in good condition for, um, the age of the building, and the owner intends to make it even better for the community.
Very pretty.
Uh, as far as the existing tenants, um, this conversion to condos, um, I'm sure you probably have some questions about the affordability of those units to the existing tenants, and, um, at the, the price point that the owner is looking at, these units will be within the level of affordability for the existing tenants, um, so I don't want you to be concerned about people being displaced by something that's, uh, too expensive. Uh, the, really, the only issue related to this site, um, has to do with the parking. Uh, we are required to have 69 spaces, and we're only able to provide 50 spaces. However, uh, this is an appropriate level of parking for a couple of different reasons. Um, the first being that this property is located along a multi-use transportation trail, which I have shown on the overhead. Um, you can see that it's right, right along the, um, the multi-use transportation trail, which promotes, uh, non-motorized travel such as bicycle and pedestrian travel. Uh, additionally, there's, uh, there is additional public parking, um, within walking distance of this site. Um, within 650, 50 feet of the site, you have, um, the City of Las Vegas, uh, parking lot, and there's also on-street, street metered parking, um, that's actually available right on 7th Street. So there is additional parking other than what's provided for the building. Um, and as I said before, we are providing one parking space per, um, unit, so each person, each unit in the building will have a parking space. Um, planning commission recommended approval of this item, and I'm here for questions, and I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
Uh, getting back to the parking.
Yes.
Uh, do we have the existing parking that is there at this time?
Yes, the, the parking that exists for the building is subterranean, and there are 50 parking spaces in there. Um, and then I also noticed on the plans it indicates there are four parking spaces in the alleyway, which were, it wasn't addressed in the staff report, but they are there.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes, sir.
Uh, staff recommendations for parking spaces, uh, this was an apartment complex. Have they always had this variance for parking spaces?
In this case, sir, it is not a variance, it is how the project was originally built.
So we, we, this project's been there without this park, these parking spaces?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch.
I see. We've had this parking problem over there since these, uh, units was built originally. I'm trying to find out, have we always had a parking problem over there with, uh, not having enough parking?
The number of parking spaces that is there now is the number of parking spaces that there has always been. There has not been an elimination subsequent...
But with the conversion, they, they're required to have more parking spaces?
No, sir. We merely, what we do when we look at the conversion, because the development standards are the same, we take a look at if the project meets current code. In this case, it does not. That doesn't mean that it's, that the discrepancy is any greater, it merely means that it would not meet current code.
That's because it's been changed.
I'm sorry?
Because the, the code's been changed.
Yes, sir, exactly correct.
Well, I, I know, and the ma, the mayor mentioned to me also, is that we've, we've had, we've had to work with Andre to make sure he's had adequate parking there for his business, uh, in the evenings and stuff, and I don't wanna, I don't want to do anything that's going to, uh, make his parking problem worse. It don't seem like we are, because we're not adding, we're not adding any, any more units or whatever, so I think that, that's gonna be the point.
Right, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Just a couple of the comments.
Please.
Uh, I, I did meet with, uh, the representative of the applicant. Uh, the applicant has, uh, taken over some other apartment complexes, uh, one across the street from City Hall here, Kitty Corner, and they do do a good job, uh, in their, in their conversions as far as going in, rebuilding, and so on and so forth. Uh, my concern, and I, I went over with the applicant's representatives this morning in my office, some of those conditions that we have put on the conversions, uh, making those residents that are living there currently have first right, and that the applicant makes it affordable for them to come up with down payments or whatever they might need to, to buy the units if they so, so choose. Uh, the applicant's representative did, uh, explain to me that they do have some people that have been living there in these apartments for over 20 years, and I just hope that we don't have to go in there and, and displace them, because that would really make me angry. And so I just ask that, uh, and I, I'm sure the applicant will, uh, work with them, make sure they, they do have the ability to do, to buy, uh, these conversions.
Yes.
All right, public comment, yes?
Okay, this is a conversion from apartments to condos, and there is a, quite a bit of, when you change to a condo, you, you know, smoke detectors, so on and so forth, so a paint job won't do it, and, and I heard some statement about they would clean it up and whatever. And, and, and when you go from apartment to condo, there's a potential chance that you can even sell these things to the people, and so that, that way it would become, you know, like a permanent kind, kind of resident. So what I'm trying to say now, this is a big step, and it's a lot to it, and I just hope this don't come back to bite you later down the road. Because as far as I'm concerned, uh, maybe they could use a little more parking, uh, 'cause ladies say something about some people could use out there on the street and use the parking meters and so forth during the daytime, whatever, or at night when the meters are out in use or something. So what I'm trying to say now, th, this place already have a little spillover, so all I'm just saying, take a good look, that's all I'm saying.
Anybody else like to be heard? All right, seeing done, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, turn to Mayor Burtan.
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion for approval of this, uh, application. Uh, I, I truly believe that, uh, the people will, I mean, I understand the staff's recommendation for denial, but I, I, I believe that, uh, the applicant's gonna go in there and redo these apartments and fix them up so that they can sell them, and, uh... I went through the conditions, I'm going through them one more time real quick, see if I missed anything. I don't think there's anything we need to change on the conditions other than, uh, I wanna make sure that we follow those conditions, Margot, that we put in place on the conversions.
With regard to the first right of refusal and notification, sir?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We will, um, add those conditions.
Thank you. And with that, Your Honor, any question for approval, following factuation recommendation?
Thank you, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 101 is RQR 26890. The applicant is Lamar Outdoor Advertising. The owner is Herbst Development LLC. Require two-year review of an approved special use permit for a 40-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 2395 North Ranch Road in Ward 5. The staff recommends approval, subject to conditions, it's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir.
Scott Nasker with Lamar Advertising, 1863 Helm Drive, and we accept staff conditions and ask for your approval.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? All right, it's a public hearing, folks, if anybody would like to speak. Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing then, and I'll turn to Counselman Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation, uh, with the noted three-year time review. That would be my motion.
Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you.
And just for the record, that requires no change of condition.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
Item 102 is RQR 26971. The applicant owner is Canyon Ridge Christian Church. Require two-year review of an approved review of condition that require the recordation of a covenant for the possible future installation of half-street improvements on Bronco Street at 6,200 West Lone Mountain Road in Ward 6. The staff recommends denial. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Doug Parks, the operations pastor for the church, 6,200 West Lone Mountain. And, um, first question I wanted to ask is, have any of you been to the property since we were just cleaning it up, uh, from the last construction process? Counselman Ross, I know you live kinda close.
Um, let me, let me jump in and, and respond to that. I had an opportunity to attend last Tuesday. I was invited to Canyon Ridge for Bible study, and I really enjoyed it, and what a beautiful campus. It is a beautiful campus.
The, uh, most current expansion started, uh, almost five years ago now, and, uh, it has been a long journey for us. We started out with the idea of a world-class church facility, raised with nonprofit dollars, and, uh, this idea of a third-place urban oasis for people to be able to come and, and find kind of this peaceful environment, and, uh, I feel like we hit it. Uh, I really do, so, uh, having said that, the reason we're here, uh, after 13 years, I am happy to announce we have, uh, last Friday, March 28th, we opened Escrow on 4910 North Bronco Street, and, uh, from my understanding, um, uh, the director of planning has recommended another year review in order to meet the conditions of the counteroffer of the homeowner, uh, which, uh, we're happy to accept, if I understand that correctly.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, folks, a public hearing, anyone wanna be heard?
Okay. Uh, this is a, uh, it said a, a church, and, uh, it says staff said, uh, recommend denial. The point is, anything that's trying to do something good in the community, it don't even have to be called a church, but anything that's doing something in the community to make lives better and, and give people a positive outlook on life and whatever, uh, let's not be so quick to deny such things. Let's, uh, let's look at everything carefully. That's all I recommend. I hope that whatever it is, that it can be solved, whether it's, whether it's a man, this organization can continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard on this matter? All right, seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. Counselman Ross.
Thank you, Your Honor. Pastor, you're absolutely right. The director, Wheeler, has got the heart of gold. I don't know what we would do without her. Um... And, and congratulations for working it out with, with your neighbor, 'cause you know it's been a big concern of mine, and we were ready to meet you out there the other day and, and have a one-on-one with both of you, just so I felt warm and fuzzy about it, and it sounds like you've accomplished your goal, and I hope she's happy. So I hope, uh, everything works out for you guys. And under the guidance and direction of the great director, Margot Wheeler, we'd like to give you, uh, uh, one more year, uh, before we bring this back, and I think we may not see this again, because you're gonna do some other things, and we're looking forward to seeing that happen. So, uh, with that, Your Honor, I would, uh, move to approve, um, one additional year, uh, for a review. Director, did I get that right?
If I may, Mayor and Counselman, the condition would read there will be a one-year administrative review.
And that's my motion, Your Honor.
All right, thank you, let's vote.
Thank you, Pastor.
Post. Motion carries, good luck to you. 103 is ROC 26882. The applicant is Luis Gutierrez. The owner is Water Street LLC. Request for a review of condition to remove condition number 15 of an arrived, of an approved site development plan review, which require that the developer contribute the remaining traffic signal contribution monies on .44 acres located on the south side of Bonanza Road, approximately 420 feet east of Pecos Road. This is in Ward 3. The staff recommends denial. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Luis Gutierrez, I'm the owner, 7,500 West Lake Mead Boulevard. Um, I don't understand these fees. Um, they're dated back 1998, and that's why I'm here.
All right, Mayor Burtan?
How, how long have you owned this property?
I've owned it a year and a half.
Uh, staff, uh, this is coming to run with the property, or...
Yes, back when the property was originally rezoned, um, a condition was placed on the entire property, of which this site is a part, uh, for traffic signal contributions. Back then, we had a different model for collecting traffic signal contributions than we do now, and so a specific dollar amount was placed on the overall site, portions to be paid as development came in. Um, the remaining outstanding balance on that is the, the dollar amount referenced. Um, since then, the city has changed its model for collecting, uh, traffic signal contributions, and the current model would result in a dollar amount, uh, substantially less than the old one, and so the...
Give us the new amount, please.
Uh, I can't give you the exact figure, sir, I apologize, but it's, uh, somewhere in the vicinity of $1,000 as opposed to $7,000.
Luis Gutierrez?
I have an amount, it's $2,215.
You just doubled what you could've gotten away with.
This is cheaper.
Now... Oh, it's $5,000 less.
No, his is cheaper than yours.
Yeah, I said 1,000, you said 2,000, I'll take your number.
Where did you get your number from, Mr. Gutierrez?
Um, I got it through Rick Schroeder. He is the guy who figures that out, and the number that, uh, I guess he'd given him the exact number, he'd given me a different number.
You're fired, why would you use Rick?
I trust Rick.
All right, thank you. Public hearing, yes, sir.
Uh, concerning the red light and, and him being a resident, well, I, and, and did that mean that he has to pay because he lived close to the red light? It had nothing to do with that. Because I know when you improve sidewalks and streets and whatever, then the resident, you know, has to be involved in paying part of the portion or whatever. So since that had nothing to do with it, and, uh, y'all gonna let the man do his thing, and, uh, whatever, is I hope you don't deny him whatever he needs, and work out something on the money that's due. Thank you.
All right, anybody else like to be heard? We'll close the public hearing.
What's your new numbers that you'd like to use? Your numbers or...
I'll use his.
Well, what it, what it is, if I may, uh, and I apologize for the, the faulty number, what he'd need to do is meet our current requirements, whatever that number is, and I believe if he got that directly from the guy who makes that calculation, uh, that his number would be the accurate number. But the condition shouldn't specify a dollar amount, it should just specify, uh, meet the current code requirements.
Would you, would you agree to that?
I agree to that.
That'd be my motion, Your Honor.
All right, very good. See? Some good...
And if I may, I just need to make one correction. In condition number one, the reference to the previous site development plan is 24023.
Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you very much, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, good luck to you.
Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Okay, item 104, um, Ms. Clerk, would you please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, Centennial Hills Architectural Review Committee, and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, 105 is citizens' participation. Public commentary in this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come up to the mic and, uh, give us your name, and we'll put the three-minute timer on.
My name is Anthony Hardis, I'm at 123 St. David. I wanna make this very short for all, I, I was over at the county yesterday, I'm gonna tell you all the same thing. Our nation is trying to elect a president, doesn't matter Democrat, Republican, or whatever, and I remember years ago, when Clinton got elected and he'd run against the other Bush, and then you had this man, Mr. Ross Perot, from Texas, created the independents. What I'm trying to say now, Clinton's going around doing a lot of bragging, that man never was elected president in both terms with 50% of the vote in motion, he only got 43, 46, and so on. But, and, but what I'm really also saying, uh, Clinton ran, and, and Mr. Obama, I liked the man, and he thought he was gonna be the first black president, male, that ain't true. Uh, uh, Bill Clinton is a black man because here's the truth, what you can do. They made a movie, it was called, uh, Imitation of Life. You got people in this country that passing period. Now, I'm sorry, and, and the way Clinton been eating all them kinda food that got his, had autism or whatever, the, the man played, give me a break, that boy got a little bit 5 cents, 7 cents, whatever, he got some black blood in him, I'm sorry. And his daughter's hair, when she was growing up, was a little kinda curly, whatever. Don't get me wrong, the objective is, uh, 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 Obama, that black minister with black, Obama didn't mess that poor child, boy up so bad, that if he's, he, he, he might as well be vice president, or he ain't gonna be nothing. Uh, this country can be destroyed, this country. This country can be destroyed with this guy. And I told that man, Mr. McCain, the Republican dude, that he needed to get a woman. So America would be guaranteed to have a woman, either vice president or president. Let's level the playing field, please. I'm sorry, but I'm a man that speaks for this whole country. I love my nation. Let's put first things first. We need to dump Congress. You've got people been in Congress for 50 years, and that man, uh, 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 I got a lot of them here, when he was first elected, back in 1962, in 1964, he had an auto accident, and I went in when I was in Phoenix. Let me tell you something, that boy been in, have a Congress, been in it for 30 years alone. It's pitiful. People can't be in government that long. Right now, they're standing in the body, got three terms and so on, whatever. You know what I'm trying to say? Give me a break. Dump, if we're going to save this country, dump Congress first. You can have two presidents sitting in the White House, get it? Doesn't matter who's in the White House. If you want to control your government, it said, the United States, it said, the Congress. This country was fought together, with the word "Congress" in front of it. Congress! Even starting out before even the game of nations, you had the common law of Congress. You want them to say, Congress is supposed to run this great nation. And when Nixon got there, he ran it in the ground. We had the Congress in '72, and the wheels thawed. It's pitiful. I love my nation. I have the right to say what I say, because I've got the documents to prove it. Thank you.
Next, please.
Bye, see you next time.
Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident. I'm back to address the program, so I'm still having trouble with the people that are being allowed on Ellis Air Force Base. They need some responsible caring people out there. They have made a mess, and they're still trying to use me to sponsor their programs. I know law enforcement get tired of me calling them. They know I'm having a problem with people. They don't have to vandalize property or tear down buildings or set buildings on fire. They need to just take my name off of the program. I don't know if I need to put it in writing to anyone and turn my name over. I am not a part of this. People that's claiming me, I don't care to be a part of them. They had no right doing me a favor without talking to me. I understand one of the ladies, the woman I'm not speaking to, and I don't mean to be like this, but I don't appreciate, I'm telling her I don't want this, and she's still doing something behind my back. I don't disrespect or discredit anyone, but she's done that. She's discredited me and have disowned me, and I hope she's listening. I don't appreciate it. That's why I haven't called her. But I want Christian people to conduct themselves as Christian people. I don't want them getting all up in church, acting all high and holy, then doing me in during the week, because that don't work. I can see through that. Now, I respect other people's rights. That's all I ask them to do for me. Now, they've created a problem for me, and all of them that's responsible, that are allowed on Ellis Air Force Base and that sit in these churches on Sunday, under pastors that I know are teaching them the truth, teaching them what to do and how to live in the community, so everyone can have a safe and happy life among each other in the community. But I'm hoping that this will sink into ears that are responsible for my troubles. I did not give anyone permission to use my distress signal or anything with my name on it. I've cried out for over 20 years. I started out in my young twenties. I had three young children, now grandchildren now. I'm still pleading, begging with those that are responsible, for those people that plan for people on those programs, on the military base on Bardstown. I am apologizing for what my hometown has done. They haven't helped me, the ones down there. And it's very bad that I left a town to get rid of the crazy stuff they was doing since I kept coming before the mayor and city council and the police department there, and they couldn't control it. Then I come here, and I ask you all for assistance, and then they send people here instead of staying down there, because I didn't make no trouble with them. They made the trouble playing favorites. Now, it's not my fault, and I'm not going to keep taking insults from them, but I could say some things about them and the way they're conducting themselves, especially ones that sit in the household of God. They're not Christian people when they hurting somebody and ignoring this. Thank you.
Next, please. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Hassan Joshua Collins, activist here for the homeless and for Christian values. And Councilman Reese, did you approve item 19? Did the whole council, as far as the alcohol beverage permit for the gay parade on May 2nd?
Yes.
Okay.
It was one of the consent agenda. We did approve it.
Okay. That's a major concern to me, and I know that homosexuality is an abomination to God. In Jude 1:7, saying, "Even Sodom and Gomorrah in the cities adopted them alike, men are giving themselves over to fornication and going after strange flesh, are set forth, for example, suffering vengeance, the vengeance of eternal fire." And I know God hates homosexuality, you know, and we shouldn't support that. And just as the time MLK, during those times, extreme corruption, I believe, requires extreme activism and protest to correct what's gone wrong. And Lord willing, my hope is to block the next gay parade, just like I blocked it last year. You know, and I encourage police, churches, all government leaders to join with me in the protest of this. Sodom is a crime in the state, as I've already said a million times here. Well, not exactly a million, but quite a bit, under Nevada law statute, chapter 201. And this city is guilty of treason for allowing gay parades and all this sin to continue in a Christian nation. And you can look under interest 196 for that. And, you know, I know that some of the people, they don't care about the law. You know, they just care about promoting the sin and making the money off the sin. But God isn't about that, and as a Christian, we shouldn't be about that either. So if you claim to be a Christian, you know, I encourage you to get involved in this. Now, my email is servingjesus9922@yahoo.com. You can email me if you want to get involved. Again, it's servingjesus9922@yahoo.com. And I encourage people also, that are not believers, study Bible prophecy, study the Mark of the Beast, the New Order, the Illuminati, the Book of Revelation, and try to get aware of what's really going on in this world. And turn your life to God before it's too late. I encourage all the Jews and the gays and the Muslims and the Catholics and the Hindus and the Buddhists, the Mormons, to be born again. You know, there's a lot of cults out here, including the Jehovah Witnesses. And you need to give life to Jesus and not be led astray. You know, Ezekiel tells me to warn people. You know, that's kind of my job. And, you know, then the blood's not on my hands. I've warned you now. Now, what you do with the warning is up to you, but now the blood is on your hands. You know, you have an option as a city council person to get involved or not. And, you know, if you're either a little one astray, you know, it's better than a millstone be tied on your neck and you be thrown to the sea, the Bible says. You know, we don't want our youth to be homosexuals. We shouldn't be teaching them these kind of things. And under interest 201, we're supposed to uphold good morals and public decency, and there's nothing decent about a gay parade. And we should be ashamed of that. We should be ashamed of sin. And so I hope to hear from you. Again, my email, servingjesus9922@yahoo.com. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. I come in peace, and I come to thank you.
Please give us your name first.
Okay. My name is Roger Harris. I live at 4730 East Craig Road, number 2124, Las Vegas, Nevada. I come to thank you for your promotion efforts of Las Vegas, but specifically how they relate to our state of Nevada. I'm a part of a campaign, a national campaign for clean energy. One of the nine states for our particular campaign efforts is Nevada. And because Nevada was actually picked for this particular effort, it actually gave me a job. I'm the lead organizer for our state effort here for clean energy. And this particular program and campaign is being sponsored by the Sierra Club. So I've come to thank you for all your promotion efforts, but also just to let you know to keep continuing to do what you're doing. This allows a lot of people like myself, who are activists, who are advocates, who believe in real civic engagement, to actually push forth an issue and actually talk to elected officials in their public official form. Specifically, just to show that I'm doing my job, I want to tell you about just what actually we are doing. We're going and talking to people where they live. We're going to talk to people about clean energy futures and the importance of solar energy and wind. And specifically, it's a public awareness campaign. It's an education campaign for people to know about those options. Our campaign will go on until Earth Day. And specifically, we're asking people to be open to listening to what we have to say. I do appreciate your time. Do appreciate all your efforts. Keep promoting Las Vegas. Keep promoting Nevada. It does provide jobs for folks in all walks of life. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard at this time? All right, seeing none, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.